...area next to the existing incinerator to be placed centrally.
At this time, we'd like to call to order the city council meeting for March 21st, 2016. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Berman.
Here.
Mayor Burt.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois. Councilmember Phil Seth. Councilmember Holman. Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt. Councilmember Wolbach. Seven present.
Thank you. So our first item tonight is a study session, which is a presentation from Stanford University representatives regarding a project filed with the County of Santa Clara to reallocate and add new housing units. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burt, members of the city council. I would like to introduce Shirley Everett, who will come up and make a presentation for the city council. I wanted to let you know that Fire Chief Nickel is here to answer any questions that you may have about fire services. And following the study session discussion and some of your other items on the agenda, including the consent calendar, there'll be an opportunity to have an action item discussion on this particular topic. So with that, I'd like to ask Shirley to come up and make her presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. I am really pleased to have this opportunity to share with you the importance of building 2,000 net new beds on the Stanford campus in Escondido Village. And I have a vested interest in this project because I oversee housing and dining on the Stanford University campus. And this housing project is one of the most critically important initiatives undertaken on behalf of the university community in my 25 years as a leader on the campus. What we want to do at Stanford is to provide on-campus housing to a greater proportion of our graduate students, and it clearly is essential and a really high priority for the university. We met with students beginning last October to introduce this outstanding, I call it a really exciting, concept. And as a result, in introducing it and listening to our students, we made some changes, and Catherine Polter, our next speaker, will speak to those changes. We currently house 97% of our undergraduate students, but we're only able to house 55% of our 9,000 graduate students. So you can see there's a huge disparity. This new housing project will be a great benefit to our graduate students because then we'll be able to house 75% of our graduate students, which is about a 40% increase in bed spaces on the campus. This project also helps us solve our current housing project, which is really essential for us. We also believe that this project is transformative. It will enhance the quality of our graduate students' educational experience. It brings them in close proximity to the abundance of essential resources that support their academic disciplines. And many of our graduate students work late in the evening to advance their research. But we want them to avoid those long commutes going back to their apartments off-campus. This also will help them to relieve the distractions that many of them face and the burdens that they have in living in off-campus housing. So in summary, this project addresses a critical need for our students. It also benefits our neighboring communities. It will help alleviate the profound housing shortages in the neighboring communities and provide additional housing for 2,000 students. It also provides a vibrant community in Escondido Village, which is at the heart of our students' social, recreational, and overall well-being. So lastly, we are proceeding carefully to ensure that the needs and concerns of both on- and off-campus communities are addressed in the process. So we thank you for listening to this, and Catherine Polter will be coming up next to share the specifics of the project. Thank you.
My name is Catherine Polter, and I'm Stanford's Associate Vice President for Land Use and Environmental Planning, and I wanted to give you an overview of the project that we're talking about and the approval process going forward. So we'll start back with some background on the 2,000 general use permit, which was approved in 2000. And that county approval allowed Stanford to construct 3,018 housing units, or in the case of students, beds. As of today, all but 581 of those housing units have been constructed or are currently under construction. Interestingly, the county approved a condition of approval, which was F7, which stated that Stanford could seek to build even more housing beyond that initial allocation with an environmental assessment and approval by the Planning Commission. So what Stanford's requested to do is implement that condition of approval to allow additional housing units, to allow this Escondido Village graduate housing project to go forward, specifically requesting 1,450 additional housing units beyond the 3,000 that were originally allocated. So we're talking about these 2,000 net increase. The project site in Escondido Village has low-density housing in it right now with about 400 beds for the graduate students. So those would be demolished, and 2,400 new beds would come in, which is the net increase of 2,000 housing units. On that site, there are also 600 parking spaces. This project would build 1,300 underground parking spaces below the buildings, which is a net increase of 700 parking spaces. These beds would be available to single students and couples only. They are not intended to support the families. We have other units in Escondido Village that support the families. To give you an idea of the location of this project, the white boundary that you see is the current boundary of Escondido Village. The wider road to the northeast is El Camino Real. The boundary to the southeast is Stanford Avenue. So you can see in purple, the future housing site is on the innermost boundary of Escondido Village toward campus, along Sarah Street, near the gas station and Campus Drive. So that's the housing location we're talking about. The project hasn't been designed yet. It's anticipated to be four buildings with open space and courtyards in between them, the underground parking. And the heights of the buildings of the different wings would range between six, eight, and 10 stories tall. And it's surrounded by the existing mid and high-rise buildings in Escondido Village. So in order to support the environmental assessment that was required for this additional housing, Stanford prepared several technical studies that it submitted to the county for their review. The first is a GUP intersection analysis, which was prepared by Farr and Peers, and we'll go into this in a little bit more detail. And that study looks at whether there are any impacts to the exterior intersections around campus as a result of adding this housing that would go above and beyond the significant impacts that were identified in the GUP EIR. We also wanted to do a parking analysis that was done by Stanford's Parking and Transportation Department that verified that we were providing sufficient parking for this housing that was coming online. Additionally, there was a checklist that went through every single environmental impact that was identified in the GUP EIR and just methodically made sure that this addition of housing did not create any new significant impacts beyond what was already disclosed in 2000. And lastly, we prepared some visual simulations from viewpoints off-campus based on some conceptual massing, just to see how visible it was. So we'll walk through some of the details there. For the traffic analysis, I'm going to ask Ellen Polling from Farr and Peers to join us.
Thank you. Good evening, councilpeople and mayor. My name is Ellen Polling with Farr and Peers. We've been doing the studies that are required under the GUP, as well as other planning studies for Stanford for a number of years. So this is one of several that I've done personally since the GUP was completed in about 2002. Catherine stated the purpose of the analysis, which is to reassess any external locations, not on-campus locations, but external, non-Stanford locations that were analyzed in the GUP EIR that might have different impacts or more significant impacts than the GUP EIR identified. So we've been doing these studies and generally have not had to look at external locations up to this point because the projects that are specified to be analyzed in the conditions of approval have not required it. In this case, we're going beyond the number of units that was really studied in the GUP EIR. And so we did do an assessment of the full project, including the part that actually is covered under the current, the 581 units, and did essentially a little focused TIA, Traffic Impact Analysis, which starts with trip generation, which is what you see on the first slide here. The top chart shows that using the trip rates that were developed for the GUP EIR that looked at residential trip making and commuter trip making, based on actual surveys of those two groups back when the GUP EIR was developed, that residents do generate trips, but they generate trips at a slightly lower level than commuters during the peak hours. And so you see a drop. The blue bars at the top are the drop in commuter trips because we are bringing current commuters onto campus. The green bar is the new residential trips generated, and the red bar is kind of the net change, which is a slight decrease campus-wide in traffic during the peak hours coming to and from campus, and in particular, in the peak directions, which is most important from a GUP perspective, inbound in the morning and outbound in the evening. But the second bar chart shows that, you know, near the project site, which is where most of these new residential trips will probably travel when they go external to the campus, there will be a net increase because these commuter trips that are currently coming into campus are coming from all over the place, using all the many gateways to campus, whereas these residential trips are most likely going to use Sarah Street as their main way to come to and from the parking at the site. Some external trips may use other gateways, certainly, but to be conservative, we assigned all of the traffic to the Sarah gateway in the feeling that, you know, certainly most of them would use that gateway. And when we did that, and I'll show a couple of slides that show how we did that, we found that level of service C, which is what El Camino Real and Sarah operates at now during the peak hours, would be maintained because the increase in trips, which is, you know, a little under 300 trips, is still, you know, less than 10%, probably less than 6% or 7% of the total traffic at that intersection. So this is just a map showing, kind of illustrating what I just described, where the large green arrow at Sarah Street represents the bulk of the residential trips using that gateway to get to the project site. And by the way, the parking access will be most likely from Sarah and possibly with a driveway on Escondido Road, that has not been determined yet. But even if a driveway were to be located, a second driveway were to be located on Escondido Road, there are bollards that prevent traffic from using that road to exit onto Stanford Avenue. So we feel that Sarah Street would still be the primary way that those residential trips will want to leave campus, whereas you can see the little red arrows that kind of demonstrate that commuter trips, the people that are going to live here in the future are currently commuting and would be using multiple gateways. And this is my final slide, and it just illustrates the specific assignment that we assumed. We took new counts as part of this study at campus, I'm sorry, El Camino-Sarah and El Camino-Stanford Avenue, which were the closest intersections to this primary gateway. Those are the two we looked at. And based on those counts, which actually were lower than the 2010 projections in the GUP EIR, which, you know, is probably due to a number of things, the economy that has changed and dipped and come back since that EIR was prepared, as well as the no-net-new-trip goal that Stanford has been pretty effective at meeting, those counts led to this 33/5, 62% distribution to and from the northeast and south at El Camino-Sarah. So that's directly from the counts. We usually like to use actual counts to show us what the trip patterns are and then assign the trips based on that pattern. So that essentially concludes my little description of our traffic impact analysis. And as I said, no new impacts were identified as part of this analysis, so I'll certainly take questions at any time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. So then, moving to the parking analysis, when the team got together to think about how many parking spaces were going to be appropriate to support this housing, they looked at the trends of parking need for this particular demographic on campus. And about 10 years ago, we had a parking permit per bed ratio of .76, which means about three out of every four graduate students wanted to buy a parking permit to store their car. Through the time, that has decreased steadily, as it has kind of nationwide in terms of this generation of students and their need for owning a car. It's now about .56 parking permits per bed. So in other words, one out of every two students wants to have a parking permit. The parking at Stanford is done on a district basis, so it isn't assigned based on a building, et cetera. So this blue area that you see is the parking district that coincides with Escondido Village. And so within that district, when this project is over, adding its 700 new spaces, the parking supply will be at a ratio of .61 spaces per bed. So the supply will be much higher than our current demand, which is .56 spaces per bed. But that actually brings us to one of the most exciting aspects of this project, as far as we're concerned, because we're seeking a way to decrease for an entire Escondido Village and drive down even lower parking space per bed. And that's through really ramping up a residential TDM program. I mean, I know you're aware, we spoke last week about our commuter TDM program. This is more about how do you provide support so that a student doesn't need to have the expense of bringing a car to campus? And that's a combination of onsite amenities that might, you know, they don't need to go off-campus anymore for it, or for those things that they really do need to go off-campus. Can you provide zip cars? Can you provide enterprise rental car? So that, and these amenities, while centered in this new project, are very centrally located for all of Escondido Village and are meant to support that population as well. So this is a very exciting part of the project for us. And Brian Shaw is here from Parking and Transportation Services, if you have any questions when I'm done, too, about that. Lastly, as I mentioned, we did some visual simulations based on sort of conceptual massing of what we're talking about. These figures show in white the outlines of the existing mid and high-rises at Escondido Village, and the red indicate the conceptual massing of the proposed project. We've picked three sites. This one is actually in College Terrace. You can see in the inset map, it's sort of central College Terrace, looking across Cameron Park, trying to get, you know, as much view as we could of the site. And you can see it's largely obscured by vegetation and other structures. Probably the most visible view that would occur is at El Camino-Sarah, as you look, if you're standing in that intersection, looking directly into campus. You can see the red peaks out a little bit behind the existing trees, and that's probably as most visible as you'll get for the project. The third was probably the more common view, heading south on El Camino Real, looking across the athletic fields. And, you know, it is still, there may be little pieces peeking out beyond the vegetation, but it is largely obscured. So finally, as I mentioned, we applied in January for the ability to get allocation of additional 1,450 housing units beyond the 3,000, and that has been processed and analyzed by the county, and they have it on their agenda for approval at the Planning Commission on Thursday. We are continuing to work on the design of the project, you know, and that is expected to go for architectural and site approval, which is the county's sort of ASA, ARB. That would happen this summer. And then the goal is to move through that permitting and hopefully start construction in the fall. And with that, we're available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. So colleagues, are there, is there someone who would like to start off with any questions? Councilmember Berman.
Thank you for the presentation and for coming and chatting with us about this, even though we play no formal role in your approval, but it's always nice to have that open back-and-forth between the city and the university. So the one question I had, I know there was some back-and-forth between some of our staff and you guys on concerns about some of the off-campus graduate students and what that would mean to the traffic studies and that kind of thing, which I think you guys did a good job of answering. My question is, you know, am I going to wake up six months from now and see that Stanford has plans to increase its graduate student population by 2,000 students, which would, you know, thereby kind of make null the gains that are made from bringing 2,000 students off-campus onto campus? So, and I know you guys can't predict what'll happen in the future, but I'm sure you'd be honest with us if there were kind of plans underfoot to do something like that. So is there somebody from Stanford that can mention kind of what those plans might be or if they don't exist?
Jean McCown, Government Relations for Stanford. No, we don't have those plans at this point. This is, just as you heard, this is absolutely about addressing 4,000 of our students who live off-campus today or coming to the campus today and trying to find an opportunity for them to live on the campus. That's what this is about. This is not about plans for future graduate student growth.
Great. Thank you.
Well, I'll ask, oh, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, so of the 14, so basically what's going to happen is it'll, this will presumably vacate 1,450 units in the surrounding area, right, as they move into the housing? Have you guys got any idea? I mean, presumably an awful lot are in Palo Alto, but do you guys have any idea, like, how much is in Palo Alto versus how much is in Menlo Park or San Francisco or anything like that? I mean, have you guys looked at that?
First of all, I think it's two, it'll be, it will be 2,000 people moving, not just 1,450.
Sorry.
2,000 students.
Right.
Who are living off-campus today will come. We don't have a specific address-based thing, but just based on the challenge of the affordability of where to live. I think it's probably pretty widely distributed out to other communities, such as, for example, there's a lot of graduate students that have traditionally lived in East Palo Alto, in the apartment units over there. Mountain View, Redwood City. So I think it's probably pretty widely distributed up and down the, from San Jose to San Francisco.
All right. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thank you. A couple of questions. So first of all, why 1,450? If, I mean, why not house all of the students living off-campus? And why did we choose that number?
Again, let me clarify. It's actually going to house 2,000. The 581, we pull that apart from the 1,450 because that's an amount we already had permission to build under the current GUP.
Right, so it's 2,000.
And those were originally actually designated for some medical residents. So now we're saying we'd like to build those for graduate students, and then we're adding 1,450 to that. So we'll have 2,000 more that can come and live on the campus. I think candidly, it's about, you know, how much can you really challenge yourself to accomplish and fund? This is going to be a three-year construction process. So I think doing something significantly larger than this, and I think we just felt this was sized for something that could be accomplished, you know, in a relatively reasonably immediate period of time and make these units available to the students that need them.
So I don't remember where I saw it, but I saw questions like Stanford owns housing outside of the campus that they have long-term leases for and all of that. Will there be any vacation of that housing, or is Stanford going to keep that housing that they have under long-term? Or maybe they don't have such housing, but I read in the paper they did. So I was curious as to how that all works.
Shirley may be the best person to answer that because we have been, to meet some of this need for undergraduates and graduates, we have been renting some units, like at Oak Creek Apartments in the short term, but that's not owned by us, it's just rented for the short-term needs that we have.
I mean, that's my question. Is this going to open up housing opportunities for people, you know, who aren't Stanford because you're bringing the people to campus, basically? And I mean, I assume it does some of that, but I was curious as to the answer to that question, so maybe Shirley can answer it. And I have another question while you're up there, since this is probably directed to you. So, you know, last time we went through the RENA housing cycle, we wanted some credit for the housing built in our sphere of influence. And we ended up coming to a deal with Stanford on that, if I recall. So I guess I'd like to start the negotiations now. I'd like some credit for that. What do you think about that?
I mean, your recall is right. I believe the three parties, Palo Alto, Santa Clara County, and Stanford together, wound up doing some shifting of the RENA allocation to the county because we knew that Stanford was going to be building units that would meet that requirement. These are obviously well over and above, when they eventually come online, any RENA obligation that the county has, I believe.
I mean, dramatically.
Yeah. Yeah. But, and I think they all qualify. Catherine can maybe correct me if I'm wrong. I think the qualify, you can't, a true student bed doesn't qualify if it doesn't have a kitchen. But I think these would, would qualify under a RENA analysis. And I think we also believe that the rent levels of these units will be in that lower affordability category for RENA, so I think it's a worthy point to be discussing.
So I think this is a big deal to Palo Alto because I believe in the next RENA cycle, and I'll go out on a limb, that our housing allocation will be closer to like 4,000 units than the 2,000 we currently have. So I actually do think this is a big deal to us, and I would encourage Stanford and staff to start thinking about that and working towards that as soon as possible. And I just wanted to get some commitment from Stanford that if we're supportive of this, Stanford will be supportive of us getting some credit for the RENA allocation.
Councilmember Holman.
I didn't see a nod ahead or any response to Vice Mayor Scharf's last question, last query.
Right, I was waiting for a response.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
So Jane, would you care to?
I mean, I think we're absolutely open-minded to it, just as we were before. I mean, we're, this may not be exactly right. We may be a little bit agnostic as to between how Palo Alto and the county want to kind of share this. We are obviously motivated, our self-interest is getting these units online for our students, and how that serves your RENA needs and the county's RENA needs. I mean, we're open to talking about that, absolutely.
Okay. Based on that, we're open to saying yes to your project. Anyway, so Councilmembers Phil Seth and Vice Mayor Scharf have asked a couple of my questions. So the other questions that I have are a little more fine-grained, and if I could get some response to those, it'd be really helpful. The environmental analysis recognizes that Robert Royston was a landscape architect for at least a good part of, excuse me, residual called, for a good amount of the landscaping here. The screen, the screening that was shown from different angles of the new development, what commitment is, because we don't have full plans and all that sort of stuff, what commitment is Stanford making in the plans to have, you know, a noteworthy architect, landscape designer not only work on the plans, but to help retain and maintain the landscape screen that's shown in the plan, so that we don't, 10 years down the road, we have dead and dying trees? And Stanford's very good about trees, but I just want to know what the ongoing plan is to maintain the screening of the development? Maybe along the line of Royston or?
As part of the ASA application that we'll come forward with, we will be proposing the landscaping that's within that project site. So I'm not sure if you're talking about screening that is outside the project site?
I'm talking about the screening that was shown in the presentation that I saw once before, how the project won't be visible because it's going to be screened by trees and vegetation. So I want to know in a long-term basis that that screening is going to be preserved or if there's a deteriorating effect over time, that it's going to be replenished.
I think that will be part of the ASA considerations, when they see the proposed landscape plan and take into account what's around it as well. So that's part of what will happen during the summer.
I understand that's the case. I'm just, is there any information that you can be forthcoming with about it now?
I don't know of any plans that would remove that, and Stanford does, as you mentioned, take very good care of all of its vegetation, and there isn't any plans to remove that screening.
Yeah, I wouldn't imagine that it would be removed. I'm talking about maintaining and replacing, because trees do die over time. Things happen. We have drought conditions that might return, so I'm not hearing much assurance here.
Well, I mean, I will add that the, I mean, we have an entire grounds department that does go out and monitor all of the trees, see the ones that are stressed, and, you know, have a proactive approach to maintaining the vegetation canopy in our campus.
So another question is, mostly what was identified as to noise in the environmental analysis had to do with construction noise, especially around demolition. So... analysis had to do with construction noise, especially around demolition, so we have a situation in Palo Alto, as I think a lot of places do, that noise-producing equipment, although HVAC equipment has gotten much quieter, that it's being placed on rooftops, and so the ambient noise gets, gets higher. So, do you have any notion, it is a fine-grained question, but do you have any notion of where the HVAC equipment is going to be? Is it going to be ground-level and, and enclosed, or what are you going to do to attenuate the ongoing noise impacts?
Again, that's something that would be addressed during the design, we don't have any information on that today.
Note that it is a concern, if you would please. And the other thing, the other thing having to do with trips is, is there a what-if or a backup plan? So if the trips analysis ends up to be not accurate, is there a what-if or a backup plan to help mitigate traffic impacts?
We do still ultimately have our no-net trips goal that we have been performing under.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Niss.
It's nice to not have to vote on the outcome of this, believe me. So, a couple of questions about Escondido Village. How does that change what is going on there? What's the impact on the village versus your new construction and so forth? Can one of you answer that? Because essentially, you're really changing things around a bit.
Yeah.
You're not going to have families in the high-rises, obviously, and you are going to continue to have Escondido Village pretty much in, as it is currently?
Yes, the, the 400 beds that are in the location where this, these new units will go are, as Catherine said, the low-rise units. It's a mix today of families and single students that live in those. In the remainder of Escondido Village is not being touched by this, there's very, a large number of those similar style of units. And so one of the things that Shirley's group is working on is providing the opportunity for the family-living setting to be located in these other locations that are a similar style of unit, again, that have a mix of singles and families. So the family, the accommodation for that family-style unit will be absolutely present in Escondido Village, even with the addition of this housing.
So probably a sociology question, but given that there are dramatic changes that have taken place, especially since you have primarily millennials, I'm gathering, in this setting, is that changing the, the number of families and kids dramatically from what it used to be?
I'm going to let Shirley, who's the expert of her graduate student community over there, respond.
My guess would have to be you have a lot more single people than you did before.
You are absolutely correct. We will be adding 2,000 more single students and couples. And currently, we have about 260 families that live in Escondido Village that are guaranteed housing. And so what we're doing is upgrading and refurbishing the family houses that we had, I would say, several years ago.
Yes.
And in hopes that if more families do come and want to live on campus, we have more than adequate housing for those students. We're also adding amenities, like either a store or pub, fitness centers, so that students can enjoy the campus and not have to get into their cars, et cetera. So we're trying to build a vibrant community and have the amenities as a gateway, so that not only graduate students, but the campus community can come together as well.
Yeah, because we, as, as we understand, the millennial generation has a different focus on a number of different issues. So that's very, that's very good to hear, because I think having Escondido Village there has made a big difference to lots of families through the years. But knowing that that change must be coming or has already happened, that's really going to be a big change on campus, too, isn't it?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, good. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, a couple of follow-up questions. In the Stanford response letter on packet page 13, it mentions that the trip generation numbers come from the 2,000 general use permit, EIR. Now, I know we have troubles with the Trip Generation Manual 2014. Is the 2,000 number antiquated, outdated? How dependable is it to use a number like that?
Well, yes, it certainly is dated at this point, and we have not done follow-up surveys under the GUP, the current GUP, to document whether things are exactly the same. Undoubtedly, any given day, actually, that you do surveys, you're going to find some kind of different behavior. But I think the fact that the university's been able to meet its no-net new trips commitment in spite of the really substantial growth, both in people housed and commuters, is a good sign that we're doing something right. But it is certainly true that things may have changed, and if anything, they're probably changing downward, given the kinds of demographic changes that we've been hearing about with less interest in auto ownership, less purchasing of parking permits for residents. And again, the commuting traffic entering the cordon that gets measured eight weeks out of every year has been relatively constant over the last 10 years. So those two things point to, to...
I guess there's a follow-up question, then. The city has problems sometime doing monitoring of conditions. You say that you, once a year, several weeks over the year, you do a monitoring of the no-net new trips. How do you do that?
Well, we don't do it, we review the results, but the county does it with their own consultant, although we, Fairview, set the standard when we were doing the due diligence for the GUP 14, 15 years ago now. What we did, and what they do now, is, I think it's two weeks in the fall and six weeks in the spring, so a total of eight weeks, they measure the traffic in and out during the peak periods at all the 16 campus gateways. They then measure what kind of through-traffic there might be to extract that, they measure what kind of hospital-traffic might be caught in that, and they extract that. So they do a really, really quite scientific job of measuring what traffic is entering and exiting the campus during the peak hours, as compared to what, what it was when the GUP was approved.
Yeah, and so those are actual counts?
Yes.
Now, all of us have experience running into grad students from Stanford who talk about their jobs, of gee, I'm working with this company, this startup company, having a wonderful time. Now, have you taken that kind of activity into account in your trips?
You know, I think the trip rates actually kind of reflect some of that activity, because you see residents that travel out in the morning and back in in the evening. Now, some of that is spouses, and there is a small, about 10% total, well, 8% non-Stanford spouses in the mix at Escondido Village. But I think it's also reflecting some of that, people going out to do jobs off-campus during the typical commute hours, and so they're going off-peak, away from campus in the morning and back in in the evening. It's not a large effect, but I think that explains some of the trip-making that we see with the residential rates. And the residential rates for the GUP were, were developed by counting all of Escondido Village for a number of days and looking at, just, just measuring what was happening.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to count, though, is the trips that you would, new trips you'd be generating from people who are currently in the community, doing job to home, as well as job to school.
Yeah.
Who now do that from Escondido.
I think it all comes out in the rates, because we've got commuter rates and we've got residential rates, and theoretically, they're, again, it's many years ago now, but it was capturing all the trip-making by a resident, including job-related trips.
Yeah. One other question I had, you had a very nice graph showing that the share of students who want a permit has been going down. Part of that is because of lifestyle, but I'm sure part of it is because of cost. Can you give an idea of what you charge for a permit, and has that changed over the decade?
I think I'm going to let Brian Shaw answer that one.
Parking permit prices have gone up every year since that graph was put into place. Percentage varies quite a bit, it's been as low as, say, 2% or 3%, and it's been as high as up to 20% throughout that time. We can provide that data set, if you're interested, under separate cover, we've got that information going back years.
Yeah.
Price does have an influence on the choice of whether someone chooses to buy a permit, certainly it does, but we also believe there's changes in the younger demographics' proclivity to own and need to use automobiles that also plays into that declining rate of parking permit purchases, in addition to the increasing price that the permit does have. The C permit, which is the cheapest permit that we have that residential are able to buy, is roughly $30 a month. Students can purchase that on a monthly basis, they can purchase it for the entire academic year or the entire 12-month calendar year, depending upon their residential period of time that they're, they're on campus.
Great, yeah, that's very helpful.
Sure.
One last question, on the staff report, second page of the staff report. It says Stanford's housing proposal comes at a time when the city is considering ways to address the impact of its ratio of jobs to employed residents, and this university's proposal is in keeping with our ongoing discussions. So I think one of the things that struck me was your number of, what, about 32% decline in trips by moving people closer to where their activity center is? And I guess I would like to ask staff whether that is not a good and effective proposal for dealing with the Stanford Research Park.
Good evening, Mayor Burt, Councilmembers Hillary Gittleman, the Planning Director. I think I wrote the sentence that you're referring to in the staff report, and it was really meant to say that the city is having this larger conversation about the ratio between jobs and employed residents, and to the extent that additional housing is proposed, whether it's in the city or in the sphere of influence, which is the campus, it contributes to adjusting that ratio. So I'll let you infer what that means for other parts of the city, but that's all that we meant by that sentence.
Yeah, I guess I just note that in the Stanford materials, they say very clearly that housing additions are important to deal with local traffic issues, and certainly it would seem to imply that that would be true for the Stanford Research Park as well.
And my questions have to do principally with transportation. Can you share how extensively Zip Cars are currently used? I heard from one local entity that they're so widely used on campus that there's difficulty in getting availability off, which is generally, that's, if that's true, that's a good thing, and I'm just wanting to have a better understanding of how pervasive are they, how much of the mix is, of automobile trips is being picked up through shared vehicles?
Stanford University has the largest Zip Car program in the country, we've always had that. We have our 67 Zip Cars on and around campus, and our cars are some of the busiest cars in the Zip Car fleet across the country. So you're exactly right. We work very closely with Zip Car on an annual basis to determine the right mix of vehicles, how many vehicles we can accommodate on campus, where best to place them, so that we make sure that that balance is there, so when a student, and primarily they're students using the vehicles, and it's mainly night and weekends, that they have a vehicle where they can get to one whenever that's necessary. And we seem to be doing a pretty good job with that. As Catherine stated in her remarks to you earlier, that this location will have a significant number of Zip Cars located within the parking garage that we will be putting into place for this project. The exact number has yet to be determined, we'll be working with Zip Car very closely to figure out what the right number should be for the size of project we're talking about and the demographics that will be located within the project. But it could be, say, as much as 20, could be maybe as 100 cars that are dedicated for the Zip Car functionality. We'll also be looking at longer-term rentals. There is a need for our graduate students to rent cars, perhaps for weekends or longer periods of time, and they'll be able to do that on-site. We have a similar arrangement today on the west side of campus, at our Stock Farm Garage. We'll be doing the same thing on this side of campus, so we're essentially bookending campus with that functionality as well, giving one less reason for a graduate student to need to bring and park a car on campus while they're out on, on campus at Stanford.
And do you have any approximate data of adding a Zip Car for shared use? How many individual cars are removed in that student environment as a result?
Well, it's, a rule of thumb probably can't apply universally. With undergraduates, it's a little different, because the freshmen are prohibited from buying parking permits, so it's artificially inflated arguably for them. For graduate students, that ratio is probably a little lower than it'll be for undergrads, but in general, it's probably in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 cars are not needed to be parked on campus for every Zip Car that we have on campus. That's in general. We haven't done the exact math on that, but those are the numbers that we're told by Zip Car.
Okay. And then, and I'm not sure who will be the best to answer these next questions, but where, you spoke briefly about kind of a reverse commute to some degree, historically, on the campus in the morning and off in the evening, and it sounds like we'll have probably some set that will be going from campus to jobs, either spouses or even grad students with jobs off-campus. Do we have any sense of what that volume will be? And right now, we, the Marguerite fleet, which is very strong, is oriented toward moving people to campus in the morning and off-campus in the late peak hour, but I assume that those buses then are pretty empty when they leave campus in the morning, and pretty empty when they're coming on to campus in the afternoon. Have you been thinking about serving that reverse commute need more deliberately than in the past, or is it just going to kind of hit an equilibrium that, are the destinations different if you're thinking about the reverse commute than what you've historically had?
I think, yeah, I mean, what the trip rates tell us does show, you know, clearly that there's some reverse commute, you know, travel being made by residents, and some of them may be spouses, and some of them are certainly the students doing various things. And I think a part of the, the project is going to include some sort of transit hub and some really careful, probably surveys of the folks that live in Escondido Village now to get a sense for, is there a need for that? I know that the Marguerite service planning and adjustments goes on regularly, so as soon as there's a need observed, that service can be adjusted to provide, to provide more off-campus travel in the, in the peak times.
And this slide of the residential trip distribution, we have 62% going, we'll call it, south on El Camino, which presumably go to that intersection of El Camino and Page Mill. I don't know if you've done a distribution on what portion of those would go toward 101 and what portion to 280, I'm guessing majority toward 101, which is a, either direction's very congested right now.
Right.
Do you have tentative plans on how to reduce the impacts of those trips, either through additional Marguerite service or any other means?
Well, I think the key is the, the additional amenities that we're referred to in this transit hub. The more that we can provide services and recreation on-site, you know, hopefully these trip, these trips that we're analyzing will be even lower, because, because these are new elements of Escondido Village that aren't there now. They're certainly not going to make the trips go away, and Page Mill, El Camino is a, you know, a really big problem, congested intersection. The trips that make it there are not really going to make a noticeable effect on what's already a very bad situation. But I think it's, it's the amenities and the adjustment of transit service to, to serve new trips that we see, new demand that we see.
So I appreciate that the onsite amenities of this little village that's going to be created there reduces the trips, but I'm, I'm actually thinking about, in addition to whatever reduction you have, are there any intentions on figuring out where those trips are going and whether they can be served more effectively by a different modification to the Marguerite destinations?
I think I may let Brian step up again and talk a little bit more about how they monitor what the needs are for Marguerite and how they can make adjustments, hopefully as efficiently as possible.
Thanks.
That's a, that's a great question. We need to find out the behavior of these folks that'll be moving into these new units to really figure out how to fine-tune Marguerite, but as we stated, we've planned to do a transit hub. But as we stated, we've planned to do a transit hub at this facility. It'll be the first of its kind on campus, where it's a dedicated location for Marguerites to function, where folks can interface with multiple routes, as well as access to Zip Cars I mentioned earlier, perhaps also get access to bike facilities that we'll be putting in. And that'll help us figure out perhaps where else we need to be moving Marguerite service. They'll be able to use the Marguerite that's going to be brought to the site to get to the Palo Alto Transit Center downtown Palo Alto, perhaps also make connections to the San Antonio Shopping Center. And those are areas we already serve with Marguerite. So the question is, are we providing enough service to meet the needs of the folks living in these new units? Those are the types of data sets we're going to be running right now as we're working on that, to develop the transit center to function at a high level for the people that will be living on that location. So those are part of our planning work. We haven't done all the math yet, but those are things we're definitely keeping in mind and considering as we plan this project.
And one mode that we heard a week ago on our, the Stanford Research Park TMA, is looking at that kind of mid-distance where electric bikes may serve beyond what people would typically use their pedal power and something less than or replacing what they otherwise might go by car. Is there any plan to begin to roll out shared electric bike use?
We did a pilot of that last summer and had some mixed results from that. We continue to look at it. There's some others in the valley that are doing a similar sort of thing. So we're going to keep an eye on their activities and how well it's working. There is potential there. And it is possible that perhaps some of the new residents in this project that are needing to commute within reasonable distance that an electric bike would work, that that might be a mode for them to use. We will be supporting the use of bikes at the building with plenty of bike parking, as well as bike maintenance, and perhaps bringing onsite periodically vendors to help repair and maintain bikes as well. So that's a plan that we do have. But e-bikes are a new phenomenon, certainly to the United States, and whether they will pick up steam is really yet to be seen. But we're monitoring it, and we have been testing it. And hopefully, we do see it having an effect in the future.
So final question. I know that we have new bike routes along El Camino and Stanford Avenue that are coming in, bike paths. But one of the things that we as a city and I think Stanford as a university have not worked together on effectively enough is a more direct bike route in between, I'll call it, between El Camino and Unipero Serra. So essentially, you know, we have all the way from Gunn High School, we have a path that spills out onto Hanover, goes right through College Terrace. And then, as it goes onto campus, it's a less direct route all the way out to Sand Hill Road. And I was, even part of what brought this to mind is a Stanford surgeon who was telling me about having to drive his daughter to Gunn. And I said, gee, it's not that far. But the more I thought about it, it's, we really have never established a real, direct, efficient bike route through campus, through College Terrace, all the way south, kind of that third major bike boulevard in the city. Have you had consideration on that? And is that part of the design of this project?
I'm going to have Jean talk mostly about it, but I'll just say that we are looking at how the project facilitates bike use. And there is a greenway established already in Escondido Village. It accesses spine. And this project will have connections to that spine to facilitate use of bikes by all village residents accessing the campus at Serra and Campus Drive with that connectivity. So using a bikes within Escondido Village will be very well facilitated by the design and the existing infrastructure that's already in place in the area. But I'll have Jean talk more about the other.
And I'll just add to clarify, not only am I thinking of use of bikes within campus, but it's really across campus, from your properties on Sand Hill and the hospitals all the way south to southern parts of the city.
I think you are aware that the Research Park is very interested in the Hanover bull park, that part of that route that you're talking about. And then exactly how it makes its way through College Terrace and then through the campus, I think that's a really important point. We have definitely focused on bicycles in, for example, the new roundabouts on campus, like at Escondido and campus. And so whether Escondido Road, if there's some jog, you come through College Terrace, and then Escondido Road coming through the residential area and then on through the middle of campus, I think that's a really interesting point to think about, how to make that a much more navigable, easy path for people. So it's a very, it's an important priority for us.
So the only thing I'd want to do is make sure that the design of this new development doesn't put a building in the middle of what would be the most efficient route there. And so it sounds like that hasn't necessarily been a deliberate part of this design, and maybe there's no conflict. But that would be one area that I'd want to really encourage thoughtfulness on how that route goes all the way through campus.
Yeah, just looking at the location, I think, you know, the route that I think is interesting and most logical is Escondido Road. And that's to the, whatever direction it is, west edge of this. So I don't, I think the concern you're raising, Mayor Burt, about is there a building that's going to interfere with that? I don't think, I don't think that's going to be the case. I think the most logical cross path is not in the location of where this site's going to be.
Yeah.
But we'll take it in mind.
And I would just suggest that going from, I think it currently shows Escondido going all the way out to, I think, Campus Drive and looping a route. And that's not a bad route, but it's not the most direct. And I just want to make sure that it's been thought through because ultimately, I think that's going to be an important bike boulevard, bike highway, whatever we want to call it in the long term. But thanks for all of your thoughtfulness on how to make this a low-trip generating project. Councilmember Niss, did you have a follow-up?
Just one question, as we say. Regarding the RENA numbers that the vice mayor spoke of, you talk about 2,400 beds, 2,000 net increase. If we were counting these for RENA numbers, what are we actually counting? So are we counting, is this apartments? Is this?
So you kind of.
We're discussing housing later tonight. I want to know how to reference this number.
So the best way to do it is to count kitchens. So there's going to be, and we don't know the exact mix, but there's going to be some two-bedroom units in here, which counts as two beds because it houses two students. So that's one RENA unit. And then there's some studios that would count as a RENA unit. So we don't know, so it's going to be somewhere, so if we say it's 2,400, it's going to be somewhere between 1,200. If they were all two bedrooms, it would be 1,200 RENA units. And so it's going to be somewhere between 1,200 and 2,400. And we don't know the exact mix yet.
So what number would you suggest we use? Would it be 1,800, 1,900, 2,000?
I mean, you could split the difference, yeah, and say 1,800. I mean, as a, we, yeah, we just don't know.
Right. But knowing, we will be using that number somehow, and perhaps in negotiations, that's really helpful.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Thank you. That concludes the study session. And we'll see you later this evening, I assume. Oh, and I'm sorry, we have one member, before we begin the next item I neglected, we have one member of the public who wants to speak on the study session item. See you ready. Welcome.
I wanted to ask and request a follow-up on the Stanford planning. We did hear this at the city or a College Terrace Association meeting about a week or 10 days ago. So the thing is, in campuses, including Berkeley, you try to go to a grocery store and you can't find anything that's reasonable. They're somewhat 10% to 20% more expensive. I lived through that with my daughter going there. I've seen it here. We as College Terrace residents don't have a reasonable grocery store to go to. We have to go all the way to Menlo Park or go to Middlefield, and there's still not a full-blown service. So please consider affordability. You were saying that affordability, this is the graduate student that are looking for affordable units. So you have 2,000 people that are coming in there, and I'm sure they get hungry, and they all have to travel. And even if you have residence halls and all that, we probably don't want a Bristol Forums or a Whole Foods-type service, but more, I think it's the city and the Stanford, if they could work amiably for having affordable grocery stores in the area, you know, where I have a couple of things coming up, 2,100 El Camino, I would be greatly appreciated. You know, we want to welcome you, but we want to take advantage of your, you know, your power to bring an affordable grocery store that we can all live happily. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to our second order of business today, which is a special order. And it's a community partner presentation of the Palo Alto Players at the Lucy Stern Community Center.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rayna Halpern, Assistant Director for Community Services. And it's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you the Palo Alto Players. Tonight, we have with us the Managing Director, Deanna Berenstein. We have Elizabeth Santana, the Development Director, and the Artistic Director, Patrick Klein, who's going to speak to you. And because Councilmember Niss was so disappointed last time we came with West Bay Opera that we didn't have live entertainment, we have some for you tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to our partners and good friends at the Palo Alto Players. Patrick?
Thank you, Rayna. Good evening, Mayor Burt and council members. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. Long before there was Silicon Valley, there was Palo Alto Players. On the night of June 29th, 1931, over 100 actors, directors, and enthusiastic community members gathered at the Palo Alto Community House, now MacArthur Park Restaurant, to mount a theater revival. Within a month, they had organized the Players, and within a year, they were performing plays, original works by local authors, and the famous melodrama Ten Nights in a Bar Room. The admission price was 25 cents. Sitting in the front row of that evening's performance was Lucy Stern, and it was her love and devotion for the Players that gave us our permanent home in 1933. Eighty-five years and 200, excuse me, 472 productions later, Palo Alto Players now employs over 200 local artists each season that live and work in this community, and is proud to have its programming enjoyed by over 14,000 audience members annually. Much has changed in the 85 years since Palo Alto Players began, but the Players' commitment to theater born of the community and for the community has not wavered. On Saturday, April 9th, we will celebrate our 85th anniversary with a gala benefit at the Lucy Stern Ballroom. We invite you to come and show your support for your local theater company, because this is not just a celebration of our artistic achievements, it's a celebration of you and our city leaders that help make the work we do possible. Our next production is the modern classic Into the Woods by Stephen Sondheim and James Lepine. Our innovative production will perform April, excuse me, April 22nd through May 8th. Following that, we have the Tony Award-winning best play, Vanya and Sonia and Masha and Spike, by celebrated satirist Christopher Durrang. That performs in June. We also hope that you will join us starting in September for our 2016-2017 season, which is entitled From Stage to Screen and Back Again, celebrating plays that have seen enormous success both on-screen and onstage. So we're grateful to you all for having us here this evening and for your continued support of the performing arts through your patronage, advocacy, and philanthropy. And for a taste of what you're going to see at Lucy Stern next month and Into the Woods, here are Stephen Ennis and Drew Wrights, that's Rapunzel's Prince and Cinderella's Prince, performing Agony from Into the Woods.
It starts off mysterious and ominous. You don't know what to happen.
Did I abuse her or show her disdain? Why does she run from me? If I should lose her, how shall I regain the heart she has won from me? Agony beyond power of speech, when the one thing you want is the only thing out of your reach.
High in her tower, she sits by the hour maintaining her hair. Light and becoming and frequently humming a light-hearted air. Agony far more painful than yours, when you know she would go with you if there only were doors. Agony, oh, the torture they teach. What's as intriguing.
Or half-so fatiguing as what's out of reach. Am I not sensitive, clever, well-mannered, considerate, passionate, charming, as kind as I'm handsome and heir to a throne?
You are everything maidens could wish for.
Then why, no?
Do I know?
The girl must be mad.
You know nothing of madness, till you're climbing her hair and you see her up there and you're nearing her, all the while hearing her, ah.
Agony, misery, whoa, it's different for each. Always 10 steps behind.
Always 10 feet below.
And she's just out of reach. Agony that can cut like a knife. I must have her to wife. Ah. 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 Ah.[1789.13]
The Certified Fire Chief is the final level in a fire officer track. This level utilizes the performance assessment process that is built on all forms of education and experience exposure. This level is only awarded after the performance assessment competency has been conducted by a peer review assessment committee. That peer review assessment committee is the state fire marshal, another certified Fire Chief, and a member of local government. The committee evaluates specific competencies in technical knowledge, management, and leadership. There are several steps to complete this level. Not only must the person have completed all the chief officer certification classes, and there are many, and have both defined experience level and time in the position, but the person must also possess minimum education level of a bachelor's degree, have an advocate, develop a detailed portfolio of life experiences in the fire service, provide letters from other Fire Chiefs and non-fire service personnel as reference, make all the appropriate notifications, and submit to the OSFM the application. And then the patient waiting begins. The individual waits patiently for notification of acceptance and scheduling, and waits patiently for the scheduling, and waits patiently for the scheduling. Other review committee make a verbal presentation, which, by the way, is about four hours long. The chief sat before his review panel for three hours, and I think it was 43 minutes, if I remember correctly, and be interviewed by the committee. If the candidate is successful, they are notified of their success and receive the Fire Chief Certification. With almost 1,000 fire departments in the state of California, and if you consider each department has a Fire Chief or a Fire Executive Officer, with the dedication required to complete the process for a Certified Fire Chief, you can see why there are only 30 in the state of California. Tonight, it's with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to present to Chief Eric Nickel the prestige of being the 31st Certified Fire Chief in the state of California. Chief Nickel, I'd like to present you with your certification and your Certified Fire Chief collar brass. Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I'll take a quick moment. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first off, I'd like to thank Chief Hoover for taking the time out of her busy schedule to come down from Sacramento. I also want to thank all of you, the council and the city manager, for your shared investment in professional development. Finally, I'd like to express my appreciation for my wife, Mariana, and my daughter, Bella, who are sitting back here. You know, this career capstone serves as my professional commitment to our community. Education and professionalism are two key values of the Palo Alto Fire Department. And you will find dozens of these same commitments from the 100-plus members of the Fire Department. For example, Deputy Chief Katherine Capreles just finished her second year in the Executive Fire Officer Program and wrote one of the first research papers on the importance of good data collection and measurement in the fire service. Essentially, you can't improve your performance if you can't measure it. Deputy Chief Geo Blackshire will complete his Fire Service Executive Leadership Institute later this year, and he's already being asked by other agencies across the country to share our secrets of our diversity recruitment process. These two elite programs are very competitive, reflect well upon the city of Palo Alto, and we can all appreciate the price. They're free. Finally, Battalion Chief Kevin McNally was recognized this last week in Orlando, Florida for his Fire Officer Designation by the Commission on Professional Credentialing, and he joins a small group of approximately 340 officers across the country who've achieved this designation. So what does all this mean to the community? In an era where experienced fire officers are retiring, our community is gaining better-trained and more experienced fire officers who are dedicated to continuously improving the Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Medical Services Department. This support better serves the evolving needs of our community. We define excellence as making progress towards the worthy goals of community risk reduction, superior community service, and enhanced operational efficiencies. We're passionate about continuous improvement. So thank you again for taking the time to recognize me and for a little bit of good news from the Fire Department. Have a good evening.
Well, we want to express our appreciation for both your achievement, Chief. It's an exceptional achievement, and it reflects not only on yourself, but on the entire department and the city, and we're very appreciative of the dedication and work that you've put into this and the dedication and work of the other members of the department who have been pursuing similar professional achievements.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, before you leave, Chief. It's getting you a little workout tonight. So last year, I had the privilege of attending your promotions event for fire staff, and it became so clear, as if we didn't know that before, but it became so clear that the Fire Department is a family. It's a family of fire staff, and they're members of their family. And I just wanted to say that I think we're very fortunate to have you and your staff and the kind of service that you instill in others to be a part of our family in Palo Alto. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Oh, we have one more. Councilmember Niss?
I think, Eric, on a much lighter note, we should talk a little about the Palo Alto Rotary Crab Feed, where you offered a meal in the firehouse. Do you know how much it went for?
I'd love to hear.
It went close to 2,000.
Yes. Yep.
And I thought, wow, that is, that's really a compliment, either to the cooking or to the firefighters. And I think it's a little of each.
Well, that's where we're at our best. I mean, when you can sit down and break bread with people and, you know, ride along a little bit and understand what we do, that's, plus, we're pretty good chefs.
I can't remember the exact amount, but I remember it was a very generous amount that somebody donated, both to the Rotary Foundation, but also certainly underscored the stature you have in the community.
Well, it's a joint project between labor and management. Labor puts up all the money to pay for the goods, and basically, the folks from IFF are doing all the cooking at the fire stations, and so it's really a joint effort. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. That was a nice donation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
All right. Our next item is Agenda Changes, Additions, and Deletions, and I just want to clarify that we have, at your place, as you will see, that we have changed the sequence of the action items so that formerly Item 13 is the first action item, 12 remains the second, and former item, or Item Number 11 is the final action item. So the Stanford Housing Units will be the first one, the Comp Plan Housing Update the second, and then a mitigated negative declaration on a sludge handling facility at the wastewater treatment plant will be the final. So our next item is the City Manager Comments. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Chief Nickel has exited the building, but I just would not only acknowledge him, but just by the classiness of his comments here before the council, I think shifting the attention to his staff and his team is just symbolic of the kind of culture he's working hard to cultivate in the department. But also just say, if we could just sort of think over the course of a year, how many recognitions for various departmental accreditations for excellent service the council gets to see, both from your city staff, but also from volunteers and other groups throughout our fine city. So I have a couple of things to report. A few of them are a little bit, we sound a little bit long-winded, but I just wanted to be sure that we were sharing all of the information relating to these items. First of all, in the, one of our favorite topics in town, leaf blowers. I did want to make clear that over the next month or so, our public should start to see information in their utility bill and other outreach materials, reminding our community not to use gas-powered leaf blowers to clean up their yards. And while this ordinance has been on the books for more than a decade, we continue to receive complaints about the noise and emissions associated with gas-powered leaf blowers. We are asking our residents and the gardeners who work in Palo Alto to stick to electric blowers or rakes for landscaping and garden cleanups. And so if you see or hear somebody using a gas-powered leaf blower, there are a couple of ways to report it. You can submit a report using the City of Palo Alto's 311 mobile app with the day of the week and time of violation, or you can call the city's police department non-emergency line at 650-329-2016. The city will send a warning to the address provided when you make a report, and a citation may be given to property owners or their gardeners if a violation is confirmed. We have a on-staff code enforcement officer available, and we'll be making efforts to be proactive and make sure we respond to complaints, both with residents and gardeners as possible. Secondly, just a reminder that the downtown RPP Phase Two permits are currently on sale. They're available at the parking website, citypaloalto.org/parking, and by visiting our customer service representative at the utilities counter on the ground floor of City Hall. Maps of the program boundary, employee parking zones, and a host of FAQs are also available on the parking website. Customer service is also available by phone and email at paloaltopermits@spplus.com and by calling 650-440-8074. An informational session for downtown employers was held in the community room at City Hall on March 16th for those employers, and was attended by about 20 employers, employees, and concerned residents. And an earlier informational session for residents was held on March 8th. Associated signage is scheduled for installation at the end of March, and I would just comment that I think the new website is improved and enhanced, and it was pretty simple for me to go on and both renew my permit and buy and pay for online a second permit. El Camino Road at El Camino Real Improvement Project, I know the council gets, you know, almost daily questions and comments and gripes about where we are on improvements in that area. I just want to report where we're going in the near term.
Mr. City, did you mean Embarcadero Road and El Camino?
I'm sorry, did I say something else? Embarcadero Road at El Camino Real, excuse me. One of the Embarcadero, Phase One of the Embarcadero Road at El Camino Real Improvement Project was completed at the end of 2015. This included the upgrade of the traffic signal equipment at the Town and Country Driveway and the pedestrian crossing in front of Trader Joe's. These two signals now communicate, and the timing was adjusted to allow vehicles exiting Town and Country to hold the green signal at the crosswalk. Previously, the crosswalk signal was backing up traffic into the driveway intersection. These signals still do not communicate with our new citywide traffic control system because they're not linked by fiber optic cable to the other 99 signals in the city. However, we will be installing a wireless modem to connect those signals to the central traffic control system via the cellular network in the next several weeks. The traffic signal at Embarcadero Road and El Camino Real is controlled by Caltrans and the state highway department, and we cannot communicate with it or modify the signal timing, certainly unilaterally. As would be expected, Caltrans prioritizes travel along El Camino Real, which often causes delays for folks approaching on Embarcadero Road. Once we link the two other signals into our citywide traffic control system, we plan to retime all of the city-owned signals along Embarcadero Road from East Bay Shore to the Town and Country Driveway, and that is scheduled for this year. Caltrans will provide their timing plan, and we will then be able to make some effort to better sync our signals to theirs. At the end of 2015, we also kicked off the planning and design of Phase Two of the project, which will make additional bicycle, pedestrian, and traffic circulation improvements along Embarcadero Road between Bryant Street and El Camino Real. We held a public meeting back in December to solicit feedback on the most important issues and developed some alternative concepts for review, and since then, we have conducted traffic counts, performed some existing conditions analyses, and refined three alternatives. We presented these to the public at a meeting at Palo Alto Unified School District Headquarters on Tuesday, March 15th, and welcomed about 20 attendees. In the next several months, we will work to identify a locally preferred alternative, and we'll bring it to the council for adoption and move into the final design phase. During the initial traffic study, we looked at what specific elements of the roadway were causing delays for motorists. We determined that the traffic signal to the crosswalk was not an issue. However, we did identify the Trader Joe's driveway as a significant contributing factor. Motorists exiting the driveway were not yielding as required, and they were causing gridlock in the curb lane for those waiting to access the shopping center or northbound El Camino Real. In order to address this issue on March 16th, we made signing and striping changes at Trader Joe's driveway to encourage more motorists to yield as required, and our initial observations during the mornings, after, and lunchtime peak hours showed that the treatment is proving to be effective. So more to come on that. In relation to our comprehensive traffic safety program, we did want to, again, advise the council that throughout 2016, we hope to initiate a more structured traffic safety program that will address series of intersection and roadway segments with a history of crashes and a potential for collisions in the future. This program will utilize crash reporting software named Crossroads, appropriately, which has been adopted by many other jurisdictions throughout Santa Clara County to identify candidate locations. Those can also, those locations could also be submitted through the Palo Alto 311 system and through the various regular transportation stakeholder meetings, which include payback of the city school, traffic safety committee, and others. Goals and performance measures for the program will be developed within the next several months, consistent with the already adopted plans and policies. As a first step in the rollout of the comprehensive traffic safety program, our city staff is moving forward with some experiments on two spot safety pilot projects starting in April and May. In each case, alternatives will be developed in consultation with stakeholder groups. Mailers will be distributed to the abutting properties, and signs will be installed to seek public input during the trial. The first project involves the installation of a temporary traffic circle with signage and striping at the intersection of Coal Ridge Avenue and Cowper Street near Walter Hayes Elementary. This pilot will be installed before April 10th, when Walter Hayes Elementary returns from spring break and remain in place for three months, at which point a permanent traffic circle may be installed as part of a planned public works project and informed by the results of the pilot. If the public is not supportive of the traffic circle, we'll look at other alternatives as a follow-up. This project was developed as a result of a series of requests submitted through Palo Alto 311 and concerns voiced directly to city staff by PTAs. The second pilot project will be located at the intersection of Embarcadero Road and High Street along the route to Palo Alto High School. There are several alternatives under consideration for this intersection, with the primary goals being to reduce the speeds of motor vehicles using the westbound ramp to Alma Street, increase the number of vehicles yielding at the existing crosswalks across the ramp, and better facilitate bicycle and pedestrian traffic to and from Palo Alto High School. This trial will begin in May, after a preferred alternative is identified and refined through consultation with our transportation stakeholder groups, and the same public engagement strategy will be used for all pilot projects. I would encourage the council or any interested members of the public to feel free to direct questions directly to Josh Mello, the city's chief transportation official. Moving on, the Palo Alto Human Relations Commission invites the council and the community to a community-wide forum to raise awareness on the issues of implicit bias and to promote diversity and inclusion. The event is titled "Being Different Together: Experiencing Palo Alto: Perception in Reality" will be held on Wednesday, March 30th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Mitchell Park Community Center. Through storytelling, listening, and dialogue, participants will be able to examine our own implicit biases, encourage understanding, and move conversation forward towards building a stronger, more compassionate, and inclusive community. The keynote speaker will be Dr. Joseph Brown, Associate Director of Diversity in First Gen Office at Stanford University. And we will be having and thanking in advance Council... council members Berman and Wolbach for being able to available, to be available for making some opening and closing remarks at the event. Thank you. City Clerk wanted me to again announce, put out a reminder that the city is looking for citizens who want to make a difference in our community by serving on the Utility Advisory Commission. The city is seeking applicants for the Utilities Advisory Commission, three terms or positions. The deadline to submit an application for this commission has been extended to March 23rd, which is this Wednesday, at 5:30 p.m. And the application deadline for boards and commissions is extended when, if an eligible incumbent does not reapply. Utilities Advisory Commissioner Steve Egglash and Jonathan Foster did not reapply. For more information, you can contact the city clerk's office at 650-329-2571, or contact David Carnahan in the clerk's office at david.carnahan@citypaloalto.org. Then I did want to also announce another upcoming community meeting on four proposed bicycle boulevards. A lot is happening on our bike and pedestrian plan this year. The final drafts of the concept plans for several bicycle boulevard projects will be presented at a public meeting on Tuesday, March 29th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. in the multipurpose room of the Lalloni Elementary School at 950 Amarillo Avenue. The following bicycle boulevard projects will be presented at the meeting: Amarillo Avenue to Marino Avenue, the Bryant Street update, the Lewis Road Montrose Avenue Bike Boulevard project, and the Ross Road Bicycle Boulevard. Approval of the concept plans is the first step in the design process for each project to move forward, and bike boulevards are local streets prioritized for travel by bicycle, and they typically include special signage, marking, and traffic calming measures that disturb, discourage automobile traffic. And then lastly, Lon, Cubberly Day hosted its second annual Cubberly Day Community Center Day this past Saturday, March 19th. It was a huge success. In the morning, about 60 volunteers, led by Canopy, planted more than 41 plants, shrubs, and trees, and laid fresh mulch in all planters around the campus. They even arranged for a visit from Smokey Bear. At 11:00 a.m., the campus was filled with hundreds of visitors enjoying art, music, and kids' activities, carnival games, face painting, bouncy houses, and dance performances and demonstrations by 12 Cubberly leasers and renters. Oh, that could come in handy. Additionally, guests had an opportunity to visit information desks hosted by 30 Cubberly groups to learn more about their programs, and knew this year was an opportunity to share memories of Cubberly of the past with photos and yearbooks from the high school days. We did find Greg Betts's yearbook picture at the event, and to share dreams for its future. The success of the event was attributed to hard work of our city staff and Canopy and 20 Quanis Club volunteers, along with 10 key club youth volunteers in the Green Meadow Community Association. So thanks to Rob DeGeis and the community services team and everybody else who helped out. And Lon, thank you. And then lastly, I had one, one quick item. We've got a very late question related to the consent calendar. I'll just do it right now, since it's just before then, was related to item number nine, which really is a, is a, essentially a renewal for maintenance and work performance on our emergencies telecom gear. One was a question of, is this sort of ongoing operational support? The answer is yes. And then secondly, recently, back in early February, the council actually approved the purchase of a whole series of replacement radios and consoles related to our 911 system, and there was a question as to whether or not these were different systems, and they are. This item is a, is an annual contract mostly related to maintenance, related to our MEOC, our Mobile Command Center, some of our other mobile commitments. So that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we will move on to oral communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on items that are not otherwise on the agenda, and the council cannot engage in dialogue on, on those items because they are not agendized. Our first speaker is Kate Downing, to be followed by Herb Borak. Each speaker will have up to three minutes.
Good evening, council members. I'm Planning and Transportation Commissioner Downing. The council has asked the PTC to assist it in community outreach and engagement. I'm here to communicate some concerns I've received from several members of the community over the last few weeks. They have indicated that they have been surprised that the council has chosen to make comments to staff before allowing the public to speak, because they've seen previous councils allow the public to speak first. In particular, people have expressed their desire for council to take their comments into account before making up their mind, and they've also felt like the process is discouraging, because they're forced to wait for several hours to make comment, and they simply can't spend that sort of time here on a regular basis, though they wish they could. This is a particularly salient issue for people who work multiple jobs or have kids to get back to. I think this is low-hanging fruit to encourage more members of the public to participate, and I hope the council takes these concerns to heart.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Herb Borak, to be followed by our final speaker, Mike
Mayor Burt and council members, there are two initiative, statewide initiative petitions being circulated that are related to high-speed rail, and the proponents are the same, proponents of both initiatives. One of them is mainly about bond measure and constitutional amendment for water storage projects, which would change statewide policy and essentially remove protecting the environment from the water project money. And that initiative would transfer $8 billion of remaining high-speed rail bond funds to the water storage projects. The second initiative is just to terminate high-speed rail, and if there was some other measure passed that would allow that money to be transferred to the other measure, that would happen, but otherwise, it's possible for just the high-speed rail measure to be terminated and that money not to go someplace else. I was concerned that only the first measure would actually be circulated, and that appears to be what's happening. Last Thursday, the proponents notified the Secretary of State that they had collected 25% of the signatures needed, and that initiates a project, process in the legislature for a joint committee hearing on the initiative. And I urge, you know, the council, the staff, and lobbyists to pay attention to when that hearing's happening, because the city may want to participate. It could happen as late as June 30th, which is the last day to qualify a measure for the November ballot. On the timing, if the proponents want to have time for an actual signature count of every signature, they'd have to turn in the petitions next week, because it's a three-stage process. First, of counting how many signatures have been turned in, then doing a random sample, and then if the random sample is not more than 110% of the number needed, counting every signature. And they cannot do that on their present schedule. They've been asking people to turn signatures in by April 26th, and that would meet the May 9th deadline of qualifying by random sample. They would have to get more than 110% of valid signatures of the 585,407 they would need for a constitutional amendment. And the other thing that I would urge council, to the extent that it can have any influence over these proponents, is to circulate the other initiative, which is just about high-speed rail, and it only requires 365,880 valid signatures, because it's only a statute and doesn't involve a constitutional amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Mike Francois. Welcome.
Welcome, mayor and council members. I'm just going to share some information with you, considering you're my neighbors, and I did with Menlo Park already, but Roundup, which is a pesticide which Monsanto uses, we're going to try to get rid of it. East Palo Alto, Menlo Park already banned it. And I'm bringing this information to you because Perelman Law Firm down in San Diego, we have a, it's 800-908-5770, Perelman Law Firm. What they're going to do is go against Monsanto. And the attorney down there, his name is Joseph Eaton, and he's representing all 50 states in the United States to rid the United States of Roundup, because one of his reasons are, there's a girl in Texas who got a Roundup within her, in their recycled water, not sure, not their recycled water, in their groundwater. And that Roundup contained glycolphosphate, which gave her cancer. Somehow, it got into her lady's garment, her tampon, and it got down there, and she's allegedly losing her leg behind this, since she was an athlete. So I'm just passing information on to you. If you are using Roundup, maybe you want to study it or check your groundwater and see if you have this glycolphosphate, because it, this attorney, Joseph Eaton, wants to know if anybody has symptoms of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. If they have that, they need to call him, because he's representing all 50 states, and he's representing people who could possibly have this disease that is carcinogenic. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to the consent calendar, and I see we have speaker cards. Are, let's see, we have four speakers. If anyone else wishes to speak, please fill out a card and bring it forward promptly. We'll be moving on from public speakers shortly. Our first speaker is Bruce Hodge, to speak on agenda item number five. You have up to five minutes to speak. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burt. I'm Bruce Hodge from carbon-free Palo Alto. A few days ago, while idly perusing the upcoming agenda for tonight's meeting, I was very surprised to see an item on the consent calendar that would largely reset Palo Alto's plans for local solar. Being a close observer of Palo Alto's policy front on these matters, I was stunned. Why had I not heard of this before? Well, guess what? No one else had heard of it either. I find this tactic to be profoundly disturbing and undemocratic in nature. This is not what I expect from Palo Alto city government. Members of our community have worked diligently over a few years, more than a few years, to ensure that the city has a reasonable plan for local solar, and it would be almost criminal to see all that undone with so little consideration. The committee's recommendation would essentially kill the Palo Alto Clean Program as well as plans for a community solar program. This flies in the face of both staff and UAC recommendations and is incongruent with the direction being set by the upcoming ESCAP. Frankly, this is meddling in a complex area for the wrong reasons with very negative consequences. The city had previously set a goal to obtain 4% of its total energy from local solar. Terminating Palo Alto Clean would blow a hole in those plans. There are ample opportunities for the city to modify the Palo Alto Clean Program in ways that serve the goals of the program. There's absolutely no need to apply such a sledgehammer approach. With net metering being phased out, Palo Alto Clean now becomes a central mechanism for encouraging local solar in a cost-effective way. For various reasons, Palo Alto has had a difficult time in building out local solar. I thought we were on a pathway to exit our doldrums. Let's not throw yet another monkey wrench into Palo Alto's local solar future, and please, enough of this undemocratic and unhelpful behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeb Eddy, also speaking to number five, to be followed by Vanessa Warhite.
Mayor Burt, thank you for your bringing up the subject of electric bicycles. Some of you know that I rode my electric bicycle into this room here several years ago, and Larry Klein was worried about dirtying the carpet. I am a co-chair of the Green Sanctuary Committee of our Unitarian Church here in Palo Alto. I'm on the board, and we, just within the last three weeks or so, signed a third of a million-dollar contract to put solar panels on the parking lot of our church for distribution to the City of Palo Alto. And so we are concerned that we would lose the possibility of the Clean Program. So we would encourage you very much to, we're looking forward to a discussion of it next Monday, when you take it off the agenda tonight. Last item, could I wonder, how many people here have any experience driving a sled dog I don't see any hands. I mention this because many of you may have read, the temperature in Fairbanks, Alaska at the start of this year's Iditarod was five degrees Fahrenheit above the long-term average. They had to bring in snow by train to allow the dog sleds to start the race. Let us not have that move south into our area here. Let's get the agenda up for public discussion where it deserves to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vanessa Warhite on item number five, to be followed by Craig Lewis.
I'm another voice encouraging you to pull the Palo Alto Clean item off the consent calendar, and to remind you that, as Bruce pointed out, that 4% is actually a pretty small percentage, and we are nowhere near getting to it. And Palo Alto Clean enables progress towards this goal. And one of the intents of the pilot is to, it's a pilot, and it's only halfway there. And if we kill it before it actually has a chance to do what it's designed to do, we're not going to actually learn much from it. So I think we need to let the pilot do its job, and we still, even once it's done, the way it should be done, have a long way to go. I'd also like to point out, like, 44% of Palo Alto residents, I rent my house, which means I can't put solar on my roof. And non-owner occupied commercial buildings are in a very similar position. They can't, they're totally disincentivized to put solar on their roofs. And so not only do I want you to not kill Palo Alto Clean, I want you to seriously consider expanding to community solar using many of the same mechanisms that you're going to learn from the pilot program, if and when you allow it to actually do its thing. And just again, you know, Jeb mentioned the Iditarod. I'd also like to put tonight's discussion in a little different context. Today, the Journal Nature Climate Change published a study about the actual economic and social costs of rising CO2 emissions and the near-term possibility of passing tipping points in the Earth's climate system. And the results of the study show, and I'm just going to quote here, "Increases in the present social cost of carbon are nearly eightfold." They're currently set at $15 per ton, and they should be $116 per ton. So if you're trying to save money, maybe you should consider that fact as well. Their, their advice was that the corresponding optimal policy should involve an immediate, massive effort to control CO2 emissions. Getting us to 4% is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Craig Lewis, also speaking to item five.
Thank you, mayor, council members. I, my name is Craig Lewis. I'm the executive director of the Clean Coalition. The Clean Coalition has a long history with the Palo Alto Clean Program, as well as several other Palo Alto initiatives. Clean Coalition helped to design the Palo Alto Clean Program several years ago. We also were hired to design the RFP, that it resulted in the five, or at least four out of the five city-owned parking structures to get solarized under the Palo Alto Clean Program. That was an RFP that we designed, and we helped administer that and get it to a solar owner-operator that's going to lease those parkings, parking structures. And also recently, the Clean Coalition was hired by Palo Alto's Office of Emergency Services, OES, to specify how to get a solar-driven, solar emergency microgrid, so that solar power can indefinitely provide power back up to OES emergency services here in Palo Alto. So all of this leads me to requesting that the Palo Alto Clean Program be allowed to be implemented. So, all of this leads me to requesting that the Palo Alto Clean Program be allowed to live its full course in its current form, so that it is economically viable for people to pursue. It is only recently, after three years, that the price got to a level, the price of solar has been coming down, the price got to a level just recently where the Palo Alto Clean Program was economically viable. And now, we have several projects that have applied and are going to be built out. At this point, where the market meets the, becomes, the program becomes economically viable, that is the wrong time to drop the floor on the price. That is the right time to allow this program to fulfill its course. It is a pilot-scale program. We need more projects to come through it. And very importantly, the Palo Alto Clean Program was designed to get projects in the commercial scale, the commercial market sector. The commercial market sector in Palo Alto is almost entirely non-owner occupied. This means that the only way that the commercial market sector can participate in local solar is to have the energy sold directly to the utility, which is what Palo Alto Clean does. Net metering requires the tenant to be the benefit of avoiding that retail purchase from the grid. So, net metering is not applicable to the vast majority of the commercial market sector in Palo Alto. And if Palo Alto is going to come anywhere close to achieving its 4% local solar objective, it absolutely has to have the commercial market sector participating. And that's what Palo Alto Clean is all about, is getting the commercial market sector. Also, I will add that there's been a false comparison of local solar priced against, can I have another moment? Yeah. Priced against central generation solar. That is a terrible comparison. Local solar provides the community with resilience. That is something that remote generation can never provide to Palo Alto or any other local community. So, I've got a lot more to say. I'd like the item pulled, and of course, I'll have plenty to say next week as well and throughout the week.
Thank you. All right. We will now return to the consent calendar and motion. Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I'll move to pull item number five in a second.
Okay. We have councilmembers DeBois, Berman, and Holman, who have moved to pull item number five. And so, item number five will be removed, and do we have a date to reschedule that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I think that actually, we have some openings on next week's agenda for your meeting, and so that would be the meeting of the 28th, beyond action item.
Thank you. So, do we have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar excluding item number five?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. That's a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Scharf, second by Councilmember Niss. Please vote on the board. Councilmember Wolbach, were you, did you vote? And that passes unanimously. So, we will move on to action items.
Can I just make a statement?
You didn't vote against anything, so it's not really in order to make statements.
I just wanted to congratulate the people. I just need to show some of how much I've been working hard to get it working.
So, our final, or next area of business is discussion of reallocation and increase of housing units at Stanford University for graduate students, and possible direction to prepare a commend letter, comment? I was wondering what a commend letter was. A comment letter regarding the project to the County of Santa Clara. So, welcome.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. As we heard during the study session, there was a presentation from representatives from Stanford. This item was placed on the agenda.
Further, I, I'm being made aware that Councilmember DeBois needs to recuse himself. Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I thought I was going to get home early tonight, but we rearranged the order. So, because I have a source of income from Stanford, I'm going to recuse myself from this item, and I will wait to be called back. Thanks.
Thank you. Sorry. Please continue.
Thank you. So, this item was just placed on the agenda to see if the council was interested in city staff preparing a supplemental comment letter that would go to the county for their consideration. As previously stated, the city of Palo Alto does not have any review authority for the project, but the county would consider any letters that are transmitted. Their hearing is on March 24th. If there's comments, I'll make some notes, and we'll transcribe those into a letter. If there's no comments that you want to forward on to the county, then no further action would take place.
And, Mr. Lee, can you review for the council the sphere of influence role of the city in, within Stanford lands, Stanford County lands academic?
Yeah, to the extent that Stanford has property within the city of Palo Alto, and now also on beyond in Santa Clara County, we do consider as part of our comprehensive plan that sphere of influence. So, when there is development activity that does take place, that is something that we do want to be mindful about and think about in our long-range planning efforts. This is a project that originally was approved back in 2000. It contemplated some additional housing units beyond the amount going forward, which is why there is a review process to go to the Planning Commission, the County Planning Commission. I think it's appropriate certainly for a city like Palo Alto to offer comments for the county's consideration, and that's, and that's the effort that we're going through today.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Scharf, you have questions?
I do. So, my question was, would it be appropriate to put our comments regarding the RENA issues in this letter, and that we'd like to see it at least along the lines that we did last time, where we got credit for it? Is that a good time to put this in, or do you not think it's a good time to put it in?
So, as I understand the, the previous transfer, there was a conversation, I think it was in 2013, where the, where ABAG had approved, I think it was 200 units, going from Palo Alto to the county, and those were moderate income units, as best as I come up to speed on the topic. And so, what's, what's different this time is that we've completed that review cycle. We are not currently in a, our current RENA schedule goes out to, I don't know, was it 20, 21, 22, 23?
So, yes, I understand that. So, my sense of it is this, is that the way they're going to do the next RENA cycle, I hear, could very well have a strong impact on how well you achieved your last RENA cycle. And so, I thought we should get some credit for some of these units. So, when they look at the next RENA cycle, we get credit for some of the housing that was done on Stanford. Because this is a large, and it's really one, it's really one group of housing. And if Stanford builds 2,000 units, and, you know, we build a number, we should get credit for some of that, when people look at how much housing Palo Alto has built. And that's really my, my comment on this, and I, I would like to see us get some of that credit, because that will inform the next RENA cycle.
So, I guess the short answer to that is, we can include a comment to the county asking, stating our interest in, in having a, a conversation with them, with the county, and with ABAG when we consider the next RENA allocations. I don't know that we'll get credit the way that you're thinking, a unit-for-unit credit. We, we've already demonstrated that we can build the type and amount of housing that we are required to do as part of RENA. What we might do is what we've just done, what we did in 2013, which is, county, we want you to take a certain amount of, we'd like you to take a certain amount of our units that have been allocated to us by the state, and that's a negotiation that we would have, and we can reflect back on this conversation about the, the units that were produced here as part of the project of the county's review.
So, just briefly, they're going to look back and see what you accomplished under your RENA numbers, not just that you zoned for. And that may inform the next cycle.
They will look back and see what was accomplished, as, as they do with, I mean, that's one of the things that you report out on. But if you fail to achieve your numbers, it's...
You'll get a larger allocation the next cycle. That's my sense of what's going to happen.
Not for failing to meet your numbers. There may be other factors that result in a larger number.
Well, I think what they're talking about when they do the factors next time, that's what they're going to do. I mean, you never know, but that's a big discussion going on at ABAG at the moment.
Well, can I just add to this? I don't see how our position is harmed by us making a statement to this effect, right? And even to the extent that there isn't just a kind of direct correlation, as far as sort of the public perception and perspective about what has happened in Palo Alto, it seems that we, we want to put ourselves in a position to be able to make that case, that additional housing has taken place here.
I see no other questions of staff at this time? Oh, Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I think Stanford made a very effective case that building housing on campus would be helpful for Palo Alto, and had a positive impact on traffic. I appreciated your letter, Jonathan, that you sent to them, and I think it would be helpful to support Stanford in this, and also to make the case that it's important for us. I would like, on packet page 14, there are...
Sorry, Councilmember Schmidt, is the question period?
Oh, not comment.
Correct.
Okay, then I'll hold on.
Councilmember Holm.
Yes, just, this is the letter going to the county. So, question is, can we get us fine-grained in our addressing of the, of the project to the county, such things as I raised earlier, which were about maintenance of the landscape's green and HVAC equipment noise? Can we get that fine-grained?
Yeah, we can, we can make a comment. As I understood it, even the building placements haven't really been fully vetted out yet, so I'm sure items related to mechanical equipment are, is not being developed yet either. But we can express our interest in compliance with noise standards that are comparable to the city, and also our interest in having the landscaping, that screening, the development be maintained, and encourage that those be incorporated as conditions.
And who has the more stringent noise standards, the county or the city?
I don't have that information, but we could look into it and request that it be set to, request that it be set to the more stringent standard.
Thank you very much.
All right. We will now hear from members of the public. I have two speaker cards. Herb Borack, to be followed by Phyllis Castle. If anyone else wishes to speak, please bring your card forward at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Bird. Councilmembers, Stanford's general use permit defines the level of noticing required for projects depending upon their level of environmental review. And this project, the noticing involved is notifying city staff. But the noticing requirements don't define how Palo Alto reviews an application such as this. And I believe it's appropriate for the city council, based upon a recommendation of its Planning and Transportation Commission, to make a response to the application to the County Planning Commission. Staff has essentially decided, since they're the ones who are receiving the notice, they determine whether they're going to do, notify council at all. For example, last year, they didn't place on either the council's agenda or the Planning and Transportation Commission agenda, the fact that Stanford wanted to remove and change the housing designation near the hospital, so they no longer be for residents, and instead be for other students. And this year, essentially, staff has said they're going to be writing the letter, and they want to have study sessions with these two legislative bodies, rather than doing what I believe would be the proper thing to do, to place it on a timely basis on the commission's agenda and the council's agenda as a decision-making action by the council as to what to say. In regard to the project's effect on Palo Alto, you heard recently from the residents of Evergreen Park of their request for a residential parking permit program because of, you know, cars coming from Stanford and parking in the neighborhood rather than paying permit fees. So, that's one thing that, that the council can do in response to this. Another, as Vice Mayor Scharf has said, is to begin those discussions of how many of these units we should get credit for. I mean, 2,000 units, that covers our entire regional housing allocation for the current period. So, I believe that some kind of condition to, to the approval, to get those discussions going with the county. Finally, this is some housing that's being done for the current use permit and the current entitlement for academic floor area. But Stanford tends to do things piecemeal. You know, they may think that, well, if they do this housing now, then the next time there's, there's a use permit, they get credit for the academic buildings. And it should be clear in the council's comments that this has nothing to do with a future increase in their academic square footage entitlement. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Phyllis Castle. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Bird and councilmembers. I'm speaking for the League of Women Voters, for Ellen Forbes, our president. And the League of Women Voters would like to support this project. It is 2,000 people who are being housed. Unfortunately, it's not 2,000 units. It would be nice if we really had 2,000 units, but this is a significant amount of people who will no longer be seeking housing in our community in the mid-peninsula area. Again, not all in Palo Alto, but house them someplace, and they're not seeking housing in our community. In addition, we support the reduction in, in traffic through our community. It will make a difference. It will be less, with some very small numbers, in some intersect, in one or two intersections, and one part of the day, we actually get an increase, but this is a decrease overall in traffic through our city, and an improvement in the air pollution situation that we have. So, I won't read the whole letter, but please do move this forward positively. It's a big difference for our community.
Thank you. So, we'll now return this to the council, and I guess perhaps if the staff could comment on the one issue that Mr. Borack raised, the, the letter that the city would be provided to the County Planning Commission, would it be as a staff letter, or would it have the weight of the city council and policy position?
So, either way, it's fine. It's just logistics. We can, we can prepare that for your signature, and through the city manager's office, we can route that to you.
Okay. So, we'll hear councilmembers' thoughts on that issue as well. So, colleagues, let's return for discussion of, of this item. Vice Mayor Scharf.
So, I, I think it would be appropriate for the letter to come from the mayor. I think that's something. That's good. And I also think we should take a supportive position of this right out the gate, and say, we support Stanford, building these units, that it'll reduce traffic, and will be a positive for our community. So, with that, I'll move that we take a supportive position, and I assume other people can add amendments as they want.
That's a motion by Vice Mayor Scharf, second by Councilmember Niss. Would you wish to speak further to your motion?
Yes. I, I think this is a really good, good thing that Stanford's doing. I think it will actually reduce traffic, bring people out of other housing, house them on the campus. Will have minimal impacts, and will, on, on a range of things, and will have actually a bunch of positive impacts in terms of traffic and congestion and all of that. So, I think this is something that we should definitely support, and be on record as supporting. I think that's important.
All right. Do we, we have a motion being composed for the board? It's...
I can't see.
It's not on our screen yet, just... Okay. All right. Councilmember Niss.
Yes, I'm glad to support this motion. This is moving us in a very good direction tonight. I don't think it was accidental that Stanford's addition to the community and the way of I don't think it was accidental that Stanford's addition to the community and the way of housing is on our agenda the same night that we're having a long discussion on housing very shortly. And yes, we do have something to say as we are within, with, within certainly the, the boundaries of Stanford as far as commenting. However, I, I am reminded that the county, county will actually make a final decision on this. I know they'll be interested in what we have to say, but at the same time, they will make that final decision. And as I recall, I think they're either bumping up against the GUP or into the GUP with this. But the fact that it is, that it is housing and is going to relieve the situation both in the mid-peninsula as well as on the campus, I think will make a great deal of difference. So, thank you.
And Mr. Late, maybe you'd be helpful to just clarify the relation between this proposal and the general use permit, just so everybody's clear.
Sure.
It's the amount that exceeds the, the, what is currently authorized.
Yeah, and I don't have the, the precise number, but the, the general use permit that was approved in 2000 accounted for, I believe, with some 3,000 housing units. What the, what the proposal is to the county that they're requesting to do is move about 500 units from other districts or other campuses to this east, the Escondido Village, and in addition to that, the 1450. Now, again, the GUP, the, the GUP did establish that hard, you know, I think it was 3013 or 3015 cap, but it did not preclude the opportunity to go beyond that through the planning commission as long as there is sufficient environmental review. This is not a, an amendment to the, the GUP. This is just implementing part of its, the entitlements that were granted.
Thank you. Councilmember Phil Seth.
Yeah, I think, I think this is, if you're going to add housing, I think this is a very reasonable way to do it. I think it's, and I think we should support it. I do want to second, third, and fourth the vice mayor's comments about, let's, let's see how this relates to our RENA allocation, because it does, it does, you know, increase the, increase housing in the, in this area. The only other thing I would comment, and probably I should have asked as well, the Stanford folks were there, is the, the traffic estimate, that it actually reduces traffic slightly. I assume that movement of the Stanford grad students but doesn't include the new residents in Palo Alto who will backfill, backfill the units that they're moving out of. And my guess is that if you included all those people, it's probably, it's probably neutral, right? So it's not a reduc, my, my guess is that the reduction is muted, let's put it that way. Thanks.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'd like to endorse this and to be specific in the language we use. And I would request that we use the language in the Stanford letter on packet page 14, paragraph three, where it says, "Construction of higher-density infill housing, of higher-density infill housing near jobs is precisely the type of project the governor's office has determined will reduce vehicle miles traveled."
So you're on page what?
Fourteen, third full paragraph. Let's see, just let me add a comment on the RENA. I think it's a good idea to be, get credit for RENA in our sphere of influence, but we should be careful. In the 99 to 06 period, Palo Alto reached 120% of its RENA allocation, and the RENA allocation doubled in the 07-14 period, so we should be careful.
So Vice Mayor Scharf, have you found, are you accepting that amended language?
Well, I'm actually, so all you're asking is that we include this language somewhere in the letter.
Yeah, that we're supporting Stanford by using their language.
Well, I'd like us to say we support the project, and then I'm happy to have a sentence that says, "Construction of higher-density housing is precisely the type of project." That's fine.
Councilmember Niss, you also accept that?
Yes, if the vice mayor accepts it, I will accept it.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Wobak.
I'll be supporting this, and actually, just wanted to weigh in on something that was just mentioned by Councilmember Phil Seth, which is, you know, I don't want to assume that the people who are going to be moving into this housing are going to be moving out of other Palo Alto housing. That's something that, you know, I don't think we've got clarity about, and a lot of them might be coming from other cities, and so it might really have a negative, or in the positive sense, but negative numerical impact on the number of car trips to Palo Alto. So just wanted to throw my two cents on that one.
Councilmember Holman.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, so I'm actually happy that this is happening. It is a good location and it's a good, a good outcome for the community overall. And I think it's good for us to include the paragraph that Councilmember Schmidt has, has asked to be added. I'd also like to ask for the following to be included. As project plans are developed, attention be paid to continuing the tree canopy as ongoing screening and that HVAC impacts, excuse me, and that ongoing HVAC impacts be considered at a rate, at a, at a level that are, whichever is more restrictive, either county or city standards.
That's fine.
Okay.
And we don't have Councilmember Niss present, so we'll await her consent on the, that amendment as well. I would just add my support, maybe somebody can, see if they can get Councilmember Niss. One of the questions of where these, these new tenants currently reside, I think, is important information. Stanford said that they didn't have really that data, that it, they assumed it's from both Palo Alto and other surrounding communities. I was assuming that data would have been available to Stanford. It seems like it would be pretty easy to obtain its current grad students, or maybe not these specific students, but what is the geographic distribution of residency of grad students who don't currently live on campus? And I think that's important just for planning purposes and understanding the impacts of this project. But I support the letter and, and support the project. So Councilmember Niss, do you support this latest amendment?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay, all right. I see no more comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just might make a, just quick comment, just more for the record, is that the, the council discussion is focused on the, really, the kind of core land use issues of the project, and I would just say that we do have a lot of interrelationships with Stanford on a host of other issues that are separate and outside of this, this particular letter, but we, we haven't looked at identifying every potential impact. I mean, for example, we have, we provide fire and rescue services to the campus. You know, there's a potential in the future that this has impacts on services, but we have a vehicle for working that out separate from this letter and that sort of thing. So I don't think it's a necessity to, you know, include anything like that, but I did want, I didn't want to be misunderstood that we thought there were no potential impacts of the project. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, please vote on the board. And Councilmember Holman, did you mean to vote no?
Hit the wrong button, sorry.
I suspected as much.
But there was a word that's missing in the, in the amendment. Yeah, okay. And I'm going to, I'm going to get it, okay, yes, okay.
All right. That passes unanimously with Councilmember DeBois recusing himself. So thank you, everyone. And we will now proceed with item number 12, which is the comprehensive plan update, housing sites and programs. Two minutes ahead of schedule.
Now we know what the issue is.
So the staff has requested that the council provide guidance on housing issues and programs for consideration and implementation concurrent with the comprehensive plan update, and they've listed a number of potential issues. I would say that one of the things that we will want to be considering tonight is not only the question of which of these proposed programs and the council would like to provide guidance on or support for, but also to identify any that we are interested in having proceed ahead of the comprehensive plan schedule. And as we have that, should we have any of, in that category, we'll need to have an understanding from staff on how that would impact staff resources. So I anticipate that this would be somewhat of an iterative process if we were to consider any of these items to move forward more aggressively. So on that note, Director Gittelman, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Burton, councilmembers, Hillary Gittelman, the planning director. First, before I start, let me thank the staff who contributed to this item. No doubt, they are having a delicious beverage as they watch from home. This evening is one in a long series of comprehensive plan update discussions, this one focusing on housing. There's a lot of material and a lot of ideas in the staff report that we sent to you, and I'm not going to repeat all of those. I have a high-level summary, it's about 20 slides, that I'm going to go through pretty quickly, but then we can answer any questions you have. The goals for this evening, the primary goal is to receive your input and guidance on housing issues and programs for consideration and implementation concurrent with the comp plan update. It's an opportunity to inform the citizens advisory committee's work on the land use element, and we have a delegation consisting of four members of the CAC here this evening. I don't know if you recall, but originally, this discussion of housing was going to be a joint meeting between the CAC and the council, but our schedule got modified, so we've ended up with a delegation of these four members representing a diversity of perspectives. I'm hoping that the mayor will give the delegation collectively 10 minutes to address the council before the public comment period. Tonight's discussion also provides an opportunity for the council to inform development of this fifth scenario that you've directed us to include in the EIR that we'll be preparing for the comp plan update and discussing with the council later in April and May. And finally, it's an opportunity to address, I think we all recognize, one of the significant planning issues of the day. Some of the issues that we will have the opportunity to discuss this evening and that we hope to get your input on include the potential relocation of some of the housing sites. We'll talk about those sites in South Palo Alto that we committed in our housing element to reexamine. We also want to get your input on some new ideas, like potentially changing zoning regulations to, to replace non-retail commercial FAR with residential FAR in certain parts of the city. Also, potential changes to zoning to encourage small units, micro units, accessory dwelling units and other forms of housing. And I'm sure the council will have some additional ideas to put on the table this evening for discussion. The context of these discussions, I think you know, is increasing housing costs throughout our region and in the city, changing demographics and long commutes. We've had many conversations with the council about the impacts of growth and what's happening overall in the region, and this is just a part of that story. Also, part of the context is the ratio of jobs to housing. We talk about it here as a ratio between jobs and employed residents. This chart is showing the ratio in the region, the county and the city. And as we've talked about in, in the council meetings quite recently, the ratio in the city is almost three to one. The bottom line really is that we are not producing housing in our region enough to keep pace with job growth. And that's true anywhere and also in Palo Alto. This is just a bar chart showing units produced per year. You'll see in some years, we do a really great job and produce a lot of housing, in other years, not very much at all. We have a long-term average, and I, I meant to find out how many years are in this average, but I, I didn't. A long-term average of about 149 households per year, which equates to 160 units or so. Also, in terms of the city's plans, the context of what we're talking about here this evening include the city's adopted housing element. We adopted the housing element in December of 2014, and then it was certified by the state in January of 2015. We also, as you know, have the ongoing comprehensive plan update, and we're setting the city's goals, policies and programs for land use transportation and the rest through the year 2030, which is quite a bit longer, a longer look than the housing element. We're also preparing the program-level EIR for the comp plan update. And then there's the promise that we will do implementing regulatory changes, changes to our zoning regulations, either concurrent with or following adoption of the comp plan update. Those are all part of the context of what we're talking about this evening. And let me just go into a little more detail about the housing element. A lot of this is in your staff report. This housing element was adopted at the end of 2014. It basically contains an analysis of housing needs and constraints. And then it talks about how the city will meet its regional housing needs allocation. It contains an inventory of sites and contains a number of quantitative objectives and programs, implementation programs intended to facilitate the provision of housing for all levels of affordability. Importantly, all elements of the comprehensive plan, including the housing element, have to be internally consistent. So the fact that we're updating the rest of the comprehensive plan right now doesn't mean that we can ignore the housing element. We really have to look at the housing element and make sure we're not creating any inconsistencies. Of course, if we decide to amend the housing element, that's something that we have to do in consultation with the state Housing and Community Development, HCD. So the sites map, I think you're familiar with the map of inventory, the inventory of sites that came out of the housing element update. It's in four principal areas, downtown, the California Avenue area, the El Camino corridor, and then there's a San Antonio Road sites. And the sites in South Palo Alto are the ones that we actually included a program in the housing element, saying that we would reevaluate, reevaluate these sites and determine whether they should be eliminated in favor of either increased densities or new sites closer to transit and services. We'll talk about that in a minute. So the comp plan update can complement and support the housing element update in a variety of ways. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to amend the housing element, but if, it's an opportunity to include programs and policies in the comp plan to support the goals and objectives of the housing element. And the comp plan EIR tests a number of build-out scenarios, ranging from what we call business as usual to this scenario five that the council has requested and that we have not yet fully defined. And I should say that these, when it comes to housing, these scenarios are, are really kind of additive. So the, for example, scenario two adds a concept of small units, accessory dwelling units, to the business as usual scenario. And so it has the same number of units, but they tend to be a different size. We've assumed that they would be a different size or type of unit. Then likewise, scenario three adds to that kind of policy around small units, adds the idea of increased densities at existing sites in exchange for eliminating the sites at South, in South Palo Alto. We, we, as I mentioned, we haven't defined scenario five yet. We hope to do that with your help in April and May, and we really have to collectively decide how, how bold we're going to be in terms of the housing numbers for this scenario. You've talked a bit about that you want lower job numbers in this scenario, but it would be great to hear this evening what your thoughts are for the housing side of the equation. So here's a figure that shows scenario two from the draft EIR. It's basically showing you that the sites remain the same, but there's a policy focus on- on smaller units. This is scenario three. It proposes eliminating the sites on San Antonio Road and on South El Camino and increasing density at other sites in downtown and the California Avenue area. And that includes potentially adjusting some of the non-residential FAR and trading that out for residential FAR in downtown. Then scenario four adds to that. It has some of the same changes in unit size and policies around density, but it also suggests that we could add new sites along El Camino Real, the frontage of the research park and the frontage of the shopping center would be new sites in exchange for those sites that would be eliminated on San Antonio Road and South El Camino. This is a picture of one of those sites on San Antonio Road. It's, you know, from a planning perspective, it's not a terrible-looking site for redevelopment as housing. It's just not as close to services as you could imagine some of the other sites would be. And so, the questions we have for the council this evening, should we follow through with this idea and eliminate sites in the south and replace them with higher densities elsewhere? Or should we replace them with new sites? Or should we replace them with both? And then what policies and programs can we include to encourage the type of housing that we want? All of these questions relate not just to planning and zoning, but to design issues. Design is a factor in a variety of ways. It can affect the character of the corridor or the community and neighborhood that the housing is located in. It can affect unit types. It can affect aesthetics or compatibility. So, the, this is a picture from the South El Camino guidelines, dates back to 2002, but I think it advances this idea of nodes along a commercial corridor. That is one possibility of what you can achieve with higher-density housing. The city council has talked about unit types and potentially reduced parking standards. This is going to be critical if we start thinking of higher densities in downtown or substituting residential FAR for commercial FAR in places like downtown where it's very constrained, reducing the amount of parking, reduce the costs, and the impacts, the traffic impacts of units, because people are encouraged or really forced to take alternate modes. The council has also talked at length about good design and about compatibility and the ability of design to reinforce neighborhood fabric and great streets. In fact, I think this is really, we don't say it off this way, but it's really one of the council's and the community's core values when it comes to new development. So, I've thrown a lot at you, both in the staff report and in the presentation. So, here are some suggested discussion questions for this evening, if you'd like. Number one, as I indicated, we're looking for your input on whether we should eliminate those housing sites on San Antonio Road and South El Camino, and if so, should we replace them with higher densities or with new sites or with both? And what additional information, if any, do you need to make that decision? Also, should we explore this idea of eliminating non-retail commercial FAR and substituting it with residential FAR in mixed-use areas? And if so, which mixed-use areas? Would new types of housing, small units, reduced parking requirements, be acceptable in these areas? Are there other incentives or types of housing that we should explore? And how can the CAC help to advance this conversation during their work on the land use and community design element? Very important. So, with that, I look forward to the council's questions and comments. I was hoping that you would hear first from the delegation from the CAC and then from the public.
Thank you. So, just before we hear from the members of the CAC, we have already 23 cards. If anyone else wishes to speak, they need to bring their card forward at this time. We'll be cutting off submission of speaker cards momentarily. And just so everyone can prepare, because of the large number of cards, we will be limiting comments to two minutes each for each speaker. And so, we have even more cards. And you're not obligated to even take the full two minutes, because we're looking at probably in the neighborhood of an hour, just for the public comments. And we had budgeted an hour and a half for the item. That doesn't look like it's going to be very promising if we're looking for substantive questions and comments by the council. So, just to make everyone aware of that reality for ourselves. So, we have, I think, four members of the CAC here, and you have approximately 10 minutes amongst the four of you, if you would like to orchestrate how you'd like to do your comments.
While they're getting assembled, I should say the committee is doing fantastic work. They started their discussion of the land use element at the last meeting, and they'll continue it in April. And it's, as you could imagine, a very robust conversation, a lot of different opinions, but also a lot of similar opinions.
Approximately 10.
Okay.
Should we begin?
Yes, go right ahead.
Okay. So, the four of us are, I'm Elaine Wong.
Oh, sorry. Julia Moran.
Doria Suma.
Lydia Koo.
And we're here just to kind of give you a sampling of some of the thoughts that the CAC as a body, points of agreement, areas of differences. We just are trying to represent the totality of some of the discussions that have been happening, and just want to share a few thoughts with respect to the items that are on this packet. So, first, with respect to small units, I think there's some broad consensus that the best place for small units is in the C zones and mixed-use buildings with retail on ground floor and some or no commercial office space. And there's some sense that increasing density limits can assist with the creation of smaller units. So, some CAC members have expressed support for increasing the density limits or maybe even having no density limits, adjusting parking ratios, but not abolishing them. So, for example, one car per unit or maybe even a little bit less, coupled with car sharing or other incentives to reduce parking demand and car trips. Others definitely felt too that increasing density limits could be explored, but only within existing height limits, setbacks, site development standards, et cetera. I think half, a little bit more than, slightly more than half of the CAC members were open to some height increase for strategically placed housing, especially affordable housing. And again, this is, you know, housing for seniors, housing for adults with disabilities, and again, along those C corridor areas. A few other CAC members have expressed interest in what is known as car-light micro-units, again, going back to the sort of parking reduction idea. And then, some CAC members are obviously very concerned about the parking requirements and want to provide, ensure that there's adequate parking on site. And so, I think that that kind of captures the range of ideas that are offered on the CAC with respect to small units. But overall, there is interest in it and placing that in the C zones. With respect to mixed use, there's definitely broad sense that there's support for retail, residential, mixed-use designations. Comp plan policy L-10 already supports this. And so, the idea within the C zones of allowing greater residential floor area ratios, so if you were allowed 2.0, maybe increasing the residential share to 1.5, 1.75, something a little bit higher, or having a pure retail over residential mixed-use zoning designation would help. I think there's also some concern from several CAC members about recognizing that there's a finite amount of expansion that the city can provide, and anytime redevelopment occurs, there may be a displacement of existing tenants, whether that's small, commercial, or residential, who might not be able to find new, more expensive, or afford more expensive rents. So, there's interest in retaining members of our community who've already made the commitment to being in the city. And then, CAC members included support for including office space, so maybe like the idea of a single-story, ground-floor retail, single-story office, and then additional stories of residential. And then, on San Antonio, it's a little bit of a mixed bag. There's not a lot of consensus, but a couple ideas. Some members are open to keeping San Antonio sites because the services might be there, given what's happening kind of southward. And then, again, there's the concern, however, that if, anytime you redevelop, it may displace the existing tenants, and so retaining those community members, you know, in the existing sites along San Antonio is important to several of the members.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Moving on to the Frye's site, we felt like this was one of the most important opportunities that could yield more housing and other exciting ideas. The Frye's site provides a unique opportunity, as it will be a clean slate and can be designed from the ground up to benefit what the city needs most and what residents need the most, with possibly potential for some higher buildings and density towards the center of the development that transitions on the perimeters so it can coexist and be compatible with existing neighborhoods. We're also thinking there of, definitely of parkland opportunities and even maybe daylighting or unchanalizing Matadaro Creek. So, that's an exciting opportunity. The housing, affordable housing overlay, there was general agreement that this should be provided, this should be only done in specific locations, and we thought that the most promising were University Avenue, California Avenue, and Frye's. The CAC has mixed views on increasing height limits. Some CAC members were in favor of increased heights, FAR and densities. Others were concerned about the negative impacts of doing so and felt present site development standards should be maintained and compatible in terms of scale, massing, style, and FAR. But in the future, we, I think we all agree that we would like to move to a future where cars would be less emphasized. There were also two members on the group that were concerned that we call out that the same high standards that we use for all other development and building design should be applied to affordable housing and that the public process for that, for affordable housing should be maintained, the transparency should be maintained so that the public can be informed and participate. On El Camino, we would consider moving El Camino sites to the Stanford Research Park and look forward to finding more sites there, University Avenue and Frye's. And we think there should be a coordinated plan, especially for South El Camino. When it comes to second units, we were also of two minds about these. Some CAC members thought units should only be allowed on standard-size R1 lots with flexibility in parking, perhaps. Current ordinance allows second units only on lots 35% larger than a standard lot. But other CAC members felt second units should conform with existing daylight planes, setback, FAR, lot size minimums, and parking requirements, and should not be allowed on substandard lots. We noted that it's a community-friendly way to provide additional housing for caretakers, adult children, grandparents, and that that should be encouraged. We believe that the design guidelines should be followed to maintain privacy on adjacent sites, and we feel that we need policies to discourage or not make them available for short-term uses and turning them basically into rooming houses and hotels. So, I wanted to thank you on behalf of the four of us, and we all participated equally. And I'm sorry, we had a really short, short, short amount of time to do this this time, so we didn't get to probably touch on as many topics as we would have liked. Thanks.
Before proceeding to members of the public, does the council have any technical questions of staff? I see no questions. So, we're now up to 31 speaker cards, and we'll be...
Could I ask just one?
Sure. Councilmember Niss.
We're hearing so much about affordable housing. Would one of you define it for me?
Thank you, Councilmember Niss. Normally, when we say affordable housing, we mean housing that's affordable to these categories: extremely low income, very low income, low income, and moderate income, as has been defined in Table 1 on packet page 767. Basically, extremely low income is anywhere from 0 to 30% of area median, and moderate income goes up to 120% of area median, and that's in our area, an income of about, almost $130,000 for a family of four. So, you can see, you can make it quite a tidy income and still qualify for subsidized housing in our region because the costs are so extraordinary.
When the time comes, though, I'll go more into what I think affordable housing is, which is it must be subsidized.
And I have one quick related question to that. When the units are defined, as you just described, if we have smaller units with, say, the same number of bedrooms, does that in any way alter its affordability other than what its asking price would be? So, say you have a, you know, if it's a two-bedroom unit that's 1,500 square feet, and instead we have a two-bedroom unit that's 700 square feet, does that potentially move it into being affordable because that unit at 700 square feet is rented or sold for a price that would fall into these income categories?
I'm not sure if I understand the question. I mean, presumably, a landlord would rent a smaller unit for less than they would rent a larger unit, and in that sense, I think it would be more affordable. If you're looking at the definition of subsidized housing, it really wouldn't change. That's based on what's affordable to the certain household size based on area median income.
But if it's, if it's not subsidized, but market rate, and we have these categories, so as we have smaller units, does that drive more units, in all likelihood, into the more affordable categories?
Well, as I indicated, presumably, a landlord or a seller would charge less for a unit that's smaller than a unit that's larger.
Right. So, it's not based upon unit size, per se. It's based upon the sale or rental price. Correct? Just want to make sure we're all clear on that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Vice Mayor Scharf.
So, you said $120,000 for four, for a family of four. So, what I'm interested in is figuring out housing for public service workers, teachers, that kind of thing. And so, I'm really curious as to what would be, you know, one person for the moderate income or two people, you know?
I'll have to look that up, Vice Mayor Scharf, and get back to you.
If you could, I don't know if it'll be possible tonight. It would be helpful.
All right. We will now turn to members of the public. Our first speaker is Herb Borach, to be followed by Rebecca Bein, if I'm reading this correctly. Welcome. And if people could move toward the front, that'll help make things more expeditious.
Thank you, Mayor Burton. Having staff hand out a correction to the last paragraph of the letter that you have at Places, for those who don't have it, I'll read it into the record. It's on the second side of my letter received at 5:11 PM, following the words "accommodated by." And that refers to the amount of housing that I calculated for the research park to meet our reener needs at the advocated use of some people of 200-square-foot living units, which resulted in 586,384 square feet of residential area, which I said could be accommodated in the research park. And the language that changed, the new language is "accommodated by reducing the research park entitlement floor area by 234,554 square feet of research space." The reason I chose the research park is that that's an area that you can be controlled who lives there, considering who owns the property and who the leaseholders are. And all these other areas that you've been talking about, someone could rent or buy a new unit near a train station and go do the job in San Francisco or San Jose, so it doesn't solve our problem. Parking is a problem. If you want to do away with parking, then we already know from downtown that people are going to want to park in the neighborhoods. So, there needs to be a mitigation of essentially telling people, if there's no parking for your unit, you're not going to have a place to park anywhere. In regards to what other people think, Steve Levy was quoted in the draft business plan for California High Speed Rail, quote, "The Bay Area economy is threatened by a shortage of housing and high housing costs that make it difficult for many workers and their families to live in the region where they work. This is both an economic competitive and family challenge. High-speed transportation connections between the Bay Area and adjacent areas, including Central Valley communities, can provide affordable housing and fast car-free commuting while at the same time providing support for vibrant downtown..." at the same time providing support for vibrant downtown areas in these communities," end quote, to which the Mercury News replied the next day that the only people who could afford the tickets were high-priced tech workers who could then live in Madera. Lucky them, said the Mercury News. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Bein or Byrne, to be followed by Ellen Forbes.
Hi, guys. I'm Rebecca Byrne. I'm here on behalf of the Housing Choices Coalition. We are a nonprofit that focuses on finding housing for adults with developmental disabilities who are looking to be independent. I just wanted to start by commenting on some of the numbers that were in the housing element. They differ from some of our numbers quite dramatically. So in the housing element, it says that there are 42 people with developmental disabilities living in Palo Alto, but according to the California Department of Developmental Disabilities, there are actually 473. We'd love to work with you guys on this, just to find the correct number, because there is such a dramatic difference. So of the 473, 216 are adults, and only 48 of those are living independently. Currently, we're working with 51 adults in Palo Alto, looking to find them housing, but of course, that's extremely difficult. So we're hoping that within this comp plan that you consider making high-density transit-oriented housing specifically for adults with developmental disabilities. Additionally, and this is the last thing I'll say, many of these people are extremely low income, so if you could be conscious of that too, that would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ellen Forbes, to be followed by Bonnie Packer. Welcome.
Good evening. As president of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto, I wanted to read the letter that we sent to the council today. Many cities view affordable housing as a bitter pill, a necessity perhaps, but one that provides no amenities and improvements to a community. The League of Women Voters of Palo Alto would like our city instead to think of affordable housing as one tool to help build more walkable and vibrant communities that offer strong support for retail and lessen dependency on auto trips, and at the same time encourage population diversity. In this spirit, we urge you to move forward with many of the visionary goals and programs suggested tonight by city staff. In particular, we support efforts to build housing in transit-oriented zones along El Camino that is appropriate to seniors, millennials, and low-income workers by rezoning to favor smaller-sized units. Steps can be taken to ensure that these folks do not rely on cars for transportation, thus fostering walkability and strengthening local retail. To achieve this, zoning densities must be increased where appropriate and parking restrictions relaxed wherever feasible. We also support many other strategies mentioned in the staff report, such as steps to support cohousing and accessory units. Parking restrictions should be reduced for accessory units. Additionally, we support minimum densities for certain zoned districts such as RM15. We would like to see the Frye's site included as part of the transit-oriented zone surrounding California Avenue. We do not support removing South El Camino sites from the housing inventory since sensitively-designed affordable housing...
I think your time may have not been reset. No, no, take another minute. I think it wasn't reset.
Since we feel that sensitively-designed affordable housing could actually enhance this part of our community for everyone's benefit. In general, in order to allow home builders and citizens to choose the most effective tools for a given site, we recommend that the city provide a flexible toolkit rather than set immutable requirements. In certain cases, this might even include exceeding the height limit in transit-oriented areas, where the effect will be to create more openness and community at those sites. Although our comments tonight have primarily focused on affordable housing, increasing the overall housing stock can slow the upward pressure of rents and prices for all income levels. We hope you'll support efforts for a diversity of housing types tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bonnie Packer, to be followed by Robert Moss. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Burr and councilmembers. I'm not here to represent the CAC, even though I'm on it, and they did a great job summarizing our 24 different views. I'm speaking for myself as a citizen of South Palo Alto and an advocate for affordable housing, and as a member of the Board of Palo Alto Housing, which is a major provider of affordable housing in the city. So there really are a lot of great proposals in the staff report, and I hope you consider all of these or most of these if we're going to continue to have Palo Alto be vibrant and economically diverse. The issue I want to speak to, however, is the proposal or the idea to consider moving some of the housing site inventories from San Antonio Road between Charleston and Middlefield and South El Camino. This idea came up before we knew about what Mountain View was thinking about in the North Bay Shore Precise Plan. So in November of last year, they said, hey, let's look at 10,000 units there. I think what's going to happen is that there will be more services in South Palo Alto and along San Antonio Road, and we should consider that before we prematurely decide to remove those housing sites from that area. I think what you might want to consider doing, and I don't know if it's feasible, but have some kind of cross-jurisdictional relationship with Mountain View for that area, perhaps a coordinated area plan or some sort such vehicle to look at what might be happening in that area. Because I can, when you increase the density of people, you're going to provide the support for good transit to connect to Caltrain and to connect to the buses on El Camino. And there is shopping there. There are services there. I know. I live in South Palo Alto, and that's where I shop. So that's what I want you to consider doing. Don't remove those sites, but also keep the densities that are being proposed for Frye's, et cetera, because all the housing, we can use it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Moss, to be followed by Linnea Wickstrom.
Thank you, Mayor Burr and councilmembers. Well, a couple of other aspects of housing that ought to be considered and have been overlooked. One is called traffic. Every multifamily unit generates about six trips per day. Look at that when you're looking at where housing's going to go. Second, cost. Every housing unit costs the city almost $2,700 a year more for services than it pays in taxes. So think of that also. As for the specific discussion questions, I think it is a good idea to eliminate housing sites on El Camino and San Antonio. When all the housing that Mountain View is building along El Camino is completed and occupied, San Antonio will be even more of a traffic jam than it already is, so more housing on that area is totally impractical. I think you ought to consider very seriously eliminating non-residential uses on the upper floors in the CS and CN zones. Make that residential only. I think it's a good idea. As for granny units, I think if you said if somebody puts in a BMR granny unit, they can increase the FAR on their property by, let's say, 10 or 15%. So you have an incentive. We also should consider incentives for subsidized housing or lower-income housing in the other residential zones, RM15, RM30. So perhaps if they want to put in some number of BMR units, they get an FAR increase of, let's say, 10 or 20%. I'm not going to give you the numbers right now, I'm just saying this is something that should be discussed and come up with some figures that are rational. Finally, one of the real problems we have in Palo Alto is it's the highest-cost housing in the entire country. So it's going to be extremely difficult to get affordable housing without being very creative. And one of the things you're talking about is smaller units. Very small units are not going to sell. Seniors are not going to move from their existing housing to a very small unit. Define small as 500 or 600 square feet.
Thank you. Linnea Wickstrom, to be followed by Winter Dellenbach.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm a 40-plus-year resident of Palo Alto, also South Palo Alto. I have a 24-year-old son with autism, and I'm here to speak for housing for the developmentally disabled. It's important to all parents, especially those of us who are aging. We can't house our kids forever, and independent living skills take a long time to teach, so we need a running start. The struggles are there are too few units. These have to, we need units that are affordable for extremely low income, and one of the big problems is that the units that do exist are too far away from city centers and/or from transit for people who don't drive. And I'd like to emphasize in the, for the city of Palo Alto, these are people who don't drive. So they don't have a car, they don't need to park. Just one of my little hobby horses. I'm hoping that the city will partner with agencies such as Housing Choices to build close-in, affordable, high-density housing for people with developmental disabilities. One of the innovative things that Mountain View has done is to put up 1,585 studios on El Camino in Mountain View, and that's worth a look. In addition, just as my personal axe to grind, please consider additional, an additional solution, granny units or accessory units. They're a highly desirable and affordable approach that can also help Palo Alto with their housing goals and help with residents' needs. It's my hobby horse because I have a large lot, I'm 200 yards off El Camino, my son can take the bus, the train, he can walk to stores, et cetera. So thank you for helping make it possible for people like my son, who can hope to live and work relatively independently in his home community, to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Winter Dellenbach, to be followed by Drew Lusabink.
There are two types of housing in Palo Alto: market-rate housing and below-market-rate housing. Only one, BMR housing, guarantees affordability long-term. Market-rate housing is always as expensive as the market allows. Just look at Palo Alto over many decades through booms and busts. No so-called affordable housing is left, other than BMR. Working-class people once lived here in an economically diverse community with professionals and academics, but now this is a rich person's town, or it's becoming so. Surely, we don't suffer the illusion that we can build our way to affordability. We now have about 26,000 units of housing and three times as many jobs. We cannot possibly build enough housing, even going dense, even going high, to actually bring down housing expense. That is voodoo economics, trickle-down housing policy, magical thinking, ineffective, and illusory. We are a job center. We've had more jobs and residents since the late 1960s. I came here in 1970, it was a two-to-one ratio. This is not new, and not bad, and it's not going to change. The thing that has changed is that housing around us has also become expensive, creating a regional housing crunch. We can't fix the region, but we can build some smart housing that avoids burning down the cathedral to warm ourselves. We can expand and strengthen the office cap and utilize affordable, environmentally-sound transportation modes for commuters. Unlike market-rate housing, below-market-rate housing remains affordable over the long term, now 55 years, due to such devices as deed restrictions. BMR housing is the way to build housing that will remain affordable and avoid a cycle of building market-rate housing that becomes unaffordable and then feeling the need to build more, on and on, until we have a civic nervous breakdown. Let's avoid that, and as the Weekly says, laser-like concentrate on building below-market-rate housing for people of all ages and family configurations. Thank you.
Thank you. Drew Lusabink, to be followed by Anita Lusabink.
I am Drew Lusabink, and I am one of the developmentally-disabled adults who lives in Palo Alto. I have no source of income other than social security, so my income will stay the same unless I am able to find another source of income. This means that I need to find somewhere that I can afford on my current income. However, when I have looked for such a place, no place has existed. I also have a boyfriend who works in the area and would also be completely unable to afford housing around here. I know that we are not the only people who have this problem. Neither of us drives, so any housing that we would have would need to be accessible by public transit. Now, the thing is, you know, I just, I have issues with speaking, but I felt that this was important enough that I would need to say something for everybody else who has these issues and will not or cannot. And that is why I have said this.
Thank you. Anita Lusabink, to be followed by Anne Herr.
My name's Anita Lusabink, and Drew is my family member with developmental disabilities. We were told about this program through Housing Choices Coalition, who has spoken already on our behalf. In general, I think that Palo Alto prides itself on being a very sort of forward-thinking and thoughtful, intelligent, you know, creative community, and yet we're in great danger of becoming very homogeneous to the top 1% of people, because that's who can afford to live here now. Drew's grandmother, who is 92 years old and who Drew lives with right now, is, has owned her house for, I don't know, probably 40 years, so she's still there, but it's a little tiny house next to a new, basically three-story house, and that was bought by a person in this 1% that bought the house next door too while they were building this new house. So the demographic is pretty diverse in that the old school is going to be kicked out. And I just would like to say, let's think of diversity in many different ways, what all kinds of people can bring to this community, not only the very wealthy 1%, and people without cars and without high-paying jobs add quite a bit to the community as well. Even though it's not a tangible thing, it's not tax-based income, it's not flash, it's not, it's the intangibles that will hopefully help our community be an example going into the future for the long term, not the short term. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Anne Herr, to be followed by Vanessa Warhite. Welcome.
Hello, councilmembers. Thank you. I think word must have gotten out, because I'm the mother of a young adult with developmental disability and autism. I will say, though, that since Rebecca, Linnea, Drew, and Anita have spoken so eloquently on the topic, I will only say this: I believe strongly that where my son lives now, in Mountain View, in a brand-new development for individuals with developmental disabilities that was built by Housing Choices Coalition, that they are able, and I would, I would ask the city council to please consider partnering with them, because they have built some very smart and creative housing. And I would also say that it would make a lot of sense to put that housing in high-density transit-oriented areas that are accessible for people with developmental disabilities who also have extremely low incomes. So thank you to everyone, and thank you very much, councilmembers.
Thank you. Vanessa Warhite, to be followed by Peter Taskovich. Welcome.
Hi. I'm here to advocate for many more smaller units, which, as our mayor has pointed out, generally end up being cheaper. And just to give you a little story, I lived in Palo Alto when I was in, many years ago, let's just say, it was in the 1980s, and I lived in a house that, at the time, had, I think, six units. There were approximately 10 people who lived in our building. And that home, as many others, has been turned into a single-family home, and I bike by it regularly. Our apartment, I think, was maybe 500 square feet for myself and my single mother, and it allowed me to attend Jordan and to attend Pali, of which I'm very proud. And I don't think that we need necessarily to build many high-rises, although I would encourage you to not be, not be too firm in holding... encourage you to not be, not be too firm in holding that height limit, and I think that densification around transit is really smart, and we, our city, that prides ourselves on being smart, so we should continue to look at that as a really viable option, and we should definitely look at small units and infill units, and we should build as much housing as we possibly can, because we need it. Thanks.
Thank you. Peter Taskovich, to be followed by Craig Lewis. Welcome.
Hello. I'm not going to be talking about micro-units or cohousing or other, most of the things mentioned in the housing element. What I want to focus on is the accessory dwelling units, the ADUs, and their impact on the R1 neighborhoods. Palo Alto's R1 neighborhoods are Palo Alto crown jewels. This is why many people have paid so much money to move into Palo Alto and to stay living here. Quiet, tree-lined streets, uncrowded neighborhoods is what makes Palo Alto so special. And right now, ADUs are allowed in R1 neighborhoods, but I would like to keep the current development standards and zoning restrictions on ADUs as-is. We don't need to loosen them, we don't need to make it possible, substandard lots can have ADUs now built. This is going to help destroy what makes Palo Alto so special. Please keep the ADU zoning as-is. Thank you.
Thank you. Craig Lewis, to be followed by Bill Ross. Welcome.
Thank you. I've been moved by much of the commentary here tonight, and I'm here to speak on behalf of, as an employer, and housing markets move, just like every other market do, they move on the margin. So if you increase the supply of housing, you are going to incrementally decrease the price. And the more you do that, the more affordable it becomes. As an employer with offices in Palo Alto Square, I'm in one of the areas that would, I guess, benefit from the higher-density housing that's being promoted here, and I would add to that promotion. Palo Alto Square and that vicinity is walkable to Caltrain, we have most of, nobody else on the Clean Coalition team can live in this area, so everybody's coming in from outside, many of whom take the train. Many of our visitors who come to meet with us take the train and walk from Caltrain to Palo Alto Square, it's about nine-tenths of a mile, easy walk. And housing in that area would be an easy walk to public transportation, I've got a, you know, everyday example of it. And I would just say it would be awfully nice if some members of the Clean Coalition team could actually live close to the office and walk to and from. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Ross, to be followed by Steve Downing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My questions are profoundly procedural. Substantively, I think I agree with the letter that Mr. Keller sent to you, but procedurally, I'd ask this question. The issues that are advanced to you by staff deal with land use and intensity. That is most appropriately dealt with in the land use element, which must, as several individuals who have appeared before the CAC, be correlated with the transportation and circulation element. That assures concerns with respect to traffic are met at the same time that the land use density is addressed. I would reference specifically Government Code Section 65302B. If you choose to proceed with a standalone amendment of the housing element, I would discourage that. One, it's one of the two mandated state elements, and if you did that, it would be internally inconsistent with the existing plan. I would encourage you also to provide for more public participation. The restriction tonight for two minutes, the restrictions before the CAC, is directly contrary to the governmental policy of the legislature about this type of decision. You should encourage public participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Downing, to be followed by Amy Ashton.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I came here to speak in favor of more housing in general, especially dense housing near transit corridors. The zoning restrictions here in Palo Alto have made it very difficult for anyone to find apartments near where they work, and I've lived and worked in Palo Alto for many years now. So, I actually don't really like driving, you know, it's, you know, it's not the worst, but I'll do it. And so, last time I moved, five years ago or so, within Palo Alto, I looked, obviously, for an apartment or some such near downtown. And there are very few of those, and there is very little liquidity in that market. So, I ended up further away, in South Palo Alto, in a nice neighborhood, in actually a nice house, it's much bigger than we need, it's much bigger than what I was looking for, and now I drive to work every day, or almost every day. And I'm not saying this to complain, this is, this is not a bad existence by any stretch, but it does mean that I clog up the roads for all of you, I'm taking up a bigger house than I needed, presumably I pushed another family out who actually would have used this space. So, and this has happened with many colleagues of mine as well, and many of them have been pushed even further out, may create more traffic for all of us. So, in summary, more diverse housing stock would benefit us all, and I favor more density and more choices, particularly near transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Ashton, to be followed by Becky Saunders. Welcome.
Hello. I'll just speak quickly. I wanted to express my support for housing density, in particular, near transit. I live downtown, I pay an exorbitant amount of money to live in Palo Alto, I love living here because I don't have to drive everywhere, anywhere. I bike, I take Caltrain, and I walk. I support density because, to me, it means that we have a more vibrant downtown, and that's what's exciting to me. I support height, increase the height, increase the types of units, I don't care if they're luxury, micro, anything, get the density here, because to me, it's so exciting to have all these great uses downtown, or to bike over to Calav and have all these fun places to shop and walk around, this is what life's all about, and it's very exciting. So, living downtown and taking advantage of all this, I just wanted to share how important that was to me, that you all consider it. It's the environment, it's the quality of life, it's health, so please support housing, density, near transit. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky Saunders, to be followed by Suzanne Keen.
Good evening. I live in Ventura, which I can just feel the pave-over happening there. We have monthly meetings of our association. Most of the people that attend do own homes, but we do have some renters that live in Ventura that come to the meetings, shout-out to Steve, who's wonderful. And I really understand and hear and empathize with the desire of people to live here in this beautiful neighborhood, in this beautiful city, and to be able, and afford to, I mean, I get it, everything I've heard here, I mean, it's all good. However, the preservation of residential neighborhoods is the first goal listed as a high-level goal on page four. However, most of the underlying recommendations strip that goal of any basis in reality and reduce it to mere lip service, I think. So remember that the city is made up of citizens, not corporations, corporations are not people. Let's remember whom council is here to serve, and it is the people who vote and live here. To say that, at the very least, the aggregate long-term impact on residents of all of these developments that are in the pipeline have really not adequately been considered. And as someone pointed out earlier, the jobs-housing imbalance didn't happen overnight, and rushing to build more housing is really not going to solve this problem. And so, you know, we have FRI, we've got the locker, the Foot Locker, we've got, what is that, the ASH, the multi-combination of residents that have been bought at the corner of ASH and Page Mill, then we've got Palo Alto Square. I'm just, I don't know what's going to happen, it's really scary in Ventura. There, it's, we are kind of the last affordable neighborhood in Palo Alto, and I'm, I'm very concerned that the developers are just eyeing us. I mean, we, all those eyes for properties on El Camino in Ventura. Yeah, I mean, anyway, I just recommend that you think about neighborhood quality of life before you approve all the wrecking balls. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Keen, to be followed by A.C. Johnston. Welcome.
Hello. I would just second everything Becky said. The other thing I would add is that, when we talk about sustainability, the earth, we can't, we just don't have, you know, supplies of everything for all these people, and this is a problem in the whole Bay Area and San Fran, well, look at San Francisco now, but where's all this water coming from? Sure, we've had a little rain now, but we are not anywhere near making up the deficit. And this is what bothers me, I think, about America, but here we are, and it's very wealthy, well-to-do, educated people, and yet we don't look at the long-term overall. This housing imbalance happened way long time ago, like you were saying, it goes, has gone back many, many years. Why didn't we look at it then? We've let developers really have their way, I think residents are not listened to the way they should, and I definitely think that we have to be a lot more connected to this planet if we're going to have one to live on. Thank you.
Thank you. A.C. Johnston, to be followed by Dan Garber. Welcome.
Mayor Burt, City Council, I'm A.C. Johnston, I live in University South. I'm going to be brief, because you've heard much of this already, I just want to urge the council to take steps to encourage the development, not only of affordable housing, but what I'll call reasonably-priced housing. Housing that young people, that seniors, that members of our, people who serve the community, like our teachers and our police, could afford to live here, so they could live in our community. In particular, I hope the council will encourage development of accessory dwelling units, micro-units, and encourage increased density, particularly near transit centers, jobs, and services. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Garber, to be followed by Arthur Keller. Welcome.
I'm Dan Garber, I'm here as a citizen this evening. I'm going to forego most of my comments and simply mention that there are, there is, in the conversations that have been going on in the CAC, there's a tremendous amount of flexibility on these issues. They are not as black and white as they're often portrayed here. And there's lots of opportunities that people have begun to think more broadly about things. The last thing I wanted to say was I really wanted to thank Julia and Lydia and Doria and Elaine, who did an amazing job in coming up in just a few days here, and then getting together last night for two and a half hours to pull together the comments, which were extremely disparate, but very robust has been described, and I think they did a really great job trying to pull that series of comments together.
Thank you. Arthur Keller, to be followed by Diane Marin.
Thank you. I'm speaking as an individual and not as co-chair of the CAC, but I do echo my fellow co-chairs' comments about the quality of the comments by the, for CAC representatives on housing. So, one thing about density is we seem to be confusing two things because of how our code works, and that is density in terms of the number of housing units per acre and density in terms of FAR. And we might want to think about increasing the number of units per acre through smaller units, without necessarily increasing FAR, increasing height, and all of that. And I think that that's maybe the direction we need to go, I think we should think about that and make more, for example, requiring smaller units, or, because that's the kind of units that may not be as, that are not as profitable to developers, they don't necessarily want to build that. We need not necessarily upzone FAR and height in order to be able to have more housing units and whatever. We should require parking to meet demand for all developments, as parking demand is demonstrated to decrease, then fewer parking spaces can be required, and excess parking spaces can be leased under parked properties. The FRI sites need a coordinated area plan and design as nice as SOFA II, along with dedicated parkland and the existing comp plan, called for a coordinated area plan for South El Camino Real, we need to proceed with that. We should focus new housing near services and transit, ADUs don't do that, San Antonio Road doesn't do that. So we need to think about what we can do in terms of new housing that minimize the impact. I've given you a longer letter that you can study at your leisure, but I figured I'd give a few comments now. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane Marin, to be followed by, oh, Diane is gone? Okay. Catherine Alguer, to be followed by John Kelly.
Did John leave? Is John here? Oh, it's Catherine, right. It's Catherine here.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd like to follow up on some of the input you've already heard from both parents and advocates for those with severe developmental disabilities. We have two adults in their mid-to-late 40s with severe autism. And, for instance, just to give a picture to you of what it would be like to have my son closer, Easter morning, I have to leave early, drive to Novato, pick him up, drive him back here, get my daughter and Campbell, drive her there, cook, feed them, take him for a walk, take them back to their home, take them back to Marin, and that's 12 hours of driving. So it's not easy when you have family members who cannot be living closer. Now, they're very severely autistic, and they would need transportation with a caregiver. I did want to bring out that there are some laws you may or may not be aware of. The Supreme Court landmark decision, it's called the Olmstead decision, and it mandates that you serve, that's U.S. Supreme Court 1999, requires that meaningful opportunities be created for individuals with developmental disabilities to reside, work, and receive support in their own communities in integrated settings. And I'm going to just sort of touch through some of these. There are some HUD issued guidelines also that help and encourage the planning, and they do require set-asides specifically for people with developmental disabilities. Now, developmental disabilities would mean those who would not be able to live probably independently. These are people who have agencies, okay, but there's HUD guidelines, and there's the federal, the Supreme Court decision that are requiring that, and we're not meeting it, and believe me, I think the numbers are in the hundreds. We just don't have places for them nearer to us. Thank you.
Thank you. John Kelly, to be followed by Jeff Lewinsky.
Mayor Burt, Vice Mayor Sharp, council members. I've sent you a letter that talks about my views on ADUs, so I won't repeat all that, but I'd like to, I'd like to use this limited time that I have to address some of the issues that have been raised tonight, but I'd like to take them sort of more globally. I think there are two big arguments that people who oppose more housing in this community tend to make. The first is essentially an economic argument, that we can't move the needle at all, that we are so incapacitated by the market that we really can't change rents or housing prices. I think that's fallacious for two very simple reasons. As Craig Lewis pointed out, if you increase supply, you're going to change demand and you're going to change prices. It's just that simple. So, that's not voodoo economics, that's real economics. And if we change the supply, if we make more housing available in Palo Alto, we will move the price for everyone, especially the kind of housing that A.C. Johnston is talking about, reasonably-priced housing, down. I think that's good. The second argument that people have been making is that somehow by creating more density or creating ADUs or doing something else, we're going to fundamentally change the character of Palo Alto. In some sense, that's right, but I think we will be changing the character of Palo Alto for the better, not for the worse. It's not traffic or the lack of traffic, it's not parking or the lack of parking that is the fundamental value of Palo Alto. To me, it's the people who live here. And when we make housing more affordable, when we distribute additional housing throughout the community, such as ADUs would do, we are going to have better, stronger communities, we're going to have better, stronger neighborhoods, and we're going to have better, stronger families. So I would encourage you to go for more density throughout the city, particularly by ADUs, and I would, I would encourage you to think that we, by doing so, we will actually be improving the character of life here in Palo Alto. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Lewinsky, to be followed by Leslie Consilia.
Good evening, Mayor Burt and council members. I actually come from a multi-general, general- I actually come from a multi-general, generation line of multi-unit property owners. And so I'm not going to speak as an individual, I'm going to speak as a developer and operator of the very properties that you are thinking about tonight. And there's two factors here that I haven't heard mentioned at all. The first, and this comes from growing up in a family that deals with these issues, is that the old rule of location, location, location applies. Palo Alto is going to become a more expensive community no matter what you decide tonight or at all. The, it's going to become that because of outside forces that drive people to better communities, and Palo Alto is going to remain where they go. The second is that people have known for millennia how to make housing cheaper, and that's to share it. And that happens in communities all over the place, and it happens in Palo Alto. So it means that a four-bedroom house is going to be more affordable than a microunit because that four-bedroom house can be shared by four or eight people. That's going to happen no matter what you do. So we're going to see more parking problems because you're going to have four or eight separate people living in that house. You're going to see more traffic, and that's all going to happen independently. And my concern is that hasn't been accounted for in any of the studies and such because everybody is looking at today, and they're not looking at the forces that are going to happen in Palo Alto over the next decades regardless of these choices. So I'd ask that you factor that in, and I think when you do, you're going to see that we're going to have different ways of solving these problems. That may be to, you know, have to adjust parking upward to accommodate and traffic needs upward to accommodate what's going to be coming. Thanks.
Thank you. Leslie Corsilia.
Very good, thank you.
To be followed by Lydia Koo.
Mayor and City Council, my name is Leslie Corsilia. I'm Executive Director of Silicon Valley at Home, and we're the voice of affordable housing in the Silicon Valley, and we represent a lot of the leading employers in this region as well as nonprofit and for-profit developers and a lot of citizens of the county that are interested in affordable housing. On behalf of our members, I really commend you for the conversation you're having around housing and especially around affordable housing because it really is a housing crisis. Some of the folks who've talked before have talked about that this is just a situation that we have and that there's nothing we can do about it, and I really disagree with that. Last year alone in the county, we created 64,000 jobs and only 5,000 housing units. We continue to exacerbate the problem that we have. The other thing I think is really important to recognize, and people will, will talk about transportation as being a problem. You build more housing, you create transportation problems. It's really the opposite. Our transportation problems are created because we do not have enough housing near our jobs. We need to be worried about the fit of our jobs and our housing, and without that, we have people who are driving, we have 100,000 people in this county that drive into the county every day net because we don't have enough housing here. So what we encourage the city to do is to plan and build for more housing and especially for affordable housing. We really support density, whether it be smaller units, whether it be height. We need to use our land better. We have very, very few land opportunities in this county because we are so built out. We need to be more innovative. We need to use our publicly owned lands better, and to the extent that Palo Alto has publicly owned lands, we encourage you to proactively set aside those lands and also look to... Lastly, we're very supportive of second units and any innovative housing types like that that, again, use our land better. Thank you.
Thank you. Lydia Koo to be followed by Rita Varell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Lydia Koo. I'm here today as a resident, not a member of the Citizen Advisory Committee for the comp plan. I think the greatest concern is the kind of schizophrenic approval of development continuing now in the name of providing housing. Residential growth has its own impacts, the need for parks, community centers, community and recreation services, and schools. Building housing has impacts as well, and if the current cumulative impacts are not addressed, it will only further compound the issues. Let's face it, without clearly and boldly expanding the office R&amp;D building cap to become a citywide cap with no exceptions and no unmonitored areas, data collected is fudged. People, then it becomes people's everyday experience, which become better evidence of the inconveniences that they encounter day in and day out. There seems to be an inordinate focus on young, well-paid professionals who spend most of their time at work and their need for housing, but there, but also many have mentioned the concern of the loss of socioeconomic diversity with housing prices continuing to rise. There are the community members, volunteers, the teachers, the service workers, the mom-and-pop store owners, the faith-based community members, childcare providers, seniors in our community, and also those who have special needs. These are people who enhance our community. I want to give you a little rundown of what Mountain View has available in their newly-built apartments. Carmel Village at San Antonio Center, they have a total of 330 units. 19 apartments are available right now. Their range for the rent is $3,015 for a 500-square-foot studio, $5,4690 square foot, and a two-bed, $5,4690 square foot one-bedroom, and a two-bedroom of approximately 1,051 square foot for $8,850. So the complex is also now offering free rent for one-bedrooms until April 1st, so. But the reason I bring this up is when Mountain View is building the way it is and you build over here high density, what is going to happen when demographic changes, when the older millennials start having babies and wanting the yards? Think about that.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rita Varell to be followed by Peter Stone.
Thank you. I don't envy you. I've been sitting here tonight listening to everyone who has their special request, and this is such a complex problem, and, you know, good, good luck. I've been here in Palo Alto since 1983. There's been so many changes, especially in the last 10 years. I, I think that with the increased development, we're all now looking at traffic, and certainly those issues with traffic have not been resolved. I mean, the resolution is just getting started. I would encourage you to take a measured approach to housing increases. You can always increase housing once it's built, once it's approved, once it's planned. You can't take it down. I think with the 2,000 units that Stanford is putting up, that is going to free up some housing. Also, it's probably going to create some traffic. I live in the Crescent Park area. There are so many houses in Crescent Park and Community Center that are not occupied. They're owned as an investment. The shutters are drawn, the house is empty day after day as I walk my dogs. I'm wondering if you do increase the housing stock, especially if it's affordable, how are you going to make sure that the person who buys that stock is actually going to live in it rather than have it as an investment which is not occupied? Also, I think that, you know, it's awful to say, but not everyone is going to be able to live in Palo Alto. Not everyone can, it used to be you moved to Redwood City. You can't afford to live in Redwood City now. So I think that this topic deserves a lot more discussion, a measured approach, and please don't ruin Palo Alto while you're trying to accommodate everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Stone to be followed by Vijay Varma.
Good evening, Mayor Burt, members of the council. Peter Stone, speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, to go on the record that the chamber is very supportive of the initiatives to increase smart housing inventory in Palo Alto. We are very concerned about housing our, more of our workers closer to their jobs. So to the extent that we make housing somewhat more affordable, we think there will be more opportunities for people to live and work and perhaps not have to use their cars to get between their housing and their, and their jobs. We are appreciative of many of the ideas that the staff has brought forth in their report and that are coming out of the CAC, certainly transit-oriented housing, mixed-use development with ground-floor retail to encourage walkable neighborhoods, and perhaps encouragement as well of smaller units that presumably will be more affordable. So just want to conclude by saying we're very appreciative of the council's openness to the creative and innovative approaches that are being supported from many quarters here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Vijay Varma to be followed by Joe Hirsch.
Good evening, Vijay Varma. You know, some of the things I'm going to say, Lydia has already said, and my comment is growth is not always good or better. We got into this imbalance because we let other area of the economy grow, okay? So, and we can't fix that letting the other area become worse, which is housing. We have a limited number of green space per person who lives here. We can't cut it down, that impacts quality of life. If somebody doesn't believe it, they can go see the third world countries how they grown. My own native city is the worst city in the world today to live, and we don't want that to happen here. We need to make sure there's enough water, enough clean air for the residents to live here. We cannot compromise on the health and the quality of life of the people living here. That's the only comment I have at this point. Yes, we can go and building more, we'll be living in pigeonholes, and that's not the way of, and the more you encourage, more problems you're going to have, just like we had on the commercial side of the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hirsch to be followed by our final speaker, Stefan Heck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many people have talked this evening about very compelling needs which obviously need to be addressed. However, others have talked about the jobs-housing imbalance, which was around 2.7 when I was on the Planning Commission in the 80s and is now well over three to one. This has been growing for many years, and now the city proposes to mitigate that by belatedly building more housing, which no matter what is said and done, will make traffic and parking and quality of life in Palo Alto worse, maybe much worse, on top of the current situation, which we all know is extremely bad. Traffic jams, heavy traffic, gridlock on freeways anytime day or night is common. Councilmember Walback and I agreed last year that traffic on San Antonio at times is gridlocked, and that hasn't changed, and putting more housing or hotels down there will only make it worse. Traffic and quality of life are the key to the residents of this city. There are other factors, of course, but new housing, particularly high-density housing, will not make the situation better. Most people have cars, even those who walk or bike frequently. I happened to walk by the parking spaces for the council members tonight, and they were all filled with cars. The nature of the Bay Area is such with its traffic layout that cars are needed by the vast majority of people. And at the same time, yes, they're on the freeways, yes, they're on the roads of Palo Alto, and it takes a lot longer to go everywhere. People are thinking about leaving the Bay Area. I had a conversation yesterday with a woman from Menlo Park who was so fed up with the situation and the lack of responsibility of the city council there that she's selling out and moving to Oregon. One final point. The land that I'm aware of, Maybell Site, sold for $9 million an acre. How do you, when that, with those land prices, how do you convert something into affordable housing?
Thank you. Our final speaker, Stefan Heck. That concludes our public comments. So let's return to the council. Let me ask just any members of the public who are here to speak on our final item. Raise your hand if you are. Okay. One, I see. All right. So colleagues, I suspect that the public hearing on the negative declaration will be relatively brief, but we're well behind schedule on this item. So 10 to 10. Let's just see how it goes, but this is probably going to be a substantive discussion and... Oh. Yes.
So is your thinking, we could get later in the evening and the ability to actually make a decision on the next item on your agenda could, I mean, you've got a public hearing, you have to hold that. But whether or not we actually have to work through the whole process and make a decision tonight on that item could be something that might be carried forward to another meeting after you've heard from the public.
That's a possibility if, if it takes any prolonged period of time. I suspect it'll go quickly.
Okay.
Stefan.
Yeah. I was just going to point out that I think the last member of the public who'd signed up to speak might have just stepped out of the room but just walked back in.
All right. Mr. Heck, if you would like to speak, you're our last speaker.
And also, if it would please the chair, if any members of the public arrived and had not had a chance to speak, I'd be willing to hear them speak.
Thank you for your comments.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, especially since I was a little bit late. As you know, I fully support the concept of moving more of the housing near the transit locations that we already have along Caltrain, so I think the efforts to make that shift are really important. The data clearly shows that having both work and home locations near transit makes a big difference to the modal share, to how many people use transit versus car trips. So if we are going to keep growing as a region, and we have massive jobs imbalances, you've already heard, with a lot of jobs and not enough housing, we need to add housing, and the best place to put it is, is near transit and take advantage of the system that we have, particularly in light of the upgrades that are already being planned for capacity in that system. So that was really all I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Returning to the council, we have, I should, we have kind of several categories of discussion. One that I didn't lay out earlier that staff has in their recommendation A is the issue around replacement of housing inventory sites on San Antonio and South El Camino with either increased densities in the downtown and the California area or other new housing sites. So we have essentially that issue. We have issues of our feedback on, on some of the alternatives that staff has laid out in the staff report, and we're not limited to those, but that's a pretty comprehensive set of alternatives. And within those alternatives, we have the discussion of which of them, if any, we would like to have staff return with feasibility of pursuing sooner than the comprehensive plan adoption. So, Councilmember Niss.
Let me strike out on San Antonio Road. I don't mean striking it out, I mean just going forward on it. I lived on Fern Avenue, which is one block from San Antonio Road, for quite a length of time. I don't recall a lack of services whatsoever. When we're talking about San Antonio Road, I think we're also talking about the same road where the greenhouse is located. Am I correct? With, how many people in the greenhouse? Must be 300, right? Somewhere in that. A whole string runs along there. And then as you go around the corner, just beyond the gas station, it starts up once again with residences. You could walk to Coverley or to Piazza's Market from there, I would guess in seven or eight minutes. You would have to cross, I mean, you have to obviously cross San Antonio, but I cannot see that as being so service-deprived that we would take a really good area for housing off our map at this point. So that's where I am on it, and I'm speaking from the point of view who's somebody, somebody who lived there and still know a great number of people who live there, and I don't think they would see it as quite the wasteland that we've described it as being. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman.
A procedural question first. Are you looking for questions, questions and comments? And do you want us to address the first four, like A through D, to begin with? Or how do you want to structure the conversation?
Well, first, it can be questions and comments. And as far as the structuring, we not only have the A through D, we have really on pages seven and eight of the staff report, really a more deep discussion of what are some of the other alternatives. So I think we're open to the whole range there unless colleagues want to break up the discussion into pieces. We could begin with just discussing the relocation of sites, or we can do a round-
We could begin with just discussing the relocation of sites, or we can do a round hearing, general input, and then try to narrow the focus for potential motions.
Okay. Thank you for that. I have a few questions and a number of comments. So the questions... Well, let me first, because Councilmember Niss just went. I actually concur, I think especially with the more recent development that's happened in Mountain View around San Antonio or on and along San Antonio Road. I don't think it is so disparate from services, and it is near 101. I mean, transportation is transportation, and it's an easy jump on, jump off to 101, so I don't see a need really to replace those sites. Questions are around cohousing. I'm in favor of cohousing, but there's no indication of like how we would go about locating that, in what zones? Would it be a different zone? What staff's thinking on that?
Thank you, Councilmember Holman. It is one of the issues that we identified for exploration on that list that Mayor Burt referred to. It's item three on packet page 771. It's also, I think, called out in one of the programs in the housing element that was attached to the staff report. Essentially, I think it would take amendments to our zoning ordinance to define that as an acceptable use and articulate where in the city's zoning districts we would allow cohousing. Is it something we would allow in R1 district? Or are we thinking that it would be permissible only in multifamily districts? And I think that's something we would want to get the council, the Planning and Transportation Commission, and the public's input on as we develop an ordinance.
So right now, you're just, it's out there as a topic, and it's, staff has not flushed anything out yet.
Yeah, I think we're interested in hearing the council's appetite and interest in pursuing legislative changes to accomplish that as a goal.
Okay. We heard this evening about housing for developmentally disabled. And also, I know in Austin, when some of us visited there a couple of years ago, in touring some affordable housing projects there, Austin actually dedicates a percentage of their affordable housing units to artists, because artists are sadly often lower-income persons in a community. So did staff give any consideration of that? I didn't read anything about that, either developmentally disabled or artists.
Well, special needs populations like developmentally disabled are addressed in our housing element, and I could spend some, you know, time looking through that and get back to you on policies and programs with that in mind. We do not currently have policies and programs related to artists. They're not part of that definition of special needs population.
I would be in favor of exploring that. The question that does come up, and it comes up frequently, is decoupling land use from transportation. How does staff want to respond to that? Because it does seem to be like they are intrinsically related to each other.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Holman. You're absolutely right. They're intrinsically related, both housing and transportation and the land use element. It just is a kind of chicken and egg thing. You've got to get started on one of them, then you've got to go to the next one, and you've got to make sure that they all work together at the end of the day. And that's going to be one of the challenges that the council will face as they start to get the input from the CAC, and as the CAC makes progress and the council makes progress on all of these elements, they have to be internally consistent and supportive of each other.
And impacts not going unaddressed with land use recommendations for the comp plan. That's what you're saying, they need to be integrated and considered jointly. I apologize. The Frye's site, which is mentioned quite often. I know we've talked about doing a specific plan for that, and my personal view on that is that if we just develop the Frye's site or plan the Frye's site for housing or housing and retail or housing and retail and services, they'd be required to put in some parkland, but we're missing all kinds of opportunities, creative opportunities there if we just do basic typical zoning at that location, given the size of the property and the opportunities that exist there. The... What's the... What are the mechanisms that were available to us to associate or tie rental housing, especially with job locations? Let's just say, for instance, and probably the easiest one to address is probably Research Park. If there was housing built in the Research Park, how, what mechanism does the city have to associate those units to be linked to the jobs there?
Very, very good question. I think the answer is a little complicated and would depend on the circumstances, but I mean, in general, there's a way to structure housing opportunities to give preferences for workers who work in Palo Alto, for example. But I think we would have to talk to the city attorney's office and develop that idea more fully in the context of a specific proposal. But in general, preferences are acceptable.
And to go along with that, and we won't have the answer, there's nothing to go along with that, is, so let's just say someone works at, well, I won't even name, let's just say somebody works at Tesla and they get a unit that's built in the Research Park, then if that employee moves to a job in San Jose, then what? So I won't expect an answer to that this evening, but it is a question on the list for me. There's a policy, H29, I know this staff reports, because of the work of the CAC, is looking at programs, but there is a policy, H29, in the comprehensive plan currently, and it talks about where there are three or more units existing, and if somebody wants to replace all of them, then there's a restriction on doing that. And when we first started this journey of updating the comprehensive plan, there was a commitment by the then-staff that that would be addressed in the, in an updated comprehensive plan. And I know there are some things that are approaching that, but not really getting there. For instance, on packet page 777, there's a program, H1 dot 1 dot 3, that says, provide incentives, and I would say eliminate the words to developers, because it's not just developers, such as reduced fees and flexible development standards to encourage the preservation of existing cottages and duplexes currently located in R1 and R2 neighborhoods or residential areas. That talks about it, but doesn't really get us anywhere. So I'll just put that out there, too.
I'm sorry, if you could articulate what it was that you thought you wanted to achieve? I didn't quite follow that.
Well, policy H29 in the current comprehensive plan talks about if there are three or more units on a parcel and someone wants to eliminate them, then they are, the comprehensive plan at least reads, I don't remember the exact wording, but basically you can't do it. You have to replace some of the units with other units. And I don't see that being addressed as a requirement anywhere in the comp plan, and it was committed, again, like I say, by the then-staff. There's also something else that I think needs to be addressed, which is, and I'll stop after this, because I do have more, but I'll stop after this or maybe one more. Addressing the loss of housing units, and I talk about this and have talked about it for a very long time. We don't really have much discussion in here about minimum densities. And most especially, it's of a concern to me when we are losing housing units. Let's just say, for instance, somebody buys a lot, and there's, even in R1, there's a house and a cottage. So I'm not sure, at least to my recent knowledge, we don't even track the lost residential units. So if someone buys a parcel and there's a house and a cottage on it, the cottage can be eliminated and just build a single-family home. Same thing when somebody buys a parcel, let's just say there are eight apartments. Somebody can redevelop that with four much more expensive for-sale units. So we're not doing anything to stop the erosion of our housing stock. And I think the last couple of things I'll mention right now is, I think we, I would confirm, I think we really need to focus on affordable housing. And affordable here is, oh my goodness, if you could look at, you know, other areas in the state even. So I think we do need to focus on affordable housing. And the look and feel is actually very important. So I refer again to the colleague's memo that was signed on to by Councilmembers, Vice Mayor, then Councilmember Scharf, Councilmember Schmidt, myself, and then Councilmember Gail Price, talking about the design of buildings. And I'll refer to something that I know Councilmember Mayor Burt is well familiar with, too, that there were houses, single-family houses, the appearance of single-family houses in the sofa area that were actually RM40, because they were large houses that had been divided into four or five units, but they were well-integrated into the community. It's because of how they looked, and they were traditional. And, you know, if you look at Oak Court that was developed in sofa one, you know, how well-integrated that is in the neighborhood. So I think whatever we do, it's really important for the community and us, and as a sense of pride that whatever we build and whatever we design in our comprehensive plan as part of development standards, that they be really compatible with the existing community. I think I'll stop there. Thank you.
Councilmember Berman.
Well, thank you, and thank you to all the members of the public who came to speak tonight on all sides of the issue. You know, I thought that was a really good group of comments, and clearly this is an issue that people care a lot about, and it's an issue that I care a lot about. We have a housing crisis in Palo Alto, we have a housing crisis on the peninsula, we have a housing crisis in the Bay Area, and I'm not going to pretend to know exactly what the solution is. My hope, and I support a lot of the proposals that staff have kind of offered up in the staff report, my hope is that a combination of things, including building higher-density housing in our commercial district, in and around our commercial districts, supporting housing over additional commercial space and mixed-use developments, supporting micro-units, will lead to a situation where people that live in larger, single-family homes and want to downsize to an area that's walkable to services, which I hear a lot about from folks in the community. My hope is that if we build that supply, then that will happen, and that frees up single-family homes for families, and it's this trickle-down effect and all these different moving pieces that might not necessarily lower the cost of housing in Palo Alto, but might either slow or stop the growth of the cost of housing in Palo Alto. Do I know that's going to work? No, I don't. Do I know what won't work? Doing nothing. Doing nothing won't work. And if we really care about the cost of housing in Palo Alto, and if we care about the cost of housing in Silicon Valley, we need to be honest with ourselves that the answer isn't do nothing, because we don't know if doing something will work. We have to try to do something. And we have to do it in a deliberate manner. We have to be strategic about it. We have to look to best practices from other communities. But I think that personally is my philosophy and my kind of outlook on this problem. It's not to kind of despair at the fact that we in Palo Alto can't solve the whole problem, because we in Palo Alto won't solve the whole problem. But we in Palo Alto have to do, have to try to do our part to address what is a larger problem. And so, you know, I'm very intrigued by a lot of the ideas that have been brought forward. I'm especially curious about the affordable housing overlay zones in strategic areas. And I hope that, that as a community, we're not going to let the perfect be the enemy of the good, because I think we kind of fall into that trap where we identify all of the problems with certain housing proposals, and we use those little problems to stop something from happening. And the folks that can't find housing won't mind those problems. They just need housing. And so, you know, a member of the public alluded to the site at Maybell and the cost of housing there and how much it sold for, and said, with that cost, how can we possibly create affordable housing? We had a plan to create affordable housing there, but that didn't pass the community's approval. And I hope that as we move forward and try to identify other sites for affordable housing, try to identify other sites for housing for the disabled, try to find other sites for our teachers and our public safety officers and the people who support us in the community, that we take a little bit more kind of understanding of an approach to the fact that it might not be within a quarter of a mile or a third of a mile walkable distance to certain things, but we're past that in the Bay Area. We really need to start to learn how to get to yes, as opposed to always ending up at no. So those are kind of some macro comments. The affordable housing overlay zones, I think are something that need to be discussed. I think my colleagues' comments are right, that, you know, San Antonio is an area under transition, and I don't necessarily think we, I think it might be getting to the point that it can accommodate housing. I'm more interested in identifying more sites that can accommodate housing, not eliminating others. I'm intrigued by the idea of focusing more on FAR and less on units per acre and a lot of the other proposals. So, yeah, I know this is going to be a long conversation. I won't talk for the half an hour that I want to, but I'm looking forward to hopefully getting to yes by the end of the night.
So the city manager was just informing me that staff is comfortable with postponing the decision on, this is item number 11, the public hearing, but we're obligated to open and close the public hearing. So if it's all right, what we'll do is...
Or open and continue the public hearing to, that's what you would do, open and continue the public hearing.
Okay. That's fine. All right. We can do that and thereby allow the balance this evening to be on this housing subject. So if it's all right, we will pause this item, continue to Agenda Item Number 11, and it's a public hearing on the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and approval of a site and design review application for a new two-story, 7,500-foot, 50-foot-tall building designed to handle sludge, de-watering, and truck loadouts with adjacent standby generator and a new outdoor equipment area next to the existing incinerator to be placed centrally on the regional water quality control plant site at 2,501 Embarcadero Way. We have one speaker. Mr. Borak has allowed to speak when we reschedule this hearing. So I will close the public hearing. He said it's fine, too. Yep. 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 We're going to continue this item. We're closing the public hearing, and we will continue the item to a date to be determined. Is that correct?
Sorry for the confusion. So we had originally set up that procedure to allow the public comment to occur tonight. So it sounds like it's going to occur another night, so you actually don't need to open the public hearing, you certainly shouldn't close it.
We've done it.
You can open it, but don't close it, because you need to hear the public comment when the item gets continued.
Okay. So leave it open, is that...
Yes.
Yes, please. And leave it open and continue it to, I believe we need a date.
All right. So this item, public hearing will remain open and continue to a date to be determined?
Yeah, we will confirm that tomorrow. I would expect we can continue it to your next meeting on the 28th, but I'll confer with the mayor on that.
All right. Thank you. So we'll now return to our discussion on housing. Next is Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sorry.
May I just interrupt? I apologize. Excuse me, Mr. Vice Mayor. The clerk's office informs me that actually, just as a public hearing, if we're going to pick a date, we need to do that tonight while the meeting is going on. So I would recommend that we do carry this forward to the meeting on the 28th next week.
All right. Then this item is continued to March 28th.
Item number 11.
Item 11. Vice Mayor Scharf.
Thank you. So first of all, I guess I'll comment on the San Antonio sites. Whereas they're not bad sites for housing, the issue is, is that they will actually create quite a bit of traffic and will have impacts on the community. Whereas if you move those housing sites to downtown, for instance, I think you could eliminate those impacts to the community, because they'd be much closer to transit and you wouldn't have to have a car. I think you have to have a car if you live on San Antonio. So I think we should move those housing sites to downtown or possibly California Avenue. I think what we need to do, though, a lot of this, is I'm willing to move forward on some of these items before we finish the comprehensive plan, but I think if we do so, we should do so in a very moderate and pilot-type project. I really want to see what the fifth scenario looks like. I want to see how we can reduce impacts to the community, because that's what all the speakers are concerned about. What I don't want to do is to go approve a lot of housing, watch all the traffic, and all the things we talk about in the community about reducing traffic... And all the things we talk about in the community about reducing traffic and making Palo Alto a more livable place, we don't want to undermine all of that. We want to do this in a smart way that doesn't do that. And I think part of that would be moving those housing sites from San Antonio and maybe building micro-units downtown. You could look at how we could decouple parking from that. We could have it so they couldn't get a parking permit if you had a unit there. I think micro-units, for instance, should be rental housing, should not be for sale for a whole host of reasons. I don't think we need to go into necessarily, but people will move out of them. You don't want people necessarily raising families in micro-units. So I think we want to think carefully through those kind of things and look at that. I do want to move forward on ADUs. I know staff's working on it. I'm hoping we're continuing to work on it, given that we had a colleague's memo and a vote on that, to move forward. I think the thing I, of these priorities on packet page seven, the one I think, funny enough, is one of the least priorities, is probably the land assembly incentives, but yet that's what we agreed to do in the comprehensive plan, so I think we have to do it. From my point of view, I would not be supportive of reduced parking unless it is in areas in which you are going to not need that parking. I don't want people to be parking in neighborhoods and exacerbate the parking issues we had, and I would not be supportive of reducing retail requirements. And, you know, height or density are all location-specific for me. So I wouldn't want to have a blanket rule that says we could do greater height on these or greater density. I might at some point be okay with housing, affordable housing overlay zones, but in general, I have a strong concern that we've changed the rules. We have the rules for a reason. And if the rules that we're going to change are going to make, you know, things worse in those particular projects for the people that either live there or for the community as a whole, I wouldn't support that. I think that we want to basically build as much housing as we can without having impacts to the community. And so therefore, I think we want to think carefully about why we have the rules and what we're doing with them. I also want us to look at eliminating or the reasons why we have special setbacks throughout the city. I understand that from a lot of people that special setbacks are a cause to make it difficult to actually build housing on sites and things like that. So I want to look at that. I am supportive downtown in lots of times of possibly moving towards looking at your FAR as an envelope and not having a number of unit count and letting people decide how they want to do that. And I would be supportive in places like downtown, but probably not other places, of having different height limits for that if you built within the FAR zone. I actually think you get some very attractive buildings I've seen downtown, which are much higher than 50 feet. And I'm not thinking a lot, I'm thinking like 65-foot height limit, but they're within the FAR, so you can do more with that. You have more of a form-based zoning that creates much more attractive buildings, as opposed to building these boxy things that are completely, you know, designated by your building envelope. And I think that gets to Mayor Holman's point about attractive design. I, and again, in terms of unbundling parking, I'm only willing to unbundle the parking if we're not going to have impacts on the neighborhoods and the people actually aren't going to have cars. So I think that's very location-specific. Let's see. Cohousing, whereas I'm probably supportive of cohousing in places that are like California Avenue in a multifamily setting, I don't think I'm really supportive in single-family neighborhoods of cohousing. I might be, but I also don't view this as a priority item. I think we have so many items and planning is so overwhelmed that I don't quite see spending a lot of time on cohousing. But I might be convinced otherwise if people thought it was a strong reason to go forward. And then in our first paragraph, let's see. Oh, yeah, on the Fries site. Again, my recollection is that the developer came forward and said they had to lease with Fries, and we had some time on this. I don't think Fries is where we should be spending our time right now. We made that decision earlier. I do think we have to decide, and we should do a, what do we call them, not, a plan, a coordinated area plan for Fries and move forward on that, but the timing is, the question is when and what is the timing? And I believe my recollection is that we have time and we made that decision at some council meeting when we put off that, given the workload that we have. So on affordable housing, I think we have to also think about, we mix up a lot of concepts when we talk about affordable housing. We talk about teachers, we talk about firefighters, we talk about people that work for the city. As far as I can tell, none of those people qualify for affordable housing. So what we have to figure out is how we can do subsidized housing that works for what I would quote, consider "the new middle class," which would be our firefighters, our teachers, those groups, so that they can stay in Palo Alto. Because at the moment, if we build affordable housing, especially with the numbers we look at, I don't think any of those people qualify. And I'd be interested if we had metrics and figuring out by staff how we can make those qualify. And that may be changes in what we use, what we can use our, collect our affordable housing fees for and how we can use our affordable housing dollars so that we can subsidize not traditional low-income housing, but more moderate-income housing for people who actually make more than 120% of the median income, because that's what those people do. So those are my initial thoughts on this. I think this is really complicated, and I actually think this is almost too complicated for the time we have allotted tonight.
Councilmember Wolbach?
Well, first thing I want to say is thanks to every, you know, member of the public who showed up tonight to speak or who emailed or called us or met with us outside of tonight's I think that, I think that really the range of views that we've seen expressed tonight really demonstrate that there's not really consensus yet in Palo Alto, and there's probably not a consensus on council yet about what exact policies we want to pursue. But there are two key themes that I'm really hearing. One is a recognition that our supply does not meet our demand for a diverse range of needs, a diverse range of groups. And, you know, people have different thoughts about whether we should try to address that supply, those various supply problems, or how to do that. The other big theme I see is that whatever we do, however we add housing, for whichever groups, we have to be really thoughtful about what the impacts are on our R1 neighborhoods and on quality of life throughout the city. So kind of my big-picture thoughts on this is that we should, when we're talking about housing programs, which, you know, we're talking about housing programs and sites tonight, when we're talking about housing, we really ought to think of it as a three-legged stool. And leg one of that is the total supply. Leg two of that is having as many BMR units as possible. And leg three is preservation. And this is part for, in part for Councilmember Holman, but something I've thought for a long time, which is that you really need to talk about preservation, both of the supply that you have and also preserving opportunities for people who are here now to remain here. Just one anecdote that I heard recently, I met somebody who had just left Palo Alto. He'd lived here for many years with his wife and their kids, and they got divorced. And, you know, as two separate incomes that were able to together afford to live in Palo Alto, they're no longer able to. And so now there's the question of where are the kids going to go, what's going to happen to the family? I think that's just one more example of the kinds of people who are hurt by the crisis that we have. And of course, you know, in the context of this, I think we should keep a real laser-like focus on the potential negative and the potential positive impacts of housing, with traffic and parking really at the top of the list, but also including parks, utilities, schools, city finances, as well as the aesthetics of design, and making sure that the process really includes the community, which is why I think that, you know, coordinated area plans, especially for the Fries site, but potentially for San Antonio, potentially for South El Camino Real or other sites, is a smart way to include the community at a high level and at a deep level in planning. Just a couple of things, though, because I want to go back to this total supply issue. From 1970 to 2010, Palo Alto's population grew by about 15%. If I'm wrong on these numbers, feel free to correct me, but my understanding is that Palo Alto's population grew by about 15% from 1970 to 2010. Santa Clara County's population grew by 62% during that same timeframe. So I'd like to address this anti-housing fallacy, that market-rate housing does nothing to address housing costs in the region. The California Legislative Analyst Office and academic research increasingly confirm what logic tells us. If there isn't enough market-rate housing, then people who could afford higher-end market-rate units move instead into what would have been lower rate market, lower-end market-rate housing. Because, and because they can afford to pay more, the lower end of the market becomes more expensive. This means that people who can afford only the mid-to-low ranges of the market are squeezed into overcrowded housing or out of our city or out of the region entirely. Now, obviously, this isn't a Palo Alto problem, this is a regional problem. It's a classic collective action problem. If every city says, "We want jobs, but we don't want homes for years," we end up with a housing crisis. Bingo, that's where we are. But Palo Alto can, however, do our part to not, you know, even if we can't make Palo Alto any cheaper, we can at least do our part to keep the region from becoming more expensive. So yes, we do need to provide some market-rate housing, and we also need more BMR housing, lots of BMR housing, and, you know, really as much as we can get, and recognizing, of course, that the economics of BMR housing is extremely challenging, as are the politics, as we know all too well. And we also, I think, need to explore, back to that third, you know, leg of the stool, we need to explore policies that reduce the chances of displacement for current existing renters especially. Now, the political reality is that Palo Alto is really unlikely to approve more housing than our reno obligations. I accept that, I understand that. But at least we can make sure that we actually produce most of that, rather than zoning for it, planning for it, and never building any of it. I do think that we should move towards Scenario 4's housing production as a real target, the housing, not the job side. I think we should set that Scenario 4 housing as a target that we'll really try and meet. Housing growth beyond that, you know, if we do consider anything beyond that, it should be conditional, you know, based on meeting certain impact targets like infrastructure, traffic, and parking. And, you know, there was something mentioned, I think it was by Arthur Keller earlier, that we should provide the appropriate amount of parking for a site. I think that's really important. Now, what's appropriate might change depending on what kind of housing we're providing. When we're talking about micro-units or higher-density units within, you know, in the same, you know, FAR and height limits that we already have, but maybe removing or raising the maximum densities of units, maybe even also adding minimum densities with the goal of it being car-light or car-free, you know, there are a couple of things that I think we're going to need to eventually give city attorney-staff direction to go explore or city planning-staff. And those are, one, could we have buildings in which residents are not eligible for RPP permits? So if you build, say, a micro-apartment building in a downtown area with very little parking, could you have it as a condition of approval that nobody who leases an apartment in that building is going to be eligible when they come to City Hall or go on our website and ask for an RPP permit? And second, and this would be the next step beyond that and potentially more complex to enforce, but I'd like to at least know if it's an option, could we have buildings in which residents are required to sign a lease agreement committing to not own a car at all? And then if they do register a car with the DMV, they're in violation of their lease agreement. Not sure we want to go down that path, but that's the kind of thing where I want to at least know what are our options? You know, when people say, "Yeah, micro-units without parking sounds like a nice, you know, unicorn idea," I want us to be able to say, "Well, we're actually going to enforce the lack of cars and the lack of parking." You know. Getting on to some more specifics, I think we should think about whether we want another Channing House or something like that, whether we want another opportunity center or something like that, whether we want housing for the developmentally-disabled and extremely low-income, especially near transit services. We heard a number of speakers about that tonight. I'm generally supportive of all of these. In cohousing, in Mountain View, they have a cohousing site that was built not long ago, and I believe it's for seniors, but I'm not positive. When it comes to special setbacks, I think this is something we should look into. We might have, I've heard that we have places where the site is zoned for a certain number of units, but because of special setbacks that might take away half of the property, it's almost impossible to build the number of units that we've already zoned for. That doesn't mean I want to get rid of them throughout the city, but I want to at least have some discussion about that at some point. Yeah, as I mentioned before, oh, as I mentioned before, when it comes to micro-units, really, that's something where I think maybe we want to look at doing an overlay for downtown. I'm not sure we're ready to do that at the citywide level or in other areas, but I think downtown's the right place to start, because we already have RPP set up. Maybe an overlay for downtown for multifamily housing without a maximum density limit, but instead with minimum density limits, retaining FAR and height limits and no eligibility for RPP permits, as I referred to earlier. I'm open to considering increasing residential FAR, at least in certain places, but I'm not going to advocate for increasing the height limits. And when we have apartments that are decoupled from parking, we really ought to talk about residential TDM, the kind of stuff that we're doing in TDM for commercial spaces, we need to start doing for residential as well. And that's whether it's micro-units or not. That means Zip Cars on-site, Bike Share on-site, Caltrain VTA passes. That would even be for, you know, for pretty much any new apartments. As far as location rearrangement, for me, it's too soon to say. I'm not ready to say at this point that we should move housing away from San Antonio Road. I think that San Antonio, there's a lot going on there. There is a Caltrain station there. Like Calav, it's not well-served currently, but I'm not sure yet what the future of San Antonio and the area around San Antonio looks like. So this might be another area for a coordinated area plan. Heard earlier discussion, I agree, we should be working closely with Mountain View. Between what's happening at San Antonio and El Camino in Mountain View and what's happening in North Bay Shore and how congested San Antonio Road is, I think we should start really looking at San Antonio and maybe partnering with Mountain View and seeing if we can make that a place that's really well-served by shuttles, even if it means we're joining forces with other cities or businesses in the area, because the congestion on San Antonio is really awful. And until we have, you know, some shuttles running frequently, regularly, and long hours on San Antonio, I can't advocate for more housing there. You know, Bob Moss mentioned for BMR ADUs, that maybe we should allow extra FAR. I'm not sure if I'd advocate for that. I'm interested in that idea. I would think we should also at least look into that concept of maybe offering a low-interest loan, perhaps using our affordable housing funds as a source, low-interest loans for an individual who says, "You know, I qualify for whatever the rules are, current or future. I qualify for the rules for a BMR unit, but I'm on a fixed income, and I can't afford the construction cost to add to the ADU, you know, whether it's a freestanding structure or just remodeling inside my existing home, so it blends in, but I can't afford it." And if the city said, "Well, we'd be willing to make available or help you find a low-interest loan if you commit to listing your BMR, yes, your ADU as a BMR unit for an X number of years," I think that would be really great. But these are complex discussions. And going back to the idea of preservation, I don't think we can get into it a lot tonight, but I want to make sure it's mentioned. One is the question of right of return, you know, so if a small multifamily housing complex is replaced with a larger, more higher-density multifamily housing complex, is there a way we can make sure the people who are there now don't get displaced permanently but could come back after the remodel's done? Two, a voluntary program to encourage landlords not to increase their rents rapidly. Just as one example, Redwood City has a program that I understand works like, the city says to a landlord, "If you agree for X number of years to moderate your rental increases, we'll help you pay for your fire sprinkler upgrades," which is actually a pretty big get. Third, I think we do need to talk about ghost houses at some point. And fourth, a year ago, we asked city staff to come back in a year, and we're coming up on that, about short-term rentals. And I think we need to look to what other cities have done to have better regulation, clearer rules about short-term rentals. I've become very concerned about what short-term rentals, you know, Airbnb, et cetera, what that means for the law... that means for the loss of housing stock, whether it's somebody's ADU, or their whole house they're renting out, or even whole apartment buildings. They get taken off of the market to be regular rental housing, market rate housing, and they get turned into hotel rates, which are far beyond what almost anybody can pay, uh, on a monthly basis. Those are my thoughts for now.
All right, Councilmember Phil Seth.
Uh, yeah, thanks very much. So, um, I'm gonna, gonna try also not to take up all the time that Mark Berman didn't take, said he wasn't gonna take up, but, uh, but, uh, but I, I, I wanna, I wanna make a, make a few, a few very sort of more high-level comments on, on how I think we should look at that and reserve the right, if there's time remaining, to come back and talk in detail. Um, first, I wanna note that we just approved a, a supply increase in town of several hundred or as many as eighteen hundred units of market rate housing, uh, depending on how many of those are in, in the city as those folks migrate into the Stanford Housing, uh, development that's gonna come online in a few years, right? So, so we've had a, a pretty big increase, uh, tonight in, in city housing, without actually even building anything, right? Um, but I think the, you know, the main, the main challenge here, and the reason we're all, we're all and have been in here and are still here late at night is this is not an easy problem, right? I mean, the, the reality is we can't possibly house everybody who would like to move to Palo Alto, right? And, uh, the concern is we could do a lot of damage trying if we're not very careful about how we go about it, and that's what we're all talking about here. So I think, you know, the, the, you know, the real questions about housing are how much should we build and, and who should, you know, who should it be targeted for, right? And if you answer those things, you sort of get cues on how much, or sorry, of where to build it and what kind and so forth. And, you know, given that we're probably can't help everybody right away at least, you know, who should we help first? And I'm gonna weigh in on, I think the, the vice mayor said this very eloquently, right, is that, you know, I really think you gotta look at the affordability issue, but it's kind of an expanded definition of affordability, I mean, classical affordable housing, right, uh, you know, with sort of low-income people. But I think in this town, it's expanded to cover a lot of middle-income people who, who are kind of stuck in the middle, right? They make too much money to qualify for BMR housing, but not enough to actually live in here, uh, live in town, uh, on a sustainable basis. So I think, you know, we talked about, or a couple of people in the audience brought up, how do you define affordability? I think anybody who can't afford to pay market rate, uh, in town basically falls into the affordability bucket. And that includes, you know, people like teachers, city staff, uh, other, other Palo Alto employees, uh, white-collar folks, uh, you know, accounts payable people, HR staffers, and so forth. And these are people who are, are middle-class, but can't afford to live in Palo Alto, right? And the reason it's irrelevant is that, 'cause there are people who can afford to live here, and there's actually supply in town for, for those kinds of people. It's expensive, but, you know, you're talking base, basically about people who own their own home already, maybe for a long time, and it's a huge asset, maybe they're seniors that own their own, or that earn enough to pay market rate. So if you're, if you work for a tech firm, or you're an associate attorney or something like that, and you make a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, yes, you can afford two or three thousand dollars a month for, uh, for housing. I mean, you may not, you may grimace while you write the check, but you can afford it. And so, uh, you know, the, you know, the, the housing crisis was mentioned before, I think it's probably more accurate to call it a housing affordability crisis, right? Because if you can afford housing, if you can afford to pay market rate in Palo Alto, I mean, the, I mean, I'm not saying it's all roses for the market rate people, but, but, you know, there's options out there. So the, the, I think that needs to be the major focus here, is on, on affordability, and it's this expanded definition of affordability. The second thing I wanna talk about briefly is sort of this idea, and Winter Delenbrack was pretty eloquent about it, is you can't build your way out of affordability, right? And I think that's exactly right. And, uh, a couple of reasons, I know there's been some discussion, but for example, right, I've been watching Craigslist for a few months now about rentals in Craigslist. And in Palo Alto, typically, there's somewhere between two hundred and fifty, you know, rentals advertised on Craigslist at any given time. And quarter of them are under twenty-five hundred dollars a month, but not much, okay? So I, you know, this is from a couple of weeks ago, here we go, this is the cheapest you can find in Palo Alto, okay? Uh, four hundred and fifteen square feet, twenty-one hundred dollars a month, okay? Three hundred and sixty square feet, nineteen hundred dollars a month, and I didn't see anything less than that, okay? So, I mean, that's a micro unit, okay? So when we talk about micro units, I think there may be good reasons for building micro units, but there's not a lot of evidence that they're gonna be dramatically less expensive than existing units, particularly to the point where, you know, middle-income folks, teachers, other, other school depart district staff, city staff, and so forth are gonna be able to afford them, right? And I'll give you another example. So the lady next door to me, uh, rents out a studio over a garage, right, comes with the garage, right, tiny place, it's over three thousand dollars a month, you know. Guy that lives there, nice kid from Texas, works for Google, okay, right? But that's, you know, I mean, I mean, that's almost a micro unit there, okay? So I think there may be good reasons for micro units, but it's not, it's certainly not proven that affordability's gonna be one. And I think right behind that is sort of this idea that, well, if we have micro units, then we're gonna have RM eighty zoning as well, and I think that's a, a separate issue we need to think about as well. The second thing I wanna talk about in terms of affordability is, one thing that doesn't get mentioned too much is that a major component of the cost of housing in Palo Alto is actually the brand image of the Palo Alto School District. So a couple of years ago, Ann Duncan, who used to be the, the district analyst, estimated that, on average, being inside Palo Alto School District boundaries added five hundred thousand dollars to the price of a home in Palo Alto, right? And that seems like a lot of money. And yet, if you look at price per square foot, uh, in Palo Alto versus neighboring cities, you know, we're, Menlo Park is twenty-five percent less than, uh, per square foot than we are, right? And Mountain Views and Redwood City are less than that. And a bunch of that can be attributed to the school district. And my point is that just building a lot more market rate housing isn't gonna reduce that, okay? You're still gonna have that unless you build so much that you trash the school system, which, you know, obviously, we're not gonna do. Um, so, again, I, I'm not saying it's all roses for the market rate people, but I think our focus as council, particularly given that we just approved a big increase in market rate housing availability, right? Okay? I think our focus as council really beyond what the Weekly said was, uh, the laser focus on affordability problems, expandability. Now, I realize that's a really, really hard problem, okay? Uh, you know, who's gonna pay for it is, is inevitably. But, but, you know, I mean, if we want to be, right, in the long term, a moderate-density family town with great schools and great services, then, you know, we want these kind of people here, right? And they can't afford to live here now. So I actually think this is the formative, formative housing problem here in town, right? And so I hope as we go through these things, and the comp plan and so forth, that's the filter we ought to look at that is, is this gonna help us achieve that end? Again, I think the market rate folks, you know, it's not perfect, but they got options, right? I think this is where the focus needs to be. So as we consider, you know, accessory dwelling units and micro units and so forth, the question we gotta ask is, is this gonna help us keep people in town who can't afford to live here right now? Okay, thanks for your.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, just a couple of general comments. We heard a lot today about affordable housing, balanced, diverse community. I think that the heart of a lot of the residential concerns is traffic. Community survey certainly says that. And our three-to-one ratio, that we are a major commute center, which makes affordability for housing extremely difficult. Stanford gave us the hints of a solution. They said dense infill housing near transit and jobs cuts traffic. They didn't add, especially when the number of graduate student places remains the same. But that's an important lesson. We can make a difference if we balance jobs and growth. And put the jobs where they make most sense, near jobs, near services, near transit, near entertainment, where you have options, walkable options, and full of life. That's in places where you have blocks where you can walk in different directions, not in strings, where you walk along a single path. Now, all the maps from the housing element go back to the issue that the Housing Committee ended up with. We have now our housing sites dispersed. There's one-third in the downtown area, one-third in the Calav area, one-third strung out along South El Camino and San Antonio. But if you look carefully, there's a very strange thing in there. The two places that are most walkable, the downtown center and the Calav center, only account for about twenty percent of those housing sites. Now, there is places that make the most sense are where there are the fewest number of these houses. So I would be very much in favor of targeting housing growth in the downtown area, in the Calav area, and in the Stanford Research Park, where the jobs are, and they're trying to create a balanced community. Bottom line for me, I guess, is moderate growth with a balance of jobs and housing, I think would give us, like Stanford has given us a lesson tonight, a way to begin to change the three-to-one ratio and the issues and problems that we seem to have created.
Councilmember DeBois.
So if anybody's still awake, I have three ideas that I'd like to try to get across, maybe broaden the discussion a little bit. Not as recovering houses in our neighborhoods, the new mixed-use definition, this residential and retail R and R zone in downtown Calav. And three is really, um, I think building on Councilmember Phil Seth's idea of targeting housing for specific users. So we really haven't talked much about recovering housing. And I think we could probably most quickly, simply by enforcing some of our residential ordinances, actually get back a lot of existing housing. So, again, we, we just recover potentially housing tonight by approving the Stanford project. Um, I am very concerned about short-term rentals, Airbnb, I've been tracking it for the last year. We have a huge number, as much as San Jose, probably over six hundred. And I think many of those, you can tell, they're clearly speculators, they're a hundred percent of the house is rented out on, you know, a daily basis. They advertise that they're in nice, quiet neighborhoods, and, uh, they're very expensive. Um, and so I think, you know, the quickest way to actually add housing would be to eliminate speculation in our neighborhoods, short-term rentals, and turn that into long-term rentals. Um, I also think we need to enforce the prohibit, prohibit, prohibiting businesses running out of neighborhood houses. And I think we probably all heard stories, I mean, I have people come up and say, "Yeah, there's ten cars every day at this house." Um, again, if we just enforce that and rent it as a house, uh, we're recovering housing stock. And then, uh, we talk a little bit about ghost homes. I think Vancouver's trying something really interesting, they have a, um, tax if you buy a house and it's not occupied. Uh, it doesn't have to be owner-occupied, but it needs to be occupied. And, um, they're projecting raising about ninety million dollars, and they're gonna return that money to homeowners and to renters. Um, that's a very interesting idea, and I'd like to see us evaluate kind of creative ideas like that. So that's, that's recovering housing. On the, on the R and R zone, um, you know, we actually have a surprising amount of middle housing in Palo Alto. I think Karen mentioned these kind of well-integrated, multi-unit housing transitions. Um, I think where we need to focus is, again, downtown Calav. I think we should really try retail-residential. I think it limits office in our most densely impacted areas, um, and it's a good place to try, try micro units. Um, I do support moving the housing away from San Antonio and shifting those micro units. And, uh, nobody's really talked about protecting affordable business, but that part of San Antonio that we're talking about is probably the last kind of affordable semi-industrial business district. And, and to me, that's kind of more interesting than almost any other reason to try to protect it. Um, and then this last one, targeting kind of middle-income housing. Um, I think we should seriously look at an active program for teachers and city staff. And teachers should include preschool teachers. Um, by working jointly with PAUSD, I've, I've heard from school, some school board members that they're actually very interested in exploring this. They're looking at working across multiple school districts to create teacher housing. And, um, you know, as we know, the school district owns a lot of sites they're not using as schools right now. If this school district contributed land and the city, uh, contributed building, um, I think it could be really interesting, I think we could actually get it done, and we could have some housing, it could be land that the school district continues to control if they ever need it back for school, uh, but I think they have more sites than they need to use. Also, in this kind of low-income, affordable, and middle-income, I think we need to stay focused on Buena Vista, um, anything we can do to resolve a lawsuit there. Um, I think the idea about preserving housing is really important, not letting it, uh, be torn down. I think the program that Karen was citing was pretty interesting. And then I would, I would be supportive of some kind of program for, um, disabled housing in the comp plan. Um, I'm, I'm less bullish on ADU changes, I think, uh, we, we could do some minor tweaks, we get relatively few number of housing, how, new housing units that way. If we did major tweaks, I don't think it'd be supported by the majority of people in Palo Alto. So I'm a little concerned that we're spending a lot of time on ADUs for potentially a small return. Um, so those are my main three points, just recover the housing we already have and make sure it's being used as housing. I'd like to try this R and R zone, and I'd like to see if we could, could really create some teacher or staff housing. And in terms of timing, I think, I think we could recover some of the housing right away, like we don't need to wait for the comp plan. Um, you know, I see the R and R zone and the teacher housing as more comp plan types of ideas. Um, and I'd like to see the, the CAC really pick up on this issue of recovering housing and maybe discuss it and see what they think about this idea of, you know, short-term rentals, businesses, neighborhoods, and, and empty houses. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so I think we've had a lot of good thoughts tonight, I'm gonna add a few of my thoughts, but we, we haven't really zeroed in on, um, whether we want any of these initiatives to pre, precede the completion of the comp plan. Colleagues really haven't spoken specifically to that. Um, and, um, so that's, and then we're going to need to think about what our process might be going forward. But let me just offer a few of my comments, um, on accessory dwelling units. Um, I, I've, we've had them in my neighborhood, uh, got them all over the place, and principally in alleyways, and, and they really are well-integrated in the fabric of the neighborhood. Um, but I, I am sensitive to this newer problem, which is, um, how we contend with, uh, those becoming short-term rentals if we expand that. And I think the two things are going to have to be dealt with hand in hand. Um, on micro units, uh, my wife and I, uh, actually, our first place we rented in Palo Alto was in College Terrace, and we didn't think it was a micro unit, it was half of a small duplex, but it was about four hundred square feet, and we lived there almost four years, and we had parties in the park, we didn't have them in the home. But other than that, um, it's not unbearable, especially for young couples or singles, and, and whether they're in downtown areas or elsewhere, um, I don't think this is really a bizarre concept. Um, in the downtown area, I think that the, the one thing, if we wanna see them built, uh, we'll need to look at, uh, the parking requirements, 'cause that drives so much of the housing, and, um, it's one of the, the benefits of having implemented the residential permit parking is that up until then... until then, whether we might have been able to prove or be convincing that in theory the parking could be reduced for certain types of units at certain locations, as long as if they were underparked, they could just get spilled over into the neighborhoods, we'd still have a big problem. I think that we should prohibit residential permit sales for all-new development in the downtown areas. So that's both commercial and residential, and they're just ineligible, and I think that would be one of the best things to do right at the outset. It's an easy call. I don't think there's any legal constraints on that. Maybe the city attorney can loop back to us later on that, but I think that's easy to do. And then we get into a serious discussion about, okay, what is appropriate parking? Well, a lot of folks actually don't realize that we have some of these examples already existing in our downtown area. The one that comes to my mind is Alma Place, which is a single-room occupancy that was built now 18 years or so ago. And it's also essentially a cohousing unit. They have minimal microwave or whatever in the rooms, and the rest is shared. I went in their garage and hadn't checked it out in a while, but I recalled it was underparked. Hillary, I don't know if you know how many units are at Alma Place?
Yes, Mayor Burt. In Alma Place, there are 107 affordable, single-room occupancy or studio apartments. The average unit size is 238 square feet. There are 71 parking spaces. 13 people are currently on the waiting list to get a parking space, and they share with the staff who work there during the day.
I also, when I went in their underground garage on Sunday, there were available parking spaces, but no available bike racks. The bike racks were overflowed, and it's kind of goofy to me that we continue to, we saw in our survey downtown, how many people would avoid driving downtown if they had more, better bike storage, and talk about low-hanging fruit. So I think that that concept is one that we should be proceeding on. I think that coupled with that would be, we establish what is an appropriate floor-area ratio that we want to allow, and that has to consider the impact of housing density bonuses, so that we don't think we've put one standard in, and then with the density bonuses, it's 30% more than what we intended. So we have to anticipate that most housing developers are going to take advantage of the housing density bonuses. But I actually think we should, the way we drive those small units is to have a certain FAR, and developers are almost invariably going to go up to the max FAR, and put a minimum number of units. Right now, we tend to constrain the number of units. So we put a minimum level of units, and you can kind of establish a range of small unit sizes by a min and perhaps a max under a given floor-area ratio. And with making them own the consequences of the parking, no spillover. We can have units that have less parking, and they'll be a lot more likely to get built. They won't have impacts on the schools. Despite what some people have claimed, you're just not going to have families in, you know, units of a few hundred square feet. So I think that's something that we should look at doing sooner. I agree with Vice Mayor Scharf that we, while we embrace pursuing some of these options, these are new innovations, and we want to go at it in a moderately measured way and see results, so we could take certain areas that we say that will have initial implementation of these practices in. But something that allows us to look at doing some of these innovative measures and establish, not only to ourselves, but to the community, that it doesn't have unintended consequences. The cohousing, I don't know why we're even talking about this in R1. I think that's not where cohousing's going to happen, so I think it's a moot point. But as far as in multifamily areas, I don't see what the big issue is. I mean, I don't know why we would care about regulating lifestyles, or how people share kitchens or don't share kitchens. If it's more efficient, that's fine. If somebody wants to build it and people want to live in it, I don't have sweat either way on that. And then we have these important issues of reducing commercial density and increasing residential. And I think this goes back to some of the things that we've talked about, that not only has the RPP helped enable more housing to be built, but the office cap has as well. Because as long as there is a more attractive alternative, we could incentivize housing, and it still won't get built, as long as there's a better return on investment. And we've already done a great deal to curtail that, and that should be viewed as part of the success of what we've done with the office cap. And other measures, where we've eliminated the exemptions for, on parking downtown and curtailed transfer development rights for commercial. So I think all those things have teed it up for being able to actually implement some of these new housing approaches and see them actually getting built. And I do think unbundling parking is another component when we have these small units, that people should rent a unit, and if they have a car, they rent the parking spot. And so I think that, finally, this affordable housing overlay, I do have a question, and it doesn't necessarily have to be answered now, but this paragraph talks about strictly carrots rather than sticks. And I'm not sure why we couldn't create some form of an overlay that has certain requirements, not just carrots. I'm not sure that we'd want to have an overlay that is exclusively affordable. I don't want to see ghettos of certain housing types. As Councilmember Holman talked about, in the sofa areas, we really deliberately looked at integrating affordable housing in neighborhoods and embracing it, but not putting islands, big islands in town that are all affordable. And so if we had an overlay that required a certain percentage to be affordable for, under whatever development standards we have, I think that we could increase the proportion of affordable housing and get it in a right mixture, and I think that's an interesting approach. So I see Vice Mayor Scharf has his light, and I suspect you're going to try and put something forward here. We're now after 11, and it, I'm not sure how easily we're going to be able to move forward with, if we want to have actual direction rather than guidance, but I'm open to hearing what Vice Mayor Scharf has in mind. But unless we are able to pull this together, we're going to have to figure out how we move from this, what I think's been a really good discussion, to actually the guidance on what we want to do on the housing sites, what we want to support in comp plan housing policies and programs, and what we might want to do before the comp plan is complete. Those are the three open issues in my mind. But I do think that there's a moderate amount of consensus on the various directions that would be constructive, and I think more than maybe a lot of us thought we would have, you know, six months or a year ago. And so I want to also commend staff for coming forward with a whole set of alternatives that were framed in ways that allowed us and the public to really start sinking our teeth into it. So, thank you. Vice Mayor Scharf.
So, first of all, I just actually did want to know, how many units in San Antonio are we talking about moving? If we did those three sites? I didn't see a number.
We calculated there were about 250 units in the housing element in San Antonio and the very end of South El Camino.
Can I make one? Sure. I neglected to make one comment on the San Antonio sites, and that's to bear in mind, right now, we don't have very good transit down there, and we really, there's some services, but it's not a service-rich area. But we have on the horizon electrification of Caltrain, which will, if it happens by 2021 as it's scheduled, it will drastically alter the service levels at both Cal Ave and San Antonio. And we should really be thinking about that. I mean, this housing, how soon would it get built? We're 2016 now. We wouldn't have projects submitted for another year or more, and then these tend to take a couple of years. We're talking 2019, probably, pretty much at the earliest, before we actually see very many things start happening. And that's only a couple of years away from when we'd have Caltrain electrification. And since we're thinking about these as, you know, development that's going to be there for 50 years or so, we really ought to be bearing in mind that change that's going to happen in the Caltrain corridor. And the land value increase that is happening right now for commercial land, I'm being told within a half-mile of Caltrain, it's like 30 or 50% higher than a mile or more away for office. And that may be more so on office than residential, but in this environment, in our future environment, that's really valuable land, and we also haven't figured out any way to monetize that increase of land value around transit to help pay for transit, and to help pay for parks, common space, all these things. And that's another meta-issue that we haven't had here, but I just want people to start thinking about that, and for staff to start thinking about it, because I think that's really crucial as we go into all these other things, is we're going to create a whole bunch of value, and we may get housing out of it, and we'll create value for developers and not necessarily for government to be able to help provide the very important things that have to go hand-in-hand with that. So I don't have those answers, I just want people to start thinking about it. Sorry, I went back after that.
All good. All right. So there's a couple of things on my list here. So the first thing is that a number of my colleagues spoke about the need for housing for moderate-income Palo Altons, teachers, firefighters, you know, employees of the city. So what we need to do is to figure out how to do that. So I would like to make a motion that staff come back to us with how we could achieve that. And that includes, in my mind, what dollars can we use from our affordable housing funds? What rules do we need to change so as we collect fees in the future if we can't use those funds? How that would work? We're about to look at our new impact fees, how those impact fees could be used for these projects, and what are the barriers to doing that and how we can overcome it? So I'll...
I have a question.
Sure.
So is, oh, Mike, is this in the context of a program or policy for the comp plan, or is this more detailed?
This would be, I think this is more detailed to be able to do this now, frankly. I don't, I mean, I think it's, the comp plan is, this is stuff that I think we should do before we finish the comp plan.
Yeah, just a little clarification.
Right. And I think there's specific rules that we need to change, possibly. That's my understanding. So I wanted staff...
Do you want this live now?
Yeah. I mean, I want...
One second.
So, I don't know how you'd like to do it, if you want me to break these up. I had like three different things, if you want me to break. I can put them all together, and then it could be up to the mayor if he wants to break it up, or if you want...
Why don't you lay them out in components, and then we can see whether they should be broken apart?
Sure. So, that's the first one. I'll work with you to make sure. The second one is, I think we should, well, I'd move that we, that staff come back to us with a program for microhousing units downtown, and that could be specific sites, or it could be an overlay for the entire downtown, or how that, what that looks, and what are the different options for council. And I think we need to include the issue of decoupling parking, the issue of, you know, not selling parking permits, possibly the issue of lease restrictions, depending if that's legal. I want staff to come back with a plan of how we could do that with minimum impacts, and what that would look like, and how many units, frankly, as a pilot program. I mean, I don't think we want to suddenly have 1,000 micro units. So I want there to be some metering on this, where we try this, see how it goes, the first people that get to do it, get to do it, or something like that. The third thing is, I think staff should come back with us with a plan for more bike storage downtown. It is low-hanging fruit, and, you know, we shouldn't just talk about it.
Bike storage?
Yeah, bike storage. We should do it.
That's one thing you can do. It's part of our housing home. It's a little off topic.
And then, I do think that we should, so I'm going to speak to this a little, just put it in context. I think we should look at changing our housing element from the San Antonio sites to Cal Avenue and downtown. And that can be part of the microhousing, or it can be different additional sites.
D.
Yes, this is D. And I don't think, well, I'll make that, and then I'll speak to the motion about why I think we should do that. And I just say that I don't think that precludes necessarily doing housing there in the future, but I think we want to move forward in that direction.
So to try to be expeditious, let me just take a straw poll. If anyone has strong feelings about wanting to separate any of these into separate votes?
I'm fine with everything but D.
All right. Let's take them one at a time. I've got basically three people over here, and I didn't even look this way. So, all right. So we're going to take these as, separate the motion into four components, some easier than others. I imagine the bike storage will be easiest, yeah.
And that's Cal Center, California.
Clarifying questions. So I don't know how in-depth you're going to get on each one of these discussions, but, I mean, even for this moment, could we be thinking about, I will say these votes as straw votes, but there are follow-up que, you may say, we want number one, but then there are all these questions about how much of it is for the comp plan versus now. We probably would need to come back and flesh some things out in more detail. So we wouldn't walk away feeling that everything was locked in, in concrete, but you're pointing in a direction that you would want us to go.
Yeah. Would it be acceptable to have this, these framed as issues where there is, that the council has shown an interest in pursuing these ahead of the comp plan, and for staff to return with feasibility of doing so?
So that was the plan. That's sort of how I phrased it, that staff will return on all of these. It didn't mean council would necessarily do them.
Well, but also staff would return on the feasibility of them being able to accomplish it before that.
Right. Okay. All right. Fair enough.
And then, not to complicate it, it's, I mean, in one sense, even if you're talking about how could these things happen before the comp plan, you would also expect that all of these things have a relevance and a connection to the comp plan and incorporation in the comp plan. I mean, it may be a pilot, then ultimately you want the comp plan to more expansively talk about the scale or scope. I mean, this isn't going to happen, even if we can do it, in isolation of the comp plan, but you're asking us to think about a pilot, for example, which would be different than just putting a policy together for the comp plan.
The comp plan may take a while. I'd like to see these things happen before the comp plan.
Okay. Well, I think if these are directions for us, that'd be good, and then we can go back and start to figure out the scale and the scope of what's really involved here.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Holman?
A procedural question. If A is to just return for information, fine. C, fine. But the other two, and implementing A, B, D, would have to have the environmental analysis that would go concurrent with the comprehensive plans. I don't know how we could move ahead with those unless, you know, B was like a very small pilot program.
Well, let's ask that question, see if staff has any guidance on what environmental analysis might be required.
Before we get into the discussion, do we want to get a second out here? Oh, I, it's not even a second. It's not even seconded yet.
Yeah, let's do that. So, but we're going to, let's see, let me ask procedurally, since we're going to break these up into separate considerations, do they each have to individually be seconded then? How do we do that?
If you have a second for the group already, that's sufficient, then the-
But then can we vote on them individually?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I can divide it.
But if you add new elements, then you'd want a second on the new elements.
Is there a second that's been made?
Second.
Second by Councilmember DeBois. Okay. All right.
Ken, so there was a question about the EIR connection, but before Hillary even answers that, I really do feel we need to keep all of these in the realm of this signifying a direction you would like to explore in more depth coming out of a very broad-ranging discussion tonight, and we've got to come back.
Yeah. So these, I think we should have, and Vice Mayor Scharf had agreed to this in principle, but let's get this language into the cover sentence to the motion, which is that to direct staff to evaluate feasibility of doing these changes in the nearer term.
Okay.
And then to return-
Why don't we just say the near term?
Okay, near term. Sorry. And then that means you're going to come back and, after you evaluated the feasibility, and you're going to tell us what you think can or can't be done in the comparatively near term and what that means.
Well, I think it would be pretty, at least a summary return without doing lots and lots of analysis, just to structure the components of this and, you know, what the implications are. And we'd probably come back with a lot of questions for the council also.
Good.
But, you know, I mean, I would say, I mean, honestly, the difficulty with this for us is, we don't have any existing capacity to do this really without resetting some things. On the other hand-
Except the bike racks.
This is the bike racks. On the other hand, this is a, I mean, the question of actually planning and building and delivering housing is a big issue for the council. I mean, this is, I mean, this is, this is a very significant conversation you're having. And this is a way to start to try to push in getting more specific than just all the different things you guys set up here tonight. So you may have alternatives that are better ways to do that, but I do not, I would, I would really caution, I do not think this can be like even a typical council meeting where you would do a bunch of motions, and we would walk away and feel like, wow, we've got to deliver on that thing in a detailed way, because there is no way we can proceed without being able to come back and giving you better thinking about what the implications are, even though all of these can sound really appealing even to us as the staff.
So can we also get any feedback on Councilmember Holman's concern on what would trigger environmental analysis?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can tackle that. And let me just step back for a moment. I mean, this has been fantastic. First, we heard from the CAC representatives that their conversation had included a lot of different perspectives, some of them in disagreement with each other, but many, many of them, which I think are looking at some of the issues that you're looking at, ways to address this issue of housing in a meaningful way that doesn't create unwanted impacts. So, and I think the council's discussion tonight has been very constructive. We did put this on your agenda in the context of the comp plan update, thinking that the guidance you gave us would inform the comp plan update and the policies and implementation programs in that update. In addition, we thought that the input you would give us would inform the fifth scenario, the quality of life. And I'm actually looking at the A, B, and D, thinking, well, God, that sounds like you're giving us direction on what you want us to analyze as part of the fifth scenario. Now saying that, you know, Jim is agreeing that we can come back and talk about whether we can do any of this in advance of the comp plan update, but that was not our intention with this agenda item, to create a whole new list of to-do items that will cause us to have to put off other items that the council has asked for. We can, of course, come back with those trade-offs. It is true, as Councilmember Holman indicated, that before you could move to adopt a new program or ordinance establishing an interim microunit program downtown or the like, we would have to not just develop the ordinance and the program and get the council's approval of that, but we would have to prepare a sequo document of some kind, assess the impacts, community outreach, outreach to stakeholders and property owners. These are not small discussions that we would engage in. So I just encourage the council, if you can, think of a way to frame what you're asking in the context of the comp plan update. It starts to be much more realistic that we could accommodate your requests and move diligently to incorporate this and get this done concurrent with that effort.
May I just sort of, so I agree with what everything Hillary has said there with one possible clarification, which is, I think if the council were to say you were, wanted to constrict yourself to giving guidance to the comp plan, that you're not in a position to get to that directive even here tonight. You would be doing what you're doing and identifying some particular strategies or themes you want us to pursue. And we'd still have to kind of come back to you a little bit and give you more information. I mean, you all were a mirror of the CAC listening to you as far as the range of issues. And how to reconcile that in some way that's something of a strategic feedback to the CAC, you know, I think you need to be indicating where you really want the emphasis to lean towards around the range of issues. And we can then come back and say, well, we have to figure out how we could talk about it, both in the context of the comp plan and/or if you wanted to begin something concurrently.
So as I heard colleagues tonight, if the question was, what are we interested in the CAC pursuing, that's a broader set of alternatives than what's in this motion. And it wasn't, I don't think this motion was intended to narrow the things that we're interested in the CAC to do. It was intended to identify the things that we would perhaps want to move forward on preceding the completion of the comp plan. Those are two different things.
And they did ask us to do that. I, you did ask.
Yeah. Now, let me, let me ask for a little more clarification on this sequo impact.
Can I speak to this a little bit?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Hillary and Jim, I wanted to speak a little bit to what you just said. So I think when we talk about the microunits downtown, that maybe you come back to us and say, you either need to do the sequo, you don't, if you was, if you limited it to a 50-unit. I think that's part of you coming back and saying to us, yes, we can do this, yes, we cannot, otherwise it has to be included in the EIR, it has to go through the comp plan process. That would be an acceptable answer to our question about, can we move forward with this now or not? And so I think that is built into the motion, that issue you had. I think the same with the sites from San Antonio to California Avenue. You might come back to us and say, as part of the comp plan process, we need to move forward in that direction, and that's how we're going to do it. But what I thought we talked about earlier, in fact, it says in the housing element, we are going to look and evaluate that. So I thought maybe that this was something we do in terms of that evaluation now, and that it was appropriate to do so. You can come back to us and say, no, we don't have the bandwidth, or no, it's appropriate to do it differently. But that's coming back to us. I actually disagree a little bit on A. Let me talk about A a little bit. We are raising substantial amounts of money for low-income housing. We are about to change our fee structure. There are other sources that may be coming in. I believe we're having a closed session on that issue. I want to make sure that we don't lock ourselves in to not be able to do moderate-income housing for government employees, teachers, and other people who fit that category. And if we don't, we will miss that window of opportunity. We'll have a big chunk of money, and you will then tell us that we can't use it for this. So I think we need to evaluate. And I think that actually falls more on legal in lots of ways, to come up with, what are the legal strictures here? How would we change our ordinances to do that than it does planning? And I know Molly has infinite capacity. So I'm not as concerned about that.
Mayor, could I ask, could I ask the Vice Mayor a quick question?
Sure.
What you said here is to evaluate feasibility. So if that's what you mean, this says to staff, take a look at this and tell us what are the issues here, and is this something we can do, or is there something that's going to get in our way for months or years? Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Because I think in that case, then, I can just accept them all. Because if we're just looking at evaluating feasibility, that's fine. If the staff falls over in a dead faint, that's going to make me concerned. Big difference between that and saying, let's accomplish it tonight.
Oh, no, no. I'm telling you, if we, that, I was joking about the bike plan, but, I mean, if the idea was we were really driving towards some, I mean, this is, this is an iterative conversation with the council, is the approach that I'm hearing put forward for us to then come back and say, I'm sorry about it in this way. Your move, okay, here's our move back. This is, this is some of the information about what it, what's involved and what does it take. Now, the complicating issue is, is that, is it, you know, is that enough for you all tonight, this, or will there be also more that you're going to put on that list? But I really think this is one of those areas where we need to show that the council direction is tentative in the sense of asking us to be able to come back and flesh out this more, so you can, we can come back and have a more informed discussion, tell you the implications of some things. I mean, I was just running some, you know, how many units do you want to do for affordable? I mean, it doesn't take that long to figure out. We're talking billions of dollars if we're to have a target of 3,000 housing units that could be affordable versus, and there's a lot of things we can do to just sort of put some meat, more meat on the bone about the options or what the implications are for some of these things.
So Councilmember DeBois both has a question, and he's the secondor.
Well, it's actually some potential amendments. The first was really maybe getting to this idea of the comp plan versus this, which was to amend that first sentence to say, to evaluate feasibility of these changes in the near term as pilot programs for the comp plan. Because I think that's the context you're really suggesting.
So I'm not suggesting it for A. I'm suggesting it for B. And I'm not sure it's a pilot program to move from San Antonio to California Avenue or for more bike storage downtown, right?
Yeah.
So I think it would just be B.
Just for B. Okay. That's fine. And then for B, I wanted to see if you'd accept an amendment at the end there to evaluate a new mixed-use definition of residential and retail.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Is that just in downtown or in other mixed-use areas?
I, just in select locations, I think maybe you come back and suggest.
Is that okay?
That's fine. And then I really wanted to add a E, which is to return with a plan for ensuring existing housing is utilized as housing, not other uses or unused. Is used as housing, not other uses or unused. A return with a plan.
Everything else is returned with options.
A return, well, like C.
Return with, you know.
Return with options for, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, first of all-
So.
Let's see, let's go procedurally.
Not other uses or unused, period.
Okay, let's just see if you accept it, and then we can figure out whether it's a problem with it after that.
Or unused, David, right at the end there. Not other uses or unused.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just want to clarify, I don't even know that it needs to be exactly in the motion. To me, everything we're talking about is, we're doing a preliminary assessment of these directives and potentially coming back to tell the council what's involved so that it's even, there is a sort of second-
Necessarily coming back, not potentially.
Right. And you could come back and say, we can do this in the context of the comp plan.
Right. Or we can say, forget it. I mean, that this, no, I mean, I have-
When we're coming back. Say when we're going to come back.
No, we, I can't, I don't even know that. That's part of the assessment, is we have to huddle as a staff. We may say we can't even come back for three months, to be honest with you, because, and then we, but we have to put that in writing and explain to you why.
But I think you could also, one of the questions was, how do you go to the CAC? I think you could share this with the CAC as well, and they could have some discussion about some of these options.
Well, that starts getting the CAC involved in measures that would be done prior to the comp plan, which is not really their purview.
I don't know if we're joking about C, but I'm not really sure. It's assuming we need, we need more bike storage, but-
We're definitely not joking about it.
What is this, what is this, as part of the housing element, it just seems out of place. But.
Maybe it is. It's also just easy low-hanging fruit. It's a little, you're right, it's a little out of place.
But I think we could tie it there, thinking that we've been talking a lot about how we deal with the transportation issues with the housing, and that's the context.
So it is a little disconnected, but I don't think it does a great deal of harm. So now that we've clarified that we're talking about evaluating feasibility, do we still need to separate these, or can we allow staff to come back with the feasibility? I think I'm going to be inclined to try to have them voted on as one group. So maker and secondor, you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Holman?
I think you have some of us that would like to have D separated, because I don't think we can support it. I think there are at least three of us. I think there's some of us that cannot support D. So if that could be separated, I would appreciate it.
All right, let's go ahead and separate D, and we'll vote on that separately. And we, I don't want to vote on all these separately.
And then there's some other things that should be added to this, but also I'm a little, I think we're going off a little bit sideways here. It's not what staff came to us for, which isn't to say we can't change direction, but I think it's, we're confusing things, I think, a bit here. But if we're, if we are going to go down this path, there's another thing, too, with B. I think B ought to be divided into two, because I think the microunits is a separate issue than reevaluating the definition of mixed use. I think it's a separate issue. And also, I think with the maker and secondor's approval, so I also think reevaluate the definition of mixed use retail, should actually be, reevaluate the definition of mixed use to consider retail slash personal service with housing.
Yeah, that wasn't captured. Actually, if you could just capture what I said, and then we could go from there. Retail and residential.
Retail and personal service, right?
No, well, retail slash personal service and residential.
Retail slash personal service and residential. And don't you think it should be a separate category, because you're not talking about just downtown for mixed-use definition, are you?
Yeah. And after residential, in, in select locations, which was a question Hillary asked.
Okay, but should it be, should it be broken into that second half into a new C?
It seems it's a different topic.
With the microunits. Okay, let's do that.
Okay, all right. Then staff has also asked us, hang on just half a second. Well, they've asked us-
So I haven't agreed to this.
Okay.
I would agree to-
Oh, you need your mic.
I would agree to- Tell, I don't agree to personal service. I think that personal service includes lawyers and nail salons, right? I actually want retail.
I don't think personal service includes attorney's offices, does it?
I think it does.
Isn't this a little detailed? I don't mean to be rude about it. I mean, we're looking at some conceptual ideas about mixed use with ground-floor retail and residential. I mean, we'll probably tell you it'll take us five years to work on this. No, I mean, just seriously, that-
Yeah, I don't think that's the used definition of lawyers. I think it's-
Well, as long as-
Personal services like nail salons and stuff. I think it's personal services like nail salons and stuff. Unless lawyers are doing that these days.
As long as, as long as staff understands, like, the, the general direction, because we don't want to be eliminating places for, you know, your personal.
Well, let's, let's just see if we can move the ball forward here.
So, okay. Then having to do with ADUs, there were a number of comments that were made.
Councilmember Holman, I'm just real worried that if, if we're starting to throw into everything that we talked about tonight into the potential near-term category, it's just going to be, eliminate the meaningfulness of being able to do anything near term.
I'm done.
If we're still thinking about staff coming back with some of this in the near term as far as direction to go forward.
That's, that's exactly what this is for, is to try to distinguish which things we want them to evaluate the feasibility of doing in the near term.
I just think there are enough decorations on the tree now. I, I think, I think we could move forward and put the lights on.
Yeah.
If that's the direction we're continuing to go, I'm, I'm fine with that, I'm just.
That's the direction. Okay.
And, and you have broken out, I'm sorry, which is it?
Councilmember Phil.
Yeah, E, you've broken out E separately, correct?
Yes. Councilmember Phil Seth, did you?
I think, you know, I think we may have, we, we may have gone in the right direction on this, but, you know, one of the things I worried about on number B and C, and it may be that we've given the staff, you know, enough direction to be general on this, right? But these things seem like the kind of things, gee, I'd really like to see scenario five, right, before we start doing policy and spending a lot of time on these. Because some of these things, you know, depending on which scenario we pick, may or may not, you know, factor. You know, if you look at the Stanford expansion, right, or the recovered, the recovered housing from the Stanford expansion, potential recovered housing from, you know, hacker dojos and stuff like that, you know, we may well, you know, have recovered most of the housing in some of the scenarios, right? And we're not going to really know that, okay, until sort of we get a little further on these things. So as long as we're not directing explicit policy or the staff to go spend, you know, many man months of effort on this, and, and that's clear, I think it's okay, right? But, but, you know, I think.
We're not. We're, it's, it's evaluate feasibility. That's what covers all this.
Are, are staff okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, to evaluate the feasibility.
And, and, you know, in the context that, you know, we haven't picked a scenario yet, and some of this is going to be very dependent on which scenario we pick.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to push the ball forward here. Councilmember Wobak.
Let me make one more comment, please.
All right.
Right, which is, on E specifically, it isn't clear to me that there's consensus on the council that we want to do that one, so I think that one makes sense.
We're going to vote on that separately. So that's how we'll figure out what consensus we have. So everybody, it's 20 minutes to 12, and I'm going to try to get us to a vote real quickly. Councilmember Wobak.
My question has been answered, thank you.
C, that worked. Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm a bit concerned about A. It reads like we're trying to deal with our employees first, and I know there's, both at the CAC and tonight, there's a lot of concern about disabled, seniors, very low income, a diverse community, diverse affordable housing. If we could switch in there to provide housing for moderate income as well as lower income, or a diverse spread of incomes, I would be much more comfortable with it.
So I'm not going to do that, because we already have that? That's what the rest of affordable housing is about? This is a specific category that's not covered under our existing affordable?
Is this then specifically asking to take some of the small amount of funds we have for affordable housing and put it?
It's asking for return with options, correct. And we'll have a discussion around those options when they return. And that's provided that staff has determined that it's feasible to return with options. So if we try to make all those decisions tonight, we're, we're not going to be out of here. So that's, all this is, is staff to evaluate the feasibility of coming back with options.
Yeah, it sounds like we're dealing with our negotiations with the employees.
Okay. So I think the clarification was a belief that this is an additional category that we are interested in options on, not instead of, and that's, that's the intent. Okay. Councilmember Berman.
So maybe this wouldn't belong here, but on B, do we need to add in the idea of moving away from number of units per acre and towards just having FAR be the, the criteria with the?
I, I think staff has gotten a sense of that being one of the ways to do micro units.
Okay, just want to make sure that, because we seem to be getting, having things called out, so as long as we're all on board.
So why don't we break out, E is a, that'll be a second vote, and so let's make that a new F, and that'll be, and make FE, yeah, and so then we can vote on A through E. So.
Are we voting?
Yeah. All right, that passes eight to one with Councilmember Schmidt voting opposing. And now let's go for, I'm sorry, I meant to be, have it described, what you have there is F, to call that E, and EF, so that we'll just go A through E is what we just voted on. Everybody understand that was the intention?
Yeah.
And the new F is what we will now vote on, whether we're going to have, once again, it's still covered by that same preamble, staff evaluating feasibility of moving housing sites in the nearer term, is basically what we're talking about. Let's vote.
Do we have some discussion about this?
Okay.
No.
But very briefly, Councilmember Wobak.
Well, so this is also one that I, I wasn't, didn't feel ready to make a decision on even this level of moving forward, even having a little bit of iteration on it. I was just curious to hear the maker and the secondor, if they wanted to speak to this one in particular. Yeah, I'll speak to it soon. You might be able to.
Councilmember DuBois.
So I was in the housing element when we worked on this, and when we say San Antonio, we're talking about a particular portion of San Antonio, mostly down across from the nursery. It's not, it's not right where the Caltrain station is, it's, it's further down near the JCC and the nursery. And again, that, that, those blocks, it's where Hankyhold Trucks is, it's, again, kind of semi-industrial, and I personally don't feel there are a lot of services there. I mean, yes, you can get the Coverlay and other places. And I think as Councilmember Schmidt has said, the, the weighting in the housing element was weighted more heavily to South El Camino in San Antonio. And this idea of locating smaller units near transit, University and Caltrain, just makes sense to me.
And I'll just go briefly to add to that. When we did the housing element, we got the input from, what was your group called? The Housing Element Group? We got that input, there was a strong feeling on that, and I don't understand why Council Holman, Holman has changed her mind, since she was a strong proponent of this, when we actually sat down, I think you were, but we sat down on.
We don't need to go.
All right. We sat down and did this, and I also think there's a lot of congestion on San Antonio, and what this does is this moves these housing sites to places with less congestion, at least to evaluate. And that doesn't mean we wouldn't eventually go back to that. And also, San Antonio has some really interesting funky, lower-income business type opportunities where the rents are cheaper, and I think, I don't really want to lose that right away when we could actually have the housing sites somewhere else.
So let me just, thank you for that, and so I guess my only concern is, I do want to make sure that we do focus on improving San Antonio in a lot of ways. I don't want to close the door to maybe doing a coordinated area plan and focusing on transportation there. So I'm okay with this, as long as that's not shutting the door on the future.
It's only what it is. Councilmember Berman.
I'm okay.
Councilmember Holman.
Actually, my light was on about something else, just, but since you called on me for now. In the, really, housing, it was just to consider this, that's why I could support it, it's not to do it.
Please vote on the board. Okay, that's closer. That passes on a five-four vote with council members. We have Berman, Niss, Phil Seth, and Holman voting no. All right. And I think that concludes this item. Okay. What, what do we have to?
I might have missed it. Did you vote on two things?
Yeah, where were you?
Yeah, sorry, I wasn't.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I could, yeah, I want to say two things in conclusion. So first of all, you did not do what would the main intent of this item coming to the council was, was to give the feedback to the CAC ultimately on this issue.
Let me, let me say that I, I think what we did was essentially a study session, sort of feedback. That we had a lot of comments. I think that they were, council members spoke clearly enough that they could be consolidated without having to be reduced to motions.
Okay.
I, so I think we gave the feedback, but we didn't. And frankly, for the CAC, I'm not sure that we want to be necessarily giving this binding direction. We want to give our feedback. And I think that did occur.
Yeah, well, I didn't mean it as a criticism, I, I just meant the idea of forming anything as a motion or directive to the, to the CAC. The other thing, I, I will just, I mean, just put all of this in perspective. We have a meeting on the 28th next week, where the, out of planning, we'll do the user fee update. And then we have April, May, and June before the break, and we have 24 planning items, everything from, you know, the wayfinding and parking guidance system, to the comp plan draft EIR, to the transportation element review again, to the scenario five. We actually have the scenario five planned to come back to the council in May 23rd, and I don't mean this facetiously at all, going to Councilmember Phil Seth's comment, you very well may have the comp plan fifth scenario before definitive.
And I think this goes into a discussion we've had with you, that one of the things that we will find is reasonable, is for the staff to come back and say, we could do this in this timeframe, but these things would have to be moved out.
Right.
And, and this also goes into, you know, an upcoming committee as a whole, where if any of these things could also be screened, I know that you've said that, that staff's going to need more time to have kind of that master plan of the work plan, but we could have some preliminary discussion that, that allows us to, to give some feedback without being definitive on that. Councilmember Holman?
Yes, what my light had been on actually for earlier was to add one more item to this, which was to have staff return with options on how not to erode our existing housing stock. And that's akin to previous policy, H29. It's not in here.
Is it not?
We, we have nothing that addresses erosion of existing housing stock.
Does it include E?
No, that's, that doesn't change anything about housing stock, it just has to do with how the housing stock is used.
So I would say that we actually have a whole slew of things that aren't in this motion.
Correct.
And they're all things that we commented on tonight, and given feedback to the CAC about an interest in including in the comp plan. So this is only about things that we want evaluated feasibility on in the near term.
Agree, understood, but this is something we haven't given any direction on at all as a group.
Well, we, we did in comments. We just aren't having it in the motion. We had a whole bunch of things that we had in comments, and that was commented on.
So is staff clear on the intention? Is staff clear on the intention that we do want to have some options coming back to us about how we can stop the erosion?
No, I'm sorry, let me clarify. I wasn't saying that the options on that are going to come back in the near term. I was saying that that's something that we gave feedback to the CAC on, and that that's amongst a whole, another 10 things or so that are not in this request for near-term evaluation of feasibility on, they are feedback to the CAC. So everything not covered there.
I'm confused, because I thought what Jim just said was what we didn't do tonight, which was on our agenda, was give direction to the CAC.
And I then clarified that we did give guidance to the CAC, but we did not place it in formal motions.
It's in council comments.
It was in council comments, extensive, and I think pretty clear comments amongst each of the council members, that I believe that the staff can summarize for the CAC based upon the comments that were made.
We're, we're going to come back with the feasibility assessment on this directive. This item's going to be on your agenda, you're going to have another discussion, and, and many more on this, on this item.
So Councilmember Berman was raising the issue, we, in our comments, we really didn't talk about the, these other alternative housing sites that were cited, Palo Alto Square and places like that. So, no, we didn't, and I'm not interested in taking it up at this hour.
Okay, no.
Not a bad topic, but we just have our limits on what we can do here. All right. On that note, the meeting is adjourned.